We want to thank everybody for being here today, the August tenth, twenty twenty-one Board of County Commissioners meeting. And before we start, we're going to turn this over to Commissioner Slaybaugh so she can introduce her fans back there.
I just looked up a minute where I have my twin daughters visiting from college. Julia and Catherine Slaybaugh. And so I have two UF students and four Georgia Tech. Thank you ladies, you don't have to stay all long, all days.
Oh, it'll be an interesting meeting, so y'all should stick around. With that, if everybody would stand for the invocation, Commissioner Slaybaugh is going to give that to us today.
Everybody would bow their head and take off their hats if you have one on. Dear Lord, thank you for today and pray for peace and understanding and that we appreciate the citizens and the citizens appreciate the difficult decisions we have to make today. Thank you for your protection and your blessings and in your name, amen.
Amen. And also Commissioner Slaybaugh's got the ladies that are going to lead us into pledge today.
We have Bonnie Peterson and she is, she proudly served with the US Army in nineteen seventy-five to nineteen seventy-eight. She spent most of her years in Germany as a specialist, fourth class in communications at the seventy-second Signal Battalion. She performed maintenance and repair, mostly mechanical, on some electric electronic teletype machines. And if she told you what she had to do, she would have to kill you, so she's, that's all I got. And then I have Cynthia Henderson, Airman First Class, US Air Force, Vietnam era, served at March, March Air Force Base, California, and worked in computers along with founding FVN. She has in the past founded and operated Centers for Victims' Rights and it has been a past judge advocate for the Citrus County Veterans Coalition, past guardian ad litem, and strong advocate for veterans' rights. Thank you ladies and if you would please.
Ladies, if you'd come right on up.
And ladies in that group, there's three going into the armed forces.
Oh, wonderful.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, we'll give them a round of applause for their service. All right, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners, this tenth day of August two thousand twenty-one. In attendance, Commission Chairman Scott Carnahan, First Vice Chair Ronald Kitchen, Second Vice Chair Ruthie Slaybaugh, Commissioners Jeff Canard and Holly Davis, County Administrator Randy Oliver, and County Attorney Denise Lynn.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And with that approval of the agenda, we've got additional info of E-six, K-two, T-one, and G-three, and that's all. Correct, Mr. Oliver?
Correct.
Thank you. I'll be looking for a motion.
Sir, is the one item E-six, that's actually additional item, not additional information?
Okay, that's an additional, okay, thank you, thank you for correcting me. So E-six is an additional, the rest of them are just informational.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the agenda with the changes?
Motion by Commissioner Canard?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis, is there any public input on the agenda? Seeing none, Commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion passes five-zero. We're going to stop right here, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Oliver. And Mr. Oliver, I did just get a text message from DOT. I'll let you go, then I'll read, we're going to give you update on US nineteen.
Okay, on US nineteen, what DOT is essentially saying, an update we received yesterday, is they have turned this over to the bonding company. They are, the bonding company or the surety will be responsible for completing the project. They are in the, the bonding company is in the process of getting another contractor. They are supposed to fulfill the terms of the DAB contract in accordance with the timeframes provided for in that contract. I think that's going to be pretty difficult.
Yeah.
But that's what they're saying. They also told me just prior to lunch that they're going to have their con, their normal maintenance contractor cut the grass down on nineteen to make it look a little better. So they're, they are doing that. But that's essentially what is, I think everybody's being somewhat guarded because there's an expectation that there may be some litigation that falls out.
And what I just got is, she's running a little bit late, she was going to be here today. But there was an article in the paper today on discharge in the Halls River. So FDOT has submitted a plan to the district to correct the situation with the pond discharge to the Halls River. FDOT has already began implementing that, that portion of the plan and the district staff, including myself, will be monitoring the situation. So, you know, we just want to know that FDOT is on top of it. We look forward to them getting a new contractor out there and moving US nineteen forward for everybody. With that, we'll go ahead and move to the consent agenda if.
There's one correction to the consent agenda. It's on item G-three. This was the one that you all talked about creating the Stormwater Utility. The first motion that was made was to assess all properties and that one did fail. The motion that subsequently passed was to approve it excluding the same exclusions that we do for fire.
Okay.
And it was accidentally recorded improperly.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, just clarification. It was G-three on the agenda that we dealt with, but it was B-three in the minutes.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, because one said B-three, one said G-three, so everybody, everybody's clarinet. Mr. Chair, I, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Kitchen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Canard, is there any public input on the consent agenda? Any public input? Seeing none, we'll close that, Commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Kitchen?
I'm just going to say, not going to make a big deal about it, but I will point out on item B-seven, the City of Embruness audited financial statement. I would, if you haven't read it, I would recommend you look at page eighty-four, page one oh eight, page one twenty-eight, and page one thirty. And in that, you'll see that the amount that was barred against the CRA and the amount that's being paid back and what the out-year payments are, where you're looking at multimillion dollar payments a year in the out-years. Just don't want our friends at City Hall to be surprised like that, like they were with the retiring of the past city manager. Also, I brought this up last year, ladies and gentlemen, it's still in there. It says that bicentennial park is being financed mainly by the Citrus County School Board. And I pointed out that that was wrong, it's the Board of County Commissioners that put in the three hundred thousand. You would think an auditing firm would be able to correct a mistake that was pointed out to them last year and not put it back in this year's audit again. So, once again, I will, I will point that out, and that was all, so.
Thank you. Any other comments, Commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion passes five-zero. All right, proclamations.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve item C-one?
Okay, again, motion by Commissioner Canard?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis, is there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll close that, Commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion passes five-zero, Doug.
Yes, sir, I'm not sure if Ms. Chlorian is here on that.
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, well, I'll just read it in the record. The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, proclamation, Michelle Chlorian citizenship. Whereas Michelle Chlorian is a resident of Citrus County, Florida, who has worked diligently for seven years to obtain citizenship in the United States of America. And whereas citizenship is a common thread that connects all Americans as a nation bond, not by race or religion, but by the values of freedom, liberty, and equality. And whereas the United States has welcomed newcomers from all over the world and immigrants have helped shape and define the country we know today. And whereas Michelle has recently pledged allegiance to the United States of America and committed to support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States against all enemies foreign and domestic. Now therefore, Board of County Commissioners, Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim August tenth, twenty twenty-one, being Michelle Chlorian Day in Citrus County, Florida, signed by all five county commissioners.
Thank you, Doug. Now we'll go to open to the public. If you want to come up and speak to the board, you'll have three minutes. If you have a letter on file, we'll give you five minutes. So with that, the podium is open, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Don Hires, I live in Home Assasa. And I'm not here to talk about septic to sewer. So, I'm here, however, to make a statement as a private citizen recognizing the service of the now former publisher of the Citrus Chronicle, Jerry Mulligan. Mr. Mulligan worked at the Chronicle about forty years. That indeed is a couple of generations and I'm sure he probably felt several lifetimes. Because most times, a publisher, his position is not gray. People take a black and white view of that person. He puts a target on his back, as do each of you when you were elected and you, you assumed your position. I know that the Chronicle over the past week has, has published numerous articles about Mr. Mulligan. They've interviewed him. They've gotten comments, many of the comments I was unaware of about his tenure as publisher. We had the opportunity, those of us who read the Chronicle, to read his recent poop in the shoe column, which he's published for years, and as well as his musing about former commissioners on, on the Board of County Commissioners here in Citrus County. And fortunately, or unfortunately, he made no mention of any of you, so that's still up in the air. I was a, a former journalist, so I can appreciate the work that he, he did, how he had to straddle the fence, how he had to, within his own conscience, be a fair individual. I've lived here a little over twelve years in this county and I've admired his professionalism, especially the professionalism and dedication to a small town and county newspaper. In closing, I do want to wish his successor, Trina Murphy, the best. And I'm sorry that she has now put a target on her back, but we can only hope that she is as strong as Mr. Mulligan, and I feel she will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Doc, how are you, sir?
I'm just fine, thank you.
Good.
It's been quite a few years since I've been at this, at this mic. I want to introduce the Republican Liberty Caucus to you. It's a new name in Citrus County, but they've been around for thirty years nationwide and in the state of Florida. We're in forty-seven counties. And we are the conscience of the Republican Party. And we like to work with all Republicans and the opposition as well. We believe in low taxes, individual liberty and freedom, and free markets. And I am currently the chairman and organizer. We had our first meeting last month and we're having a second meeting coming up at Fish Tales Restaurant and Bar. Wonderful place to eat, they're, they're really good people. So, we meet the third Tuesday of every month. And I am the chair and I'd like to introduce Mike Flock, who is the vice chair. Would you please stand? And Bill Scarfo is the treasurer and Catherine Willett is our secretary. And, and we're here to help you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Doc, Doc, you'll need to fill a green card out and give it to the clerk of courts, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Rick Ranize, R-A-N-I-Z-E. My wife and I moved here from Lake County, April of last year. My wife's an avid fisherman. I don't fish. Last year, I checked the boat yesterday, she had three hundred hours on her boat. With that, I was probably in the boat fifty, fifty hours, maybe. With that said, I've been reading articles about the Home Assasa Springs. As retired deputy sheriff from Lake County, we had Silver Glen. And Silver Glen is the same, basically the same problem, except it did not have residents around it. Some of the things they have implemented, and one thing that needs to be done and you can't control it, is the sheriff's office. You need people out on the water and have a presence of law enforcement if you want to stop this problem. I can count on this hand how many times I've seen a deputy sheriff on the water and cut three of my fingers off. They're not out there. I don't see game and fish out there, only when there's an event. If there's a big event, you have people. But that's one problem. The next one is, I'd like you to consider, in that area, and I know you work on a noise ordinance, you're in the fifth judicial circuit, there is an attorney over in Lake County who works very closely with their marine unit in Silver Glen on the noise ordinance. And if you can possibly have your county attorney contact her and see what they're doing, but they actually can go out because they're anchored, they're not moving around. And they can enforce it. The third one is, in the Glen, and it did not happen while I was on the water over there, I wish it would have, they banned alcohol inside the Glen. Once you enter the Glen, no alcohol's allowed in your vessel. With that said, they don't search the vehicles, but it's a deterrent. Did it stop it? No. Did it help? Absolutely. But it's something I'd like you to consider. My next issue is State Road nine, or US nineteen. Living off of nineteen, it's a nightmare. It's not your problem. As a former commissioner in the city of Fruitland Park, I understand they threw this down your throat. You had probably little to no input and I fully understand that. What I'd like to suggest, if you would consider to do, is on your website, take the information you gave today and make a link for the residents that live in that area or anywhere on nineteen or traveling through that they can see. Because if you try to talk to DOT, you might as well talk to this desk. I made seven complaints to the MOT safety officer in the last year of improper signing. The, the turnoffs are horrible, the cut-throughs are horrible. They're a terrible, terrible company and I'm glad to see them gone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rick, for being here. Come on up. How are you doing today?
Good, sir, how are you?
Good, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Members of the board, my name is Steve Quietek and I represent the EMGs and paramedics of Citrus County as president of IEP, Union Local R-five-three-six-five. Today I come to you seeking help for myself and for the unsung heroes in EMS who protect our community each day. You might wonder, after all the thankful Facebook posts and round of front porch applause, why I use the word unsung. I say unsung because to me and to the families of my fellow EMS professionals, nine dollars an hour is not an acceptable thanks for what we do. In fact, as a direct result of those low wages, we have lost more than ten EMS professionals to better opportunities in the last few months alone. For those unfamiliar with the national EMS worker shortage, losing even one fully trained EMS professional can mean months of mandatory overtime for all those who remain. It also often means longer wait times for critical patients, putting your families and your constituents' lives at greater and greater risk each day a medic cannot be replaced. Some might be quick to blame those who leave or the shortage itself, but the fact is, gas station attendants down the road with no training, no required certifications, no life-saving responsibilities are making fifty percent more an hour than we are. Soon, my local officers and I will sit down to begin negotiations with Nature Coast EMS over many collective bargaining agreement issues, including wages. To have any hopes of achieving an acceptable increase, a subsidy will be needed. On behalf of the men and women who wish to continue serving this great community in EMS, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Janet, welcome.
Good afternoon, Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs resident. It's a three-minute one because it's under resident, it's not under them. Okay, I had the privilege of going to a town hall for our commissioner on the fourth. A bunch of my friends weren't able to attend due to the fact that it was only put in the paper on the third and then the fourth. So the notice didn't go out. I don't know why it didn't go out, but that's all we saw. And needless to say, you need to realize that that is Central Ridge Community Park. It is part of all of the parks in Citrus County that are for all of the people in Citrus County. Now, the pool may be in the Beverly Hills area, but it should not be the Beverly Hills residents' responsibility. It is a county park and should be maintained as a county park. I was asked, how could that happen at the meeting? And I tried to explain, you give to bicentennial park, hmm, three hundred and some thousand. You give to Whispering Pines, three hundred and some thousand. Okay, what do you give to Central Ridge Community Park? What do you give to the Home Assasa Dog Park? Citrus Springs Community Center. Now, the community center in Citrus Springs, we give back to the county because we do have concerts that are sponsored by the Parks and Recs. And any money that they bring in, the checks go directly to, anything that's rented goes directly to the Board of County Commissioners. It does not go back into Parks and Recreation. So the funding is circling for them. My question is, do you have numbers to show the profit for Parks and Recs? Or is Parks and Recs not an enterprise department? I don't think it is enterprise, is it? So that means you are, the Board of County Commissioners, responsible for maintaining all of the parks, not the residence of a specific housing development. And that's what Beverly Hills, Hills is, it's a housing development. It may be divided into sections like Pine Ridge, Oak Ridge, Oakwood Village, but it is a housing development. It's not a city, it's not a town. It is residents. And they came out and said they want the pool because it is built for little kids, like I explained at the meeting, and old people. It is for physical and mental health. If you hurt yourself playing pickleball, you go to the orthopedic doctor and they send you for rehab. To the pool after they do the surgeries, they don't send you back out on the pickleball court. Pickleball can be put down on a tennis court, we have plenty of tennis courts. It's just make it a different color for the striping. Now, I tried to give examples. If you fill in the pool, that's a disgrace because that is a pool.
You can go and finish up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the, the thing, and I'm sorry.
It, it's, it went off, I don't know why it didn't beep.
Okay, because, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I didn't, I didn't see it go up.
You're fine, I just said, you can finish up.
Well, to fill in the pool would be a disgrace to all of the county commissioners. Because it can be rehabilitated and it can be used. You don't go around asking the people on the rails to trails, how many people are out there, do you?
All right, let's finish up.
So, that's all I have to say, just, you know, keep in mind.
Thank you.
Somebody messed with my little timer, I put this one on.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak today? Anybody else?
I just put that one on. I don't know why, it said zero-zero.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to close the public portion of the meeting and Commissioners. Commissioner Davis, you want to start down there?
Don, I guess he's left already, there you are, there you are, you're behind a mask. Always good to see you and, yes, it's, I went to Jerry's little retirement bash in the parking lot and we all wish him well. Doc Bren, very nice to hear about your new organization. Mr. Ranize, did I get the pronunciation correct? Thank you very much for the ideas, we're, there you are. It's kind of funny that your wife is a bigger fisher than you are. And welcome to Citrus County. Really appreciate the ideas and I'm sure we'll follow up on some of those, if not all of them. And Mr. Quietek, Quietek? Thank you for your input on that and I know I've been contacted by Nature Coast EMS and I'm sure we'll get into that. And Janet, Ms. Barrett? Yeah, it's, we just, I lost the budget battle last week, so we're really just not going to invest in stuff right now. So, stay tuned, you never know. I appreciate your input, though. I'm done.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes, I'll just jump right on down to the Beverly Hills Pool.
I'm going to put the timer on.
Talk, talk about, talk about revisionist history. Let's really, you know, there's an old expression, everybody's allowed their own opinion but not their own facts. So let's just go back one time and remind everybody that the only reason that that pool is part of our parks is because the people defaulted on it that said they would run it and take care of it. Because the community itself, and I've said this, Mr. Chairman, fifteen times, so let me say it again, the community itself would not support it. They had it, they wouldn't support it, they refused to pay a few dollars in an MSBU to do it. They want all the taxpayers to pick it up. For seven years, I voted against it, I haven't changed my mind. Call it whatever you want, make up whatever history you want, but that's how the county got stuck with it. And only because a previous board, nobody sitting up here, agreed to the reverter clause that was in it. Because just like a lot of things, they were probably guaranteed that it would never come back to the county and the county would never be stuck with it. So, you know, call it what you wish, but yeah, investing in a pool was a waste in the beginning. Year after year, we were told, just give us one more year, and we did. And I believe, Mr. Chairman, you and I actually acquiesced one year and voted to give them one more year. And nothing, and then we heard why it was our fault that it didn't work and so on. So, as many times as we keep hearing about it, I'll keep saying the same thing, but the bottom line is, the community wouldn't support it. Now they want the rest of the county too, and I don't think that's right. So, end of story, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Slaybaugh?
Thank you. Don, keep it up, keep up the good work. Doc, thank you. Hopefully this group will be super nice to me. Sheriff Rick, thank you, you had some great ideas. We have actually talked about almost every one of them. I love the, the link with the US nineteen, so hopefully we can put that into place. Steve, you know, it's, it's just, sometimes it's an upside-down world where professional athletes get crazy amounts of money and our veteran, our military, our, you know, first responders don't. And I will never understand it, but I do know that we are, will always be working to bring you up to the level that you guys should be at. Janet, thank you for coming out, thank you for coming to the town hall, I really do appreciate it. I gave you a lot of time, we only had one little fight, we did really well. Janet and I only had one fight. But, you know, I, I don't have the support for the pool. You know, I've been trying this since November, it's, it's, it's not there, it's, I understand it. I understand the logics behind it because we are not responsible for community pools. That being said, though, we can keep going on this little treadmill, our hamster wheel, and have a gaping hole in the ground. And I just think that it's time to move on. Or we can go a whole nother year. I just, you know, hopefully, we don't know what's going to be in the future, we're actually working on things. And that's all I can say, I just, I can just keep, keep doing what I'm doing and it's banging my head against the wall. Or we can try to get a, a real plan to help Beverly Hills and Central Ridge. Thank you.
Commissioner Canard?
Yes, Janet, I'll start with the pool as well and I will applaud my colleagues' efforts to bring this thing in for a landing and find a resolution to, to the, to the issue there. As Commissioner Kitchen suggested, the support is not, is not there in the community for a swimming pool. And it looks to me like Commissioner Slaybaugh is determined to find out exactly where the support lies, to do what with it, and bring this thing to the board and let's, let's get it resolved. Let's see here, Steve, EMT medics, we've got a contract with Nature Coast. I fully intend to stick by that contract. We made, we made some tough decisions several months ago on what direction we were going to go with EMS in the county, that can't keep changing. We can't revisit that every six months, that's, we just, we just can't budget that way. If it was the right decision then, to go down the road that we went, then, you know, the numbers made sense. And we stuck with. the numbers made sense and we stuck with Nature Coast EMS than rather with, rather than going with some of the other options that were presented to us. I intend to stay the course with Nature Coast and I intend to stick with the contract that we have with them. Let's see. Rick, thank you for bringing ideas to the table. I'm not sure where. Ah, there he is. Thank you. You know, we get, obviously, we get a mix of speakers every meeting come up. Some of them just bring problems to the microphone. It's great when, when others bring, identify the problems, but also bring some solutions, some ideas. And those, those certainly, the ideas you brought to the table will be involved in discussion, I'm sure. I think first and foremost, we've got to get more deputies on the water out there. I have, that has been my message all along. It sounds like, like there may very well be some support for that going into the next budget cycle. If the sheriff deems that that's necessary and has it in his budget, then I hope that the support will be there to do that. Doc, thanks for being here. It's always good to see you. And, and your, your group that you brought with you, thank you, sir. And Don, thank you for coming up and recognizing. I'd never, I'd never put that, put that together of the publisher of the paper hanging a target on his back, but that's exactly what the, I, I knew that we did that when you run for public office. But I will tell you, before, before I ran for office, well, actually, before I even decided to run for office, there was one, one particular issue that was butting heads on a regular basis with the newspaper. And I ran into Mr. Mulligan at an event. And he, he told me a story about how they'd known each other for years and just spoke, actually, quite nicely about this individual that publicly, it looked like there was, there was an ongoing war with. We could use a whole lot more folks who are able to be, to disagree, but not be disagreeable. And I know that's an overused phrase. You know, I read in the, read in the newspaper quite often about what knuckleheads we are and how we can't seem to get anything right. But ultimately, you know, we're individuals and if individuals disagree, that's fine. But it doesn't mean that we have to be disagreeable. And I believe, in, in every sense of word, I believe that Mr. Mulligan, for the time that I have followed his writings in the paper, I think he's done a good job of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Cannard.
All right, Don, thanks for being here. Doc, thanks for bringing your board here today and introducing them. Rick, I, you know, thanks for the comments on the water. You know, we will work towards that. You know, I have gotten some emails and unfortunately, the, you know, the millage has been put out. You know, we just don't have it in the budget this year. That's something the sheriff has to put in his budget next year. When it comes to the EMT, I'm dead on with Commissioner Cannard. We have a contract and we actually upped our ante to Nature Coast quite a bit. But we do have a contract and they're going to have to look at what they need to do to keep you guys. They're their own company. It's not with us. If they want to keep you guys, they need to start paying you more, is my opinion. So, but as far as giving them more subsidies, that won't happen. And Janet, the pool, fill it in. With that being said, we have a 1:30 presentation and we have our great lobbyist, Gene McGee, here. And everybody got to give him a round of applause because he did a wonderful job last year and we look for what he's going to do this year.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gene McGee, no round of applause. I have a happy little agenda item for you to talk about our legislative efforts and results from 2020 to 2021 and then to talk a little bit about 2021, 2022 going forward. I think probably the best way to do this is go item by item. In your backup, I submitted a report, basically kind of a written report on what happened. But the comment's been made to me that when I ask, what would you like to do next year? Some commissioners said more of what we did this year because we didn't get all of what we wanted. And some efforts are continuing. So, I think probably to go through and be interactive on each item, if you have questions, if you have comments, if you want to, you know, make statements, ask questions, and I'll tell you what I know about, maybe that's the best way to go. So, the first one was economic development. I think a huge win on getting, we asked for 6.2 million for design and construction of the Inverness Airport Park. We made a decision kind of at the end, instead of going for one big project to go for two small ones, for the 1.2 and then the five. And then ultimately, we were kind of guided to just put all our efforts into the 5 million and we were successful in that. So, I think that's a, that's a big win. I don't know if there's any follow-up for that to go back to the legislature floor, but I, I think that was probably our, our best win. Continue the Springs Initiative funding. While we wanted 50 million that we got the year before, there was only 25 put in that line item. But however, they put 500 million in wastewater grants. They put 8 million in manatee habitat rehabilitation. There was another 5 million in Florida resilient grant funds. They just put a lot of money out there that we can access to, to continue our Springs Initiative funding. While it may not be in the certain category it was in before, I think that that, that general category of funding was drastically expanded that we have access to now. And I would imagine that next year, we want to continue to seek money for our Springs initiatives. Transportation initiatives, we, this is the, not, the first and not the last time I will tell you, we were lucky to have the legislative leadership that we have in Senator Wilton Simpson and Representative Ralph Masulo. You know, the EMCOR's program, which would have taken the parkway up through Citrus County and up to, up to Georgia, was dismantled and ended. And the money taken and, and spread to the winds, back to DOT. However, the bill said that the part that we care most about, the parkway being extended through Citrus County and up 19, stayed. It killed the southern extension. And it mentioned that the connector over from Wildwood to connect into the parkway over here would maintain its study status, that we would keep it on the drawing board and keep talking about it. There actually could not have been a better outcome for us because all the money that was tied up in EMCOR's, our project stayed, the rest of the money went back to DOT and was rerouted toward local projects. So, it's available for our funding. Again, we're lucky to have the legislative leadership we have, that our priority was upheld while a lot of people saw theirs crash and burn when EMCOR's went down. It kind of leads into the next one, US-41, 491, 200 improvements. You all know how it works. There's a lot of money at DOT for road improvements. The MPO meets and prioritizes them and there's a process to get the money. And that's slow and arduous, but that's the way it works. We short-circuit that sometimes by asking for special legislative appropriations for certain projects. And boy, we've been successful with that. We got 13.3, I think, for 491. So, we've been successful with that. But that, you know, that is a short-circuiting of the process. That is saying, hey, hey, put me at the top, put me at the top of the list. We don't want to go through the projects. The 491, the 41, all the road improvements we want to, to make through the MPO process or otherwise, got a huge boost because a lot of the federal money and the EMCOR's money went into general FDOT funding for roads. So, while there's not specific appropriations for the projects we want, and I'm sure there are projects going forward on roads, US-41, 491, 19, that we want to pursue, I think there's a lot more money available at FDOT to the general course of business to rank projects and get funded in that way. So, I don't know if there are any comments about.
Yeah, Commissioner, if you have any questions for Mr. McGee, wherever you want through this, please, please stop.
Do you want to do them as we go?
Yeah, that'd probably be easiest.
Yes, sir.
Then let's back up one.
Sure.
The transportation initiatives. You know, again, you know what happened with that as well as anybody, but I have to give two of my colleagues up here. The three of us jumped up and down every EMCOR's meeting and said, we don't care what you do, just get it to red level. That's what we said. And every time, it was like, oh, hi, Mr. Secretary, nice to see you again. And by the way, it must go to red level, you know? And that's what we kept saying over and over again.
And he was appreciative of that.
And he was. And he goes, let me guess, you want it to go to red level, right? I mean, so, so I guess, Mr. Chairman, what I'm saying is that we were all singing from the same hymnal. You know, he, every time we talked, whether it was Mr. McGee up there or hearing it from all of us at a meeting or one of us when he ran into it, we were all saying the same thing. And that's what I think is so important about this whole process is that, you know, sometimes we, we debate and we are not all in agreement at the beginning, but once we move forward with the plan, you know, we have to be behind it. And I'll save other comments as we move on, but I just want to say this, and you know this, Mr. Chairman, think you were there with me, we are adamantly against lobbyists. We said, we will not hire a lobbyist. I think hiring Mr. McGee was one of the best things Citrus County ever did because he is a unique individual at a, at the right time and the right place. And, and he knows Citrus County and what we want. So, I just want to say, and I want to put him on the spot because I was the one that we hired and said, I want to report every year. Well, what have you done for us, you know? So, I just want to say, thanks. Great job, great effort. And I'll save the rest for later.
Any other comments, commissioners?
Okay. I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. And now that Commissioner Kitchen has stolen 94% of my clothes.
He does that a lot.
I will, I will say, it is absolutely a team effort. On each one of these initiatives, I can point to a commissioner or commissioners who did the yeoman's work up there, either talking to President Simpson or to Ralph Masulo, hearing the concerns of citizens, going directly to the legislature themselves. I mean, it's more than a team effort. It really does take everyone involved. Randy's been fantastic. You know, I was on the phone with him all the time on initiatives, back and forth. Here's what's going on, what do you want to do? What do you think about this? He'd have an idea for that. So, it really is a team effort. And if you don't do it as a team, then you're not going to. And you know, the, if you want to use a football analogy, the stars on our field, the quarterback and the wide receiver making all the plays are President Simpson and Representative Masulo. But it takes sometimes a water boy like me to come and clean up and make sure that everybody's got a clean seat to sit in to make things happen. And I feel like that's kind of my role, maybe coach, maybe not water boy, but coach. But certainly not the star of the show. And I, and I would say now that, you know, I appreciate your thanks and the nice comments. And I'm probably not as good as all that. But later on in the meeting, when you don't like what I did, I'm not as bad as all that either. So, to continue with transportation initiatives, the SCOT funding was kind of hard fought. And Randy was in the middle of that battle with me, too. That was hard-fought funding. And while it was slightly reduced, again, a lot of money went to DOT. So, there's a lot of money for us to access funding projects. All counties, Florida Association of Counties went to battle for that SCOT funding because it helps small counties like us. And again, I think there's plenty of transportation funding for us. We'll have to consider long and hard whether we want to identify a certain piece and a certain amount of money and try to jump up to the top of the list again. That's, I'll just tell you, that's hard to do. That, that has a, that's, that's a tougher do than you may imagine. We got really lucky with the 491 to get the 13.3 million.
And I promise you this, when we go to FAC events or Small County Coalition, us commissioners get called all kind of names because Citrus County has brought so much money in and they didn't get the money. And they just want to know how, how we, how we did it and they, they don't like it, but we do, we love it.
One that we haven't gotten done yet is the TDC talked about a scallop study and bag limits on scallops and had a white paper done generally on a way to take some steps to, we think, improve that area. We didn't have a whole lot of success in going on our own to other counties and trying to talk them into the idea. They thought we were self-serving and we couldn't prove we weren't. And so, the idea was to have the legislature do a study. And they have a practice called interim studies between sessions that actual committees work on. So, Representative Masulo is talking to his staff in State Affairs to do a study like this for us. And we haven't gotten the study started yet, so I can't report a success back on that. But it is in progress and so that'll be a thing that I'll continue to chase for an interim study and hopefully legislation for next year.
And real quick, Mr. McGee, I, I agree 100% that needs to be done because, you know, when scallop season started, boy, it was hot. And everybody was talking about, well, here at the end, they wiped them out. So, I, I do believe a study needs to be done. We need to keep that industry going, the terrorism going for our county. And so, I, I agree 100% it needs to be done because they wiped them out pretty quick.
Right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Since we're, since we're talking about scallops, I thought it'd be an appropriate time just to, just to mention that Eric up at the Duke Mariculture Center has the, we, we've seen, you know, all of the different successes that they've had in releasing red fish and trout and so forth up and down the west coast of Florida. And now, they're doing, giving some help to the east coast of Florida with their fish populations as well. And I imagine after this red tide finally dies out, that they'll be back at it again down in central and south Florida. He's got the ability to do the same thing with scallops. The problem is, is I believe that it's, FWC will not allow them to do that. He can produce scallops in, in their existing facility by the millions. But the position of the state, the state agency that I believe is FWC is that this is a recreational fishery. It's, it's something just to let it live and die naturally. And so, they, they're, they've advocated, based upon, my understanding is that based upon somebody from the University of Florida, their position of it's going to, it's going to have, they're going to have good seasons, they're going to have bad seasons, but, you know, you just let it happen on its own. There's absolutely no reason that when we've got a resource that is existing, it requires virtually $0 be put into this. And they could produce, they could, he, he could produce the scallops there. They want to do good. They've got the, they've got the knowledge, they've got the facility. Why aren't we allowing them to do this?
And you know, I think at one time, we used to do a seeding project here.
I think so.
Yeah, so.
Commissioner Kitchen?
You, you hear this, so, Mr. McGee knows this as well as we do. We were told there's issues with, and I'm just going over the 50,000-foot level. We, we were told there's issues with genetics, that, that seeding is not the answer. We, you know, Mr. McGee, remember, he was on, he's on the TDC as well, that we said, if, if we found the money to seed it, they go, we don't need the money for seeding. We don't need to seed because every scallop's left out there now will die. Won't be there next year, they last one year, okay? Starts off in a big bang in the beginning, they spawn, what's left, they die, and you start over next year. They said, where we need the money is enforcement. So, that if this scallop passed and the bag limit passed, and the bag limit was based on, again, size, is based on the time of the year so that you let the majority of them out there doing spawning, right? That they would be able to do enforcement. Because right now, they don't know who, who follows the bag limits. They don't know who, you know, who does it. So, they said, if, if it was up to us, rather than putting the money into seeding, we would ask you to put the money into enforcement. And that was from the, the doctors or the marine biologists or whatever. So, we, we were the same way. We said, we want the scallops to, to continue on, we want it to be sustainable. What can we do to help? That was their answer. More enforcement, not seeding, whatever. And we brought up the issue about that and they said, by letting them go their natural route, you know, the genetics of what's out there, if you introduce ones that aren't, you know, used to being out there or whatever, then they're worried about the contamination of the gene pool or whatever, you know? So, but, I mean, I'm kind of paraphrasing what they told us, but that was, that was the bottom line on that. So, I can't answer if what you're saying is a good idea or a bad idea. I'm just responding to what they told us when we asked them these very questions.
And hopefully, the legislative interim report would address it. You know, that's certainly a thing they would have to look at, is seeding a possibility and would that work and where would the seeding come from?
Well, I, I don't want, I don't want to go down this rabbit hole, you know, too far with the scallops. But we're already introducing farm-raised red fish, trout. They can do it with snow. They've been doing it for years when the Nuke Plant was running. That was the whole purpose in establishing the Mariculture Center out there. So, if we're already doing this with other species, there's a way to get this done. And I, I'm all about enforcing the bag limits. I, I'm not, I don't want to take focus off of that. But when this facility is there, the knowledge base is there, and the willingness to do it is there, man, I'd sure like to see somebody get involved and go, look, I understand your concerns, but you're already dumping millions of red fish and trout all up and down the west coast of Florida. You're introducing new genes there. They, they have not been dumping them on the east coast because that is a different gene pool. Well, now, they've got different tanks, they've got different lakes, that they're going to be raising the east coast genetic version of these red fish and so forth over there. So, anyway, I'll stop with it now. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to the very similar Crystal River Airport, we, we made the decision to seek federal funds for the airport. And it's kind of timely because the Senate just voted for a $1 trillion infrastructure package that we tried our best, Congressman Webster tried to get our project included in that package. So, they weren't including individual packages that small in the federal bill. So, what he tried to do is work with a Democrat ranking member to create an infrastructure bank, was the term he used. It would create a source of funds that we would have access to to fund projects like the Crystal River Airport. Unfortunately, he said that he does not think that it made it into the $1 trillion package. Further, the Senate's now going to vote on a $3.5 trillion package, which is everything. And I've heard it jokingly called art as infrastructure package. I mean, it's everything in the kitchen sink. Speaker Pelosi has said she's not going to take up the $1 trillion package when it comes back until the Republicans agree to the $3.5 trillion package. So, what I think I'm saying is, we may all be gone before we get federal funding for that airport. And I thought it was worth a try, but I, I don't, I don't have any confidence that in the next, in the foreseeable future, we'll get money from the federal government to actually spend on that airport. So, we may want to, it's been brought up, the idea of going to the state next year and trying to get the money to do this project. So, that, you know, that's a decision you can make, but I- So that, you know, that's a decision you can make, but I think that's an idea that I'll, I'll put out, that others have said to me that possibly we go to the state and ask for that money.
Mr. Davis?
And as has been pointed out, uh, FDOT is two hundred feet to begin with, so it's really not that big of an extension to hit five thousand feet.
Right, not fifty-two oh one, I apologize, typo into my report, it's five thousand.
Essentially, we want five thousand, but because of, uh, the specificity of some people's interpretation of various insurance rules and whatnot.
Right.
Sometimes it says over five thousand feet, so that's why we made it five thousand one.
Right.
So.
And a good thing to say here, what we talk about today, this is, this is a report on last year and the beginning of the discussion for next year. You know, nothing's solid until you vote on a legislative agenda and then you send me to go to work on it. So, um, it's, it's discussion at this point.
That's a big priority for me, for the county, as, as you know, so.
Mr. Kitchen?
As well. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I, I think I mentioned in the past, this, this is, um, and I've said it over and over again, and some people say, yeah, yeah, you're right, but nobody says anything about it. FDOT's own rules state you can't take away from one transportation mode in order to expand another, which is exactly what they did with the widening of nineteen. And they basically say, yeah, you're right, do something about it. Right, so, but, so I, I guess while that's said, FDOT is a large source of air, airport funding.
Yes.
And back in the olden days when everybody was up in arms about Port Citrus, one of the arguments made was that, oh, there's millions and millions of dollars available from FDOT for the port. Okay, well, the ports are nothing, okay, but the airport is a something. So I don't know why we couldn't go to FDOT and, with the same approach and say, hey, we have an airport, you know, that, that this, this is real, a real thing that could happen, and if you were willing just to throw money at something that wasn't as compared to something that is. So I, I think that's a, an argument that we might look at too, not necessarily a general appropriation, but going directly, you, you know, I mean, however the system works. That's just a thought, Mr. Chair.
Okay, good, okay. Fort Island multi-use path, so we kind of were guided to get this in the program, uh, to get funded. There's a program set up to do these trails, and the problem for us was they only set the priority list like every five years. Well, luckily, I got a hold of Greenways and Trails, and they were supposed to send out the notice to do the reprioritization in July, but they haven't really sent that notice out yet. But, but we are set, uh, for that to be reprioritized. As I understand the process, we, our community sets the, sets the priority. And if we say that our priority is the Fort Island Trail, then that goes up to the state and is ranked against other projects, a lot based on connectivity to what they already have in the ground. And then once we have priority designation, then we can go to DOT for funding. So it's DEP until the ranking is accomplished, and then it goes to DOT for funding. So, um, I'm pursuing that, uh, I've talked with Randy, we're on the list to be notified immediately whenever the, the, the list come out or we're able to take action to get on that list and get prioritized. We'll work as hard as we can to get us a priority designation so that we can then pursue funding for that trail. And I know that's of interest to all of you, and that's, and frankly, that's the guidance that Senator Simpson gave us last year, is to take this route for the funding. And so that's, that's really what we've been pursuing. That was our legislative agenda, and then we had, uh, partner projects where we recognized that our partners in cities and, and other places were pursuing projects that were of interest to us and that we supported, and so that we just wanted, I wanted to report back to you on what their success was. Save Crystal River, important to everyone, again, very successful, they got four, they asked for four million, they got four million. Great effort behind that from all of you and all the people in Save Crystal River. The Home Assas River Restoration, uh, likely got four million dollars too, is also going to get four million. It wasn't a line item, but it was identified funding in a big pot, and I, they're going to get their four million too. Another great effort from the Home Assas folks. Livestream was successful in getting one point five million non-recurring to fund Baker Acts, uh, in the county, to fund the access center, and then the Baker Acts that have to go over to Leesburg. Those were the successes on the partner projects, we had some that didn't quite make it. You'll remember a presentation from the Sala-Popka Chain Cleanup that y'all were enthusiastic about. They never, uh, kind of took that forward and got legislative sponsor and got, um, an appropriation request filed to follow through. So if it is your will to put a little muscle behind that, I can certainly work with them and.
Here's what, Gene, it's funny, I had a conversation yesterday, um, here, here's what I think that we, we ought to look at going after is, Citrus County used to get, um, Larry, you can shake your head, or Randy, we used to get one point five million in, in, um, aquatics. We used to get a pretty good, about one point five, and it was cut to under a million. Um, I, I would like to see us, our aquatics division does such a great job, I would like to see us go after, uh, to get that one point five million to give aquatics, uh, the opportunity to keep, uh, doing such a great job of what they're doing. You know, we can add this in, but you know, we, we got cut to over half a million dollars, uh, in our aquatics, uh, to take care of our chain of lakes over on the east side and, and the west side. But I, I think we definitely need to go back and, uh, try to get more money for those.
For aquatic?
Yes.
That, that's actually, had number eight, aquatic plant control.
Yes, okay.
I had us unchanged from last year, did you see a cut in that?
It was changed, what, two years ago, Larry? Two years ago, we never, and we never got it back, yeah.
Ah, there we go, we stayed at thirty-four point two this year.
Yeah, so I would like to see us try to get back to that one point five million mark, uh, to give our aquatics division, uh, uh, the, the opportunity to keep doing their, doing such a great job.
So hold that thought, because that's number eight, aquatic plant control, because, because you're right, I put seven partner projects, but we have more things that we worked on. My, my, my bad too. The Crystal River, so that Sala-Popka Link Chain Cleanup was a, they presented it, the board was excited about it, but we left it to them to kind of pursue that. And so if it's your wish, I can help them with that, or we can wait for them to pursue that, that's really up to you.
I thought Commissioner Canard took that idea to his friends over there at the Water Board, and they didn't like it at all. Is that what happened with that?
It, um, there was a resounding, there was resounding silence, I guess. I don't know that anybody spoke out against it, but it was, um, thank you, and then silence.
Okay.
Because I, I remember the discussion because it, you know, the concept was it was going to save billions or whatever for new reservoir, right? Yeah, exactly.
Their, their focus there is to milk the participating counties to build the reservoir.
And the only reason I say it, Mr. Chair, is I don't know the, I don't, I don't know. And I'm waiting for Commissioner Canard to really tell me how he feels about this.
Right, right.
But, uh, my point there was is that it's going to be difficult to get any kind of state backing when we can't even get regional backing, right? I mean, so that's, that's kind of what my thinking on that was, so.
The Crystal River, River Walk, they asked for a million dollars, they, they didn't, they weren't successful. Happy to work with them next year to try to help them get that money if that's your wish. They had a bottle withdrawal, bottled water withdrawal protection program, pardon me.
Doesn't Crystal River have their own lobby?
They do.
Okay.
They do. I mean, if, if it's of interest to you though, I'm happy to help them. No? Well, then we'll let them fail on their own. Bottled water withdrawal protection legislation, the city had some interest in, they have issues over there with people taking the water out of their springs that they don't like, and they tried to, but they were unsuccessful in getting that legislation introduced too. Again, if you want me to help them, I will, if you don't, I won't. Aquatic plant control now number eight, the funding stayed level, I wasn't aware we were cut the year before that. So if we want to look at getting more money in aquatic plant control, I'm happy to, happy to put that on the agenda. State aid to libraries, thirty-three million was the request, we only got twenty-one point five. Now, as I understand through the formula that that's dispersed, that was still a small increase to us, but it's nowhere near what Eric says he needs for libraries. So I, I think, um, Randy has asked the division directors for their needs and, and wants and desires, and, you know, we'll go through all of those, but I'm quite sure that libraries is going to need to advocate an increase. And that's a fight that's not just us, I mean, that's, the whole library community goes up there and argues for that funding, so. And then there's a formula that disperses it to the counties. The ship funding for the, the, the legislature took a big move this year because, as you're probably aware, they raid that fund every year. Tremendous amount of money goes in from dock stamps, and they raid it every year to the tune of tens of, hundreds of millions of dollars. So this year they stopped that, they set it up and they said this much is going to go for ship, and this much is going to, I forget now what, um, Sustainability Trust Fund, they, they put three different categories and said we'll never raid it again. Well, that's the good news, they'll never raid it again, the bad news is it's only a third of the money in there. According to the leadership, they said, but that's the amount of money that we've been spending on ship, and so now we've guaranteed that to go forward. What I think some advocates wanted was all the dock stamp money to go towards ship, so they would get a four hundred percent increase. But that's not what happened, so bottom line for us is it maintains funding, and I think that funding is pretty solid going forward at around the two hundred million dollar level.
Mr. Davis?
Uh, to back up to Sala-Popka Lake Chain Cleanup, kind of blew right by, that's my district, and I went on record, as, as did Commissioner Canard, as saying it was a good idea. I think all five of us said it sounded like a good idea. So I reject, and I also sit on the Wathcucci, um, board, I wholeheartedly reject them telling us what is a good idea or not. I would like to see it go to the state and see if we can get, you know, help them with their grant proposal. Personally, that's how I feel.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
It's the right thing to do, that's what leaders do, it's to just do the right thing.
There, there's definitely no, no doubt about that, but, um, along with their project, I definitely want to see our, our aquatics back up to a million and a half because Mark Revers, uh, does a tremendous job, and, uh, he, he, you know, he, so whatever we can get, we.
Yeah, happy, happy to.
And I agree with you.
Happy to ask.
Yeah, that's right.
Happy to ask. A, a couple of other things that weren't on the report that I gave you were really substantive bills going through the process that, that really Randy and I back and forth on. The first one was impact fees, which really affected all counties. They were after certain counties who had really raised impact fees, uh, a lot. There was a lot of back and forth on the bill, a lot of communication with Randy to make sure it wouldn't hurt what we were doing or what we had done. Where they settled out was you couldn't raise impact fees more than fifty percent, and that had to be done over a four-year period of time, and that didn't seem to affect us. So there was a lot of work that we put in on, on the impact fee bill. The other one that was pertinent to us is they filed a bill called Displacement of Private Waste Companies. And the policy is now, as you know, that if you want to displace private waste like we have here in Citrus, you have to give them three years' notice. And if you don't give them three years' notice, you have to pay them fifteen months' revenue if you displace them. What the bill said was you have to give them three years' notice and, and you have to pay them eighteen months when it's over, which would have probably made it impossible for us to make a change if we wanted to make a change. So with Representative Masulo's help, he really championed this issue, uh, because it had to come through his committee. He basically said, I'm not letting the bill go until we get an amendment, and we amended us out and said that if you sent your three-year notice out before December thirtieth versus twenty twenty, then you were exempt from this bill. But had we not gotten that amendment in there, then it would have rendered all your work on, uh, waste companies and going to bid and seeing where we are and trying to do something about that, we wouldn't have been able to do it, it just would have been financially impossible. So those were two additional bits of work that we did. And I will take the last six percent of my clothes, even though Commissioner Kitchen stole most of it. It, it's such, it's such a team effort in anything you do in Tallahassee, you know? One person can lead the charge, and boy, President Simpson's a heck of a leader, and he gets a lot done for us. But, you know, he's got a long list and a lot of people asking him, and it takes Representative Masulo on his side, because you know, the House isn't necessarily interested in giving the Senate President what he wants all the time. And it takes Representative Masulo, who is also in leadership on the House side, to go and say, this is important to me. That, this, this enormous airport, I don't think Senator Simpson could have necessarily gotten all of our money had Representative Masulo not been, but, standing on the desk demanding money for this. He, it was, I think it was ten times more money than anyone else got out of that particular subcommittee in the House, what Representative Masulo was able to get out for us on the airport. So it really did take both of them, and it took you establishing it as a priority and the business community advocating for how important it was. It really is a team effort, and if we're not all singing from the same hymnal, things just don't get done up there. Because almost every idea in Tallahassee is, is sort of a good idea for funding, but then you fight for priority. And we've been successful because we've been a really good team, and that's you, and that's Randy, and that's our legislative delegation. So it's, it was really a pleasure, you know, I have some clients that are very difficult. This is a, a very easy client when it comes to advocating for, and so I thank you for the, for the honor of doing that.
Any, uh, questions for Mr. McGee? Mr. Kitchen?
I have a couple. First, I gave him the good news, now I give him the bad news.
Yeah, he always saves that for last, right?
No, no, well, uh, actually, I guess, I guess my first question would be, we'll have two questions. First is, I'll ask them both, and you can answer them, and you, you'll need to help out here, Mr. Chair. Uh, first is, is where do we go from here? In other words, we understand how incredible, uh, Senator Simpson and Representative Masulo's been, but what do you see two, three, four, five years down the road? Not, I, I won't be here, but I'll still be living in Citrus County if I'm still alive, I guess I'll still be here. But, um, you know, that's what I'm wondering, because in the past, it seemed like Citrus County's, I'll use Doug's word for it, juice in Tallahassee, went, went up and down with who, who was there for us. Okay, well, now we seem to have a lot of juice because we have the right guys there. So what do you see in the future? Uh, is it going to be, uh, you know, and again, you can put a commercial in here if you want, is it going to be keeping guys like you there that know who the power players are even if we don't? Because we talked about it in the past.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that, well, we could go up there, we can talk to people, but I don't know that that might hold true four or five years down the road. And that's my lead into this, is that when do we discuss renewing Mr. McGee's contract for next year? Mr. Chair, so, so I think that's a good tie-in right there.
That needs to be put on the agenda pretty quick, and, uh, I, I, I agree a hundred percent with you. You know, when we first started, we got rid of our lobbyist, and, uh, as it, uh, as, as, as you start seeing the vision down the road, um, you know, Senator Simpson's got one more year, uh, he, he's been tremendous, so we, we knew that we had to bring in a lobbyist that has liked up there and that knows the, the power to be, so we can continue to move forward, so. I, uh, so Randy, I, I would like you to get, get that on the agenda for, for the next, and, and, and get that done for sure.
Appreciate it.
But we appreciate everything you've done and how hard you work for us. And, and for, for the individuals that are listening today, we're already working for next year. We're already making the calls to the Senator and, and, and Representative Masulo and DOT, and so that, those calls are already being made, and, and we're starting to line ourselves up again, so, uh, any other Congress commissioners?
Can you allow Mr. McGee to address the big question down?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Not about, we didn't ask you if you wanted to work for us anymore, we, but, but, but.
It's an honor to work.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering about what, what you see in your crystal ball looking down the road.
I do, and, and one thing I need to back up on, you know, we're thanking everybody, and it's a team. One perfect example of how things get done in Tallahassee was Commissioner Slayball. And when she went and decided to champion a specific request for a septic sewer project in Home Assas, she went to President Simpson and she made a personal ask of him, and he made a personal pledge to her that he would do everything in his power to get that to happen. That sometimes is the only one, things that are very hard to get done happen, and so congratulations to her. But, you know, you all agreed with it, right? The, the county commission agreed with it, the community agreed with it, we had all of us singing from the same hymnal, and that got done. And so I say that to congratulate you and thank you for that, but also in a way to answer your questions, you know? Yes, another football analogy, it's not the X's and O's, it's the Jims and Joes. You know, without a President Simpson, it's going to be much tougher for us to get five million dollars from an airport in an air, in an era where there's no money. It's going to be much tougher. But we can do, if we do our job the way that we have been doing it, we're still going to be successful. We'll be successful with the new Senate President and the new Speaker. We will have, you know, we may go from an A-plus to a solid B-plus, but we'll still be successful, right? If, if, if you do your job in Tallahassee, if the community is together, if the board is together, if all our voices are singing from the same hymnal, if we do the work and do the contacts and follow the projects and meet our deadlines and do what we're supposed to do, we'll be successful, will we win everyone? No, we'll be as successful as we've been the last couple of years. Maybe not, but maybe we should pare our ask back a little bit, so that we do have the same kind of level of success. But, um, but I, I'm confident, I think we have, you know, football, again, we have a really good team, right? If we lose one star player, that doesn't make us a bad team, and we'll still be successful on the field.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, any other comments?
No.
Mr. McGee, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, now we have a, uh, two o'clock time certain, and that is a hearing on an ordinance pertaining to animal control. Mr. Oliver?
Yes, uh, we have Laura Packham here from the, uh.
She's in the back there.
She's here from the Sheriff's Office, but in concert with working with them, we are asking that we update these regulations to make them more enforceable.
Okay, you want to, you, you want to read the ordinances first, or we just want to go, Madam Attorney?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have a public, this is actually your day, you're gonna have a public hearing, so at the conclusion.
Do we want to read what we're going to be doing before we open it up, or no? Just go ahead.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus, this is a long one.
I, I figured.
An ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida pertaining to animal control, amending section fourteen dash thirty-two, entitled definition, definitions, amending section fourteen thirty-three, entitled licenses, amending section fourteen thirty-five, entitled impoundment, amending section fourteen thirty-seven, entitled adoption and redemption of animals, amending section fourteen dash thirty-eight, entitled quarantine of animals, amending section fourteen thirty-nine, entitled unlawful to keep stray animal, amending section fourteen forty-one, entitled confinement of cats and dogs in heat, estrus, amending section fourteen forty-five, entitled dangerous dogs, amending section fourteen forty-nine A one B, oh, A one D, excuse me, amending section fourteen dash fifty-five, entitled euthanasia of animals, amending section fourteen sixty-five, entitled mandatory spay and neuter for cats, adding, adding section fourteen sixty-six, entitled registration of rescue groups, breeders, hobby breeders, and owners of eleven or more companion animals, providing for severability, providing for codification and inclusion into the code, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration. providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date.
Okay.
Now you can, it would be appropriate to open it up to the public.
Yes, thank you, thank you. All right, at this time, we will go ahead and open the public hearing up on the ordinance for animal control. Is there anybody who would speak for or against? Okay, will you come on up if you want to speak? If you don't have to, it's totally up to you.
Well, I'm not really sure this goes, I learned about this in the last minute. My name is Wendy Wass. I'm the president and the founder of Ziggy's Haven Bird Sanctuary Parrot Rescue over here on 41. This isn't what I was told it was going to be. I thought it was something different, but it definitely applies because I think all rescues should be licensed and inspected. There are so many that start off with good intentions that turn into crap and the animals suffer. And we have over 200 animals at our facility. And we do primarily parrots. We get calls, we get them dropped off, they're left in boxes at our doors, at our gates. And nobody, including Fish and Wildlife, has a clue about parrots. You know, God love Laura because she's about the only one, you know? And she calls for questions. So it's, and I know I talk about parrots, but we also have, we have pigs that have been dropped off and cows and tortoises and a little bit of everything. And I think somebody needs to come out and inspect. I mean, our doors are open. We're open to the public six days a week. We have nothing to hide and we are open to suggestions for improvements, changes, because after 20 years, sometimes I see like this. And I'm always open to suggestions. But I have seen facilities, we get calls from other organizations or from just the public that says, "I went to this organization and you got to do something. These birds are suffering, these animals are suffering, and they're a rescue." And I have no authority. Somebody needs to step up for these animals. And this is a huge start where they have to be licensed, but who's going to inspect them? That's my concern is, you know, I'm all for paying whatever it is to have a license and I'm all for helping establish regulations, especially for an organization like mine that's out of the norm. But who's going to come and enforce them? Where does that come from? You know, it's, I think that's important because I, seeing animals suffer hurts my heart.
Okay.
And I think that's it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else speak for or against? And your green card, too. She needs your green card?
I've got it.
Thank you. All right, how are you?
I think most of you know me, I'm Sandra Moylan, but I'm speaking for myself now. I am a volunteer with Precious Paws Rescue, but I'm not speaking for them or behalf of them. I think this is needed. It's been needed for many years, but I agree with the lady before me that we need some sort of oversight. I know that Precious Paws, I volunteer there, and we have almost no ventilation, no cooling, and I know it's even worse at the shelter. We worry about the animals at the shelter, let's worry about the people at the shelter. They need help. They need to be able to breathe fresh air, clean air, and not with all those animals. And they're not even taking any more animals. And we can't take anymore, they cannot take anymore, because we have approximately 40 cats right now and we just can't take anymore. So what's going to happen to these cats? They're going to be left on the street, they're going to be left to die cruelly, either by car or another animal. Let's please help the animals in this county. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. For or against?
Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs resident. I read through all the different definitions and I was really happy to see that you went into specifics on each cat. It was really, really neat. Because now, when we go to call code compliance or animal control from the Civic Association, we can actually go back to the definition and say, "This is the problem that the citizen is facing." And it really was nice to see that. I also do agree with the two other ladies that you got to have some sort of inspection. I run the concession for the Civic Association. We get inspected every three months from the Board of Health. If I owned a restaurant, it's every three years. If you own an animal thing, it should be at least a minimum of once every six months because you have such a big overturn. And with that, you do have to be constantly cleaning and making sure that all the health things, you want to have animals, you want to take care of animals, be in charge of animals, you need to be responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that speak for or against today? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public portion. Commissioners?
I'll start.
Okay.
You know, I'm Ruthie Slayball and you know that I'm a big proponent of inspecting and taking care of our animals and our staff and our volunteers. So I appreciate what you do. Wondering if you had any monkeys because I'm kind of interested in a monkey, but. I'm kidding, Jerry. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And Sandra, thank you. Because it is a problem. We're busting at the seams and I don't, I don't know how to fix it, so.
All right, commissioners, any other comments? Looking for a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would say this. First of all, I will make a motion to approve, adopt the resolution and the ordinance and authorize the chairman to execute both.
Okay. Got a motion? You got a second by Commissioner Kennard?
And then my comment would just be, this appears, it's a great piece of work. I love to win it's the strikeouts and the underlines and whatever because it appears to me we went through and tried to identify perhaps areas that needed improved in the ordinance and that's what we did. So is that, am I reading this right? I mean, we got input from animal control and all the folks involved with, every time we run into an issue, this is hopefully going to address those issues?
It was a very collaborative effort between many individuals, animal control, animal services, my office, one of your colleagues who identified some typos. And so it was a collaborative effort and I believe that it is going to take care of a lot of issues that those that work in this area see every day between animal services and animal control and the volunteers.
Yes, well, Mr. Chairman, like I said, I think it's a fine piece of work and that's why I can support it.
Okay, Mr. Davis?
Is, will there be any mechanism for inspection or is it purely going to be just having more teeth for code compliance if somebody complains?
We don't, we won't enforce this with code enforcement. This will be enforced through the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, sorry.
It will be enforced through the Sheriff's Department and the shelter.
But there will be no inspection to be proactive versus reactive?
I would defer to Colleen or Laura Packham on that.
I believe this is the first step in establishing the regulations and the requirement. And then I believe you'll probably see a program or a process put into place to enforce the ordinance. And I guess we can report back to y'all on that after it's created.
Okay, super.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, I just want to let everyone know that we will be changing just a couple of words due to typographical errors within the ordinance, but in substance, it won't be changed.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right, we'll go back to E. E1 bids A through?
Motion approved by E1, A through G.
A through G. Got a motion? Got a second by Commissioner Slayball. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. E2?
Approved budget transfers for utilities, land development, housing, and veteran services for fiscal year 2021.
Mr. Chair, motion approved by E2.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slayball. Is there any public comment on E2? Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll close that, commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. E3?
Yes, E3, adopt and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution adopting state housing initiative partnership, transportation disadvantaged trip and equipment, home care for the elderly, community care for the elderly, Alzheimer's disease initiative, and local service program grant budgets for fiscal year 2021.
Chair, I move to adopt E, approve E3.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Slayball?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comments? E3, any public comments? Seeing none, we'll close that, commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
E4, I'll go into a little explanation of this for our new commissioners. Acknowledge the list of discounts, errors, double assessments, and insolvencies against the 2020 tax roll. These are cases where somebody may have gone to the value adjustment board and there was a different value that was determined to be correct or, you know, something else happened or they made a mistake. This adjusts those particular items out.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
Motion approved by E4.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on E4? Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll close that, commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
E5, approve and authorize chairman to sign all appropriate signature pages of the contract amendment. No cash match required.
Motion approved by E5.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on E5? Any public comment on E5? Seeing none, we'll close that, commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Chair, with your permission, I should have asked this when we were on E1. It's just a, just a follow-up question for Mr. Oliver about mowing for the airports. Since we have a lot of mowing contracts on here, did we ever get somebody to actually do good work at the airports?
I'll have to get the information. I don't know how often the airports are mowed, but I'll put it on the list.
Because if this person, if this company's doing a good job and, you know, the turf runway kind of needs to be mowed on a regular basis.
Okay, let me find out what the schedule is.
And then just out of curiosity, what is the specific residential properties for E1D? What is the, what is the criteria for being a high water use residential to get the smart sense irrigation? Again, out of curiosity.
I'll let Mr. Cheek answer that.
Good afternoon, Ken Cheek, Water Resources Director. We monitor our customer base regularly and just pick sort of the higher tier. So it changes depending, you know, as we work our way down, that number changes. But it's basically just a monitoring of our higher users.
Well, you know, water use is near and dear to my heart, so I was just curious when I read that, so. Thank you, Mr. Cheek.
Okay, good?
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, ma'am. All right, F, I think we're on F.
No, we have E6.
E6, that's right, sorry.
That's a legal letter for the, asking for permission to deal with neighbors Giblin-Nickerson as it relates to the Medicaid assessment program proposal. What this is, is it's a mechanism, and I've used it in other states, never used it in Florida, but it would be subject to legal review, an assessment only against the hospitals. And it's a method that permits so that they, permits them to be able to get additional money through Medicaid. And their goal is to try to get this in place by the end of September. But essentially, whatever they pay in, we act as the collecting agent and then it's sent up to the state, up to the federal government, and the federal government matches that money. And then it comes back down to pay Medicaid and Medicaid expenses. And it's a benefit to the hospital and we think that's something that we should explore.
Okay, commissioners?
Motion approved by E6.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comments on E6? Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll close that portion, commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. F, outstanding items?
Yes, on F, item seven has been completed. That should be just a workshop on irrigation, item eight. And I would note on item nine, there was a question that came up as it relates to the water permit for Ozella 7121.6. Mr. Cheek tells me that that was added back to our permit. But we are filing for an increase in our permit and our permit is up for renewal in February. So we would ask that you delete item seven and eight and we will add the question on runway mowing and frequency for the next time.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Kitchen?
I have a comment, several. First of all, item four, it says, "Consider half-cent local option sales tax, to be determined." We keep talking about it every single meeting. I think now's the time to say, "Let's put it on the agenda." Because if we're going to do it, my thinking is, if we're going to do it, it needs to be done in the 2022 election cycle. I don't think if we're going to do this, we want to pay the cost of the special election. And again, we're talking about a citizen referendum where citizens would decide if they want to do it. That would also give us a couple of years to do it. And again, we keep saying this, but for the benefit of the new commissioners, what we actually did the first time we talked about this is we drafted the ordinance. So what, so everybody had the same understanding of what it would be and what it would do. And that's what everybody was working from. So when there's a question about where it will go, how it will work or whatever, so my only point is, Mr. Chair, is if we're still considering it, let's put it on the agenda. And if we're not, let's scratch it off the list and get rid of it. The second point, and I'll leave that for everybody to debate, my second one is item eight. "I truly appreciate that this guy on there has completed, but I don't believe it is." My recollection is, it says, "Establish a building fund for constitutional officers funded from excess fees from them." I proposed that.
Yes, you did.
I don't remember it ever being voted on.
I, that's, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so again.
I thought that was voted on.
Well, I mean, I think it was the consensus of the board because I've talked about it two or three times, but I don't believe that ever came as for a direct vote. So, Mr. Oliver, if you don't mind, you can put this under my agenda item for the next agenda that we can discuss it. And if everybody likes the idea, we can then vote on it and direct staff to do that.
Well, we can also put the thing on there on property sales going to the shelter.
Yep, great, great idea. We could do that as well, too.
I thought we voted on that.
We did.
We did.
We voted on that.
Yep.
That came up at the following meeting, didn't it?
It did. I brought it back up at the following meeting and we voted under my agenda. We voted on that.
That's correct.
Yes, I remember voting on that as well.
Okay, well, I will agenda then number eight. We'll leave it on the list.
All right.
And that was it, my only comments on that, sir.
All right, so someone will make a motion.
Well, I guess the motion then would be if we agree that we're taking eight off or that eight is not complete, then the only item complete is seven. Would that be correct?
That is correct.
So I would make a motion to approve item F with removal of item seven.
Okay.
Didn't you say you were adding something, Randy?
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, I'm going to add your question as it relates to the frequency for mowing of the runways you'd asked about.
All right, so we got a motion, we got a second by Commissioner Kennard, Commissioner.
So Randy, are you also adding the, my note that I had about the Ozella quantities? Or is that just?
That's already, that was just informational. Ken already confirmed that that was added in.
Okay. It was? There was an email sent to you.
Came in an email, yes.
Maybe you. Oh, I didn't see that. It just came late today, so. Okay. Late meaning be, late before.
That doesn't close out this item. It was just informational.
All right, so with it, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there anybody who wants to speak for or against? The pool's not on here.
I know, I know, I know, but we're going to talk about.
I'm just kidding you, you know that.
But I'm going to talk about water, Janet Barrett.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, currently, Mr. Cheek is going to go and try and get an increase for the water. Is he taking into consideration all the new houses under construction currently? Citrus Springs currently had approved 307.
That's why we're going.
That's just Citrus Springs.
That's why we're going in for more water.
For half a year. So the thing is, the other one it says here is 11. Accessory dwelling units. I know you talked about them in the past, okay? And according to this, there was something supposed to be on today's, and I didn't, I mean, I read through and read through because I had some questions about the accessory dwelling buildings that says that Mr. Sherman's going to do something today. And I guess it's not on here.
It's coming back. It was recommendations made by the PDC and it should be on here by the end of the month.
So then we can change the date from 8/10 to be determined at this point?
No, it'll be 8/24.
Oh, okay, because I appreciate the information. Thank you.
Is there anybody else for against? Okay, with that, we'll close. Public portion, commissioners, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. G1?
G1 authorizes the dispersments of the cares funding with the exception. Uh, G one authorizes the, uh, the, uh, dispersments of the CARES funding with the exception of Nature Coast. And then obviously we've got some contracts that we're working on for the CAD system.
Okay, Randy, one, one thing too, and, and I'll get a consensus from this board, but we did, uh, on the other distributed, uh, monies to, um, the, uh, chambers and, and, um, also, um, I, I think the United Way come and give us an update, did they? I would like to see them come and give us a presentation on where this money has been, been taken, gone to.
Is the consensus of the board then you want a presentation by both the chamber and United Way?
I, I believe so.
Is that?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Slayball?
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner.
Sure.
I, I, you should, you know, let him come in and tell us how, uh, where the money's gone, how it's been spent to the public, you know? And I think that would be a, a smart move by the board. I, I've seen some of the chamber stuff. I mean, I think it's going in the right areas, but I think it would be, uh, smart to let the people know that the residents know that where, where the money's going.
I'll try to set it up for eight twenty-four, cause once we get in September, we're gonna get pretty busy.
Right, okay, thank you.
Uh, but I'll try to set up for eight twenty-four.
All right.
Uh, what about, uh, uh, Rusty from Career Source? Do you want that one too?
We also do, yes, because, uh, we need to see what, how that's going, and if people are not, uh, taking, uh, that into effect, we need to do something.
Okay, I will take it.
Commissioner Slayball?
Chair, I, I have a question about the CARES Act dispersment.
Okay.
The, um, the, the money, I know there's a, a, a little kickback about what goes to Nature Coast, but can't they get the three hundred thousand and then?
Oh, you're done.
Can't, I mean, why are we holding on to that money? I mean?
I can tell you, I know, he's gonna answer that.
Well, we, we can go ahead and disperse the three hundred. I mean, the board made the policy decision to divide the CAD system one-third, one-third, one-third. Okay, that reduced the amount of money that they got, but if the board wants to, we can go ahead and release the three hundred thousand.
Right, I'm not, yeah, and I, and I'm not talking about the CAD money. I'm talking about the three hundred thousand dollars. You know, why, just let them have that money. Everybody else got their money.
Here's, uh, again, um, I, I think it's a very good possibility. No, I, I, no, I won't vote for that. Um, uh, because when they're already asking us for more money, um, for subsidies, um, I, I, I think that money needs to be held, um, for, for their third of the CAD system.
No, that, that takes away the third.
No, that already deducts their third of the CAD system.
So why then, all right, so then why are we holding it?
Uh, the only reason, uh, is, as you all are aware and I've told you, is they are requesting about five hundred thousand dollars more money for next year. We have a current contract through next year, uh, through, uh, September thirtieth twenty-two, but they, uh, have indicated that they need five hundred thousand dollars more. Uh, they have requested to meet individually with each of you, I'd suggest, at the next public meeting.
I, 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 I think they should be in front of the here, instead of trying to meet with commissioners behind closed doors. I, I think they need to be up here in front of the public, explaining to the public why they need an extra five hundred thousand dollars. It's my opinion. I would not meet with them. Um, the only way I'll meet with them is there at that podium, giving us a, uh, presentation and explaining to the public why they need more money.
Is that the consensus of the board?
I, I would, if that was a motion, I'd second it. I mean, absolutely. I'm not gonna meet with anybody behind closed doors that you're not willing to stand in front of the TV and tell the citizens of Citrus County why you made an agreement and now why you say it's not enough. I'm interested in that. I'm not saying that, that would keep us from releasing this money, but I am. Yeah, I'm, I am also concerned that all of a sudden, everything was fine and, oh, guess what? Now we need another half a million dollars out of nowhere after the budget's been done. So, uh, I agree with you. I have great concerns about that. And I, not about giving them the money, cause maybe, maybe that's the thing to do, but I, I'm always like to have full information before we, you know, anybody that's ever built a house or whatever knows, once you let the check go, you lose your leverage, you know, so.
I agree. Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, we, um, when we were discussing the Nature Coast issue, um, if my memory serves me correctly, we were look, looking at some options to either stay with Nature Coast, uh, which was, uh, we all understood was going to involve increasing their subsidy.
Correct.
Uh, we were considering the possibility of going with an outside national type of, of, uh, uh, service to deliver our, uh, ambulance services. Um, or, you know, the possibility of looking at fire services, uh, expanding to offer ambulance services, that type of transport services. And it made sense, looking at all the numbers, uh, to stay with Nature Coast, to increase their subsidy, that we were told at that time, which was not too awful long ago, uh, that we can do this. If you can get us to here, we can do this. And, um, they made some changes. They made some very positive changes. They've got things going in the right direction. We agreed to get on board with it. We increased our subsidy. And to start hearing whispers already about our subsidy isn't high enough, we need more, we need more money. Uh, we need to meet with you guys individually and show you why we need more money. This is found money. This CARES Act money, none of this even happens, uh, without the whole coronavirus thing. Um, so I am, I am not going to entertain the idea of, uh, increasing the subsidy just, was it six months ago? Um, of saying, we can, we can run this operation on this, cause we made a decision at that point based on the numbers that they gave us. Uh, I'm gonna stick with that decision. Uh, I expect them to honor that, uh, uh, that position. I don't have a problem with, uh, with meeting with them. I'll meet with, I'll meet with them privately. Uh, but they are, I'm not going to agree to, uh, to increase their subsidy. And they need to be prepared to come up here and, you know, s- state their case as to why, uh, why they need more money. But from my position where I sit right now, no. No, we made a deal and, uh, it wasn't like we made it, we made a deal on a five-year contract three or four years ago. We made a deal on a contract six months ago, and now it's not working? That, that doesn't, that doesn't play well.
Okay, Commissioner Slayball, thank you.
No disrespect, but that's not what I asked. I asked about the CARES Act money, not about anything else. And it, this is what we tend to do. It gets all convoluted for me. I, I asked what the actual number amount was. Did you get it to?
Three hundred thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Okay, and that is already covering the CAD amount that we had decided.
That is correct, on a third, a third, a third.
This three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars and change is CARES Act money, and I'm just saying, why are we holding on to that?
Agree.
It's three hundred thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars, sixty-seven cents.
Three hundred thousand, seven hundred and forty-one. I was giving them seven hun- seventy thousand more. Okay, um, I would like to make a motion that we would give the three hundred thousand, three hundred and seventy four thousand and fifty-one cents?
Three hundred thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents.
To, um, Nature Coast CARES Act money. Get that dispersed.
And you want them to make a presentation at the next board meeting then? They indicated they wanna do it.
I didn't say that.
Okay, well, they indicated they wanna make, they wanna have those meetings sooner rather than later.
I'm trying to keep my thing clean and you getting all up in my head, so.
So you made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second? Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comments? We'll close that portion. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Okay, and I'll come to you too, Mr. Chair.
And I appreciate Commissioner Slaybach's point, and, and I agree. My understanding was, is that they weren't necessarily mutually exclusive in the fact that if you say, okay, in the CARES money, they have round numbers, three hundred thousand coming. And if that was the only issue, then it would be like, cut them a check. I think what I'm hearing is what complicates that is that, well, they might want that and another five hundred thousand. So that's, I guess what I'm trying to get an understanding of, is that, is that the case? Uh, or is that if they get the three hundred, they don't think they're gonna need the million? And the fact is, um, I guess officially, we've never heard this request, as we've said, it's kind of floating around out there. Um, so I, I have the same concern. Yeah, I think what I'm saying is if we didn't have the issue floating around perhaps out there that they're gonna need more money, it might be cut and dry. I just have a problem giving them three hundred thousand and then, you know, then it's gone. And that's what Commissioner Kennard said, that's one-time money that wasn't even supposed to happen. Will that be used for reoccurring, you know, cash flow issues? You know, is that gonna cut down the subsidy? Uh, if not, I don't have, I have a problem. I don't have a problem supporting it to give them the check. But I just wanna make sure they are not in any way connected or linked. I mean, can you, can you clarify that, so?
Uh, the only thing that I can tell you for fact is I know that they got a million dollars in PPP money. Okay, and I, you know, I have not seen their financials for this year, so I can't tell you how well they're doing their financials from last year we reviewed. But because of a lot of anomalies that occurred last year and us acquiring real estate and things like that, those financials weren't totally meaningful.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
Um, can Mr. Oliver tell me, is there a downside to doing what Commissioner Slaybach wants to do? In other words, if we have a contract with them, if, if, you know, i- is it, it's totally separate that, that they have this three hundred thousand coming, that, that their, their commitment to the CAD system has already been deducted? What would be the problem with giving them the three hundred thousand?
Uh, the only, a- and I would think that this wouldn't be something we'd do quickly. The only, uh, downside to that would be if you decided to go in a different direction.
Okay.
But, but.
Commissioner Kennard, I'll come to you.
I'll support the motion, uh, as long as, you know, my, my concern is the, the motion did not include authorizing the distribution of all these others. So all these others need to be included in there.
I was gonna ask that.
The City of Inverness, the Crystal River, I don't wanna just pull emergency services, but the agenda item is, is all of these. If we wanna, if we wanna amend the motion to include distributing all of these others, plus the money that's owed to Nature Coast, I'll support it.
Are you gonna make an amendment or you wanna make a comment?
I wanna make a comment.
Okay.
I'm not married to this. If there is a reason for keeping the money, but my feeling is everybody else is getting what they, we have filed for, so why are we just holding this back? If there is a real logical reason, but I couldn't find that reason, so that's why, it's like.
Okay, Commissioner Davis?
I feel the same way. We shouldn't hold on to money that needs to go to them, so that's why I seconded your motion. However, Randy brings up a very good point. If they are having financial solvency issues, and I'm not throwing shade here at all. We don't know, but we ought to give them an opportunity to, to come in and present to us about what their situation is currently, because COVID has upended everything. So yes, it was a contract written six months ago, but let them come in and let's make sure that we are, you know, being good financial stewards of the money. And two weeks is not gonna make a difference. And we can vote to release that money in two weeks. That's kind of where I'm going after what just, Mr. Oliver just said.
Commissioner?
Yes, and that's fine, but I, I was under the understanding that when we applied for this CARES Act money, a certain amount went to the sheriff, a certain amount went to the fire, a certain amount went to, eh, um, Nature Coast, um, the City of Inverness, City of Crystal River. And it just seems like this one little caveat is being held back because there might be negotiations or they might have financial problems or whatever, and I'm not saying they do, but it just didn't make, it, it still doesn't make sense to me. So whatever y'all decide is fine. I just wanted to put that out there. Why are we doing this? So if somebody has a, a clear answer, I would love to hear it.
Ms, Ms, uh, Mr. Chair? If, uh, Commissioner Slaybach would do what Commissioner Kennard had recommended and amend her motion include that and everybody, I could support it as well.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, I would like to amend my motion to, uh, approve the dispersment of the CARES Act money to include the list that has been given to us and also add Nature Coast EMS three hundred thousand dollars and change.
Three hundred thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars, sixty-seven cents.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion. Now, Commissioner Davis?
Second.
We got a second. I'll open it back up to the public. Anybody who wants to speak? If you wanna speak, come to the podium.
Hello, Commissioner, Don Hires again. I don't have a dog in this hunt. But I was here when this gentleman talked about making nine dollars an hour. I think that, that, uh, your decision now, uh, I certainly, as a citizen, I uphold that. I, 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 I had a problem in hearing about withholding CARES money, which had been through some process, asked for, received, and now we're gonna take and either hold that money from a previous position and decision because of suppositions. I think that many of us here know about the history of EMT service in this county. And what you, ladies and gentlemen, have had to put up with and others in the past. But I, as a private citizen, encourage all of us not to base a decision to withhold money, funding, resources based upon supposition. We need to move forward with the original intent of the request for that money, regardless of what we currently, uh, face. I, I, I think it's a dangerous trap for us to do that, because then it looks like it, you know, it, it's a bait and switch deal. And I'm not suggesting that, but I don't know right now without having sitting, being able to sit down and think of the more, um, polite language, uh, how to approach that. So, uh, I, I applaud all of you for, uh, working together, communicating, and come to an amended motion.
I thank you. Does anybody else wants to speak for or against? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the, uh, meeting. I, I'm, I'm not gonna vote for it, because, uh, I, I, I can appreciate everybody, but, um, it scares me. We're gonna give them that money, then they're gonna come back and want more money. Um, I would rather wait the two weeks, have them come in, give us a presentation, and then we make the decision then. Um, but, uh, you know, so I'm not saying we won't give them the money, but, uh, but again, I, I feel that they're gonna come in and we're, they're gonna get that money. They've got a million PPP money. They could have been working on salaries with that. That's what it was for. Uh, they've never missed a day's work. Um, so, so I, I mean, I could go on and on about it, um, but so, so with that, I, I won't support it today, because I think they need to come in and give us a presentation in two weeks. It's not that, uh, long of a time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and as you know, I don't like to go against you, but I must today.
It's fine, it's fine.
And, and here's why. And, and I think Commissioner Slaybach drew out the point, and even Commissioner Kennard, in the fact that I think they're too, I, I kinda disagree with the speaker that was just up here. And I'm not, I'm talking hypothetically, but if you know your roofer, that you owe him a thousand dollars to finish the job, and you know he hasn't paid his subcontractors, you're gonna be a little leery giving him the thousand dollars, even though you have a contract to do it, if you know he hasn't paid his subs, okay? And I think what we're concerned about is that why would we, if we, if we're facing a potential, um, monetary issue with somebody we have a contract with, we wanna keep our cards close to our, and I think that's what you're saying. But in this case, I, I really feel like, um, they're, they are separate. In other words, without the, i- if it's gonna take them the three hundred thousand COVID money to stay afloat, that's, that's a bad, that's a bad situation for us to be in, you know what I mean?
It is, I agree with that.
So, I'm looking forward to them coming, making their presentation. I'm looking forward to the same, them saying, although, there's a misunderstanding. We don't need any more money, okay? Um, a- and that's why I will support it, because I think the time will be is to grill them and say, why did you tell us this would do it? And now all of a sudden it didn't, especially, I don't want them coming back saying, well, if we were counting on the COVID money and you didn't give it to us, you say, I, I would like to take that out.
You sold me.
Okay, so that, that's all.
Commissioner Davis, anything?
No, I'm good.
All right, anything else?
And I just wanna say, I'm working on my communication skills, and that was a perfect example, because what I was thinking of is if you had a roofer come and roof your house, but then you found out he might go out of business, you still owe that bill, so, thank you.
With all that, all those in favor?
Chair, before you do that, can I please have it, the list read into the record?
Send the memo, it's in the agenda memo.
But it's a part of the motion.
The only part that's being added is to pay Nature Coast three hundred thousand, seven hundred four, uh, seven hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents.
But her amendment said to approve the dispersment of the CARES Act money to include the list, so I would.
It's in the agenda item.
The five, five items.
Okay, all right, so we're all good. Okay, with, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes five zero. All right.
The, uh, G two.
Twist your arm, Ruth.
Oh, you did, no, you, you, you just tell them, you just tell them.
Approved dates for the public input for the strategy plan events for October. Approved dates for the public input for the strategy plan events for October sixteenth of twenty-one, at Central Ridge Community Center, and October the twenty-third at the College of Central Florida in La Canto.
Chair, move to approve G two.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a second, uh, I'll let everybody know now, I will not be at these, I will be out of town. So I look forward to hearing, uh, how, how they come out, but, um, I already had a pre, pre-existing trip planned, so.
Myself also, Mr. Chair, I'll be out of town both those weekends, uh, but I've enjoyed the hour I spent on the telephone with the person doing the survey, so, uh, thank you.
Okay, um, so we got a motion, we got a second, we'll open it up to the public, does anybody wanna speak from the public? Anybody wanna speak from the public, seeing none, we'll close it, Commissioner, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose, motion passes four zero, I'll wait on Commissioner Davis to come back in. All right, advisory board announcement.
Uh, yes, I one, uh, we talked about the, uh, issue that Commissioner Kitchen raised, that came up with the Public Safety Coordinating Council, uh, talked with Mr. Cherry, the CEO of Livestream. He suggested that, uh, Lisa Wolston, who showed up for a meeting or two, and, uh, for whatever reason, she didn't feel like, uh, there was a lot of input solicited from her, but he felt like if we, if she was appointed as the, uh, Director of the Local Substance Abuse Treatment Program to the Public Safety Coordinating Council, this would address the situation. I've also suggested to Mr. Cherry that, uh, Ms. Wolston, uh, sit down with Kelly Kell and talk about the issues, 'cause I understand they were principally between, uh, Kelly Kell, which is court alternatives, and, uh, Livestream were, were the principal issues. So we would ask for the appointment of Lisa Wolston to the Public Safety Coordinating Council.
Thank you.
Motion approved, item I one.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaybock, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll close that portion, Commissioner, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose, motion passes five zero, then Holly, I need your vote on, uh.
Aye, please.
Aye, so that makes it five zero.
On G two?
On G two, uh, on G two, each use a aye.
Okay, uh.
Hold on, all right, so.
Committee reports.
Committee reports, Commissioner Davis?
Um, my ELC board was canceled last week, so I have nothing, but I have medical tomorrow.
Okay, Commissioner Kitchen?
Uh, quick update about yesterday's Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council meeting. Thought it was very timely that we had a presentation, we had several presentations, but one got into, from the, uh, seed, seagrass degradation in Tampa Bay, if you guys have been following that over the years. Uh, what has been pretty interesting was that, um, back in the seventies, I guess Tampa Bay was declared dead as far as being void of life and, uh, in, in the water. And, uh, since that time, they, you know, they put in many things from sewage treatment plants, the water, you know, quality issues, and not only did the seagrass return, but it came back higher than what it was measured in the nineteen fifties. But now, for the first time since that recovery has taken place over the last year, it has dropped again. Not significantly, but enough of a concern that, I know you commissioners have kind of been following what's happened at, um, I'm gonna say Indian Lagoon, uh, on the East Coast?
Yeah.
Um, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, Indian Lagoon, yeah.
Indian River Lagoon.
Indian River Lagoon, all that took was a six, that was a sixty percent decline in the reed grass, and that's what caused everything that's going on, they still don't know, uh, if and when all that is gonna get taken care of. So it, it was just kind of a, you know, there, there, there's a discussion, they wanna keep an eye on it. But some of the statistics that came out of that, for the six counties in the Tampa Bay region, and this is based on what they call a healthy bay, meaning Tampa Bay, uh, one of five jobs are related to the bay. Uh, twenty-two billion in economic impact, and, um, so, you know, it's just a, a, an amazing amount of impact, it just comes from the water. Well, a lot of people say, well, we live here because of the water, but that was one. The other one that came about, Mr. Chair, was we had a long discussion about stormwater. And I pointed out to them, well, imagine that, we have a hearing coming up on stormwater, uh, fees, or MSB, or whatever the term is we're using it. And so I kinda polled everybody at the TBRPC about what do you do in your counties or your cities, uh, how is it handled? And there's some really good discussion, things that came up that, that made common sense both ways, you know? The folks from many places said, well, you need to do it on a tiered basis, which based on square foot, uh, impervious surface, which they said we're doing, and somebody else said, well, you know, if you go into Tampa, the Bank of America building has this much impervious surface, and a car dealer might have fifty times the impervious surface, so is it fair for the Bank of America to pay less for this fee than? And so then the discussion was, well, yeah, because if you're charging on the, the effect of stormwater runoff, sure. Well, then our friend, and I think you guys all know him well, Mr. Jack Mariano, the, uh, he's our, he's our chairman down there now, he said, you know, all this talk about swales and holding, uh, water on properties and stuff, and he, and he talks about impervious surface. If you don't want fertilizer, you don't want things run into the, uh, the canals and the lakes, it should be better to run a pipe directly from your roof downspout gutter right out into the water. Because he said, if you did that, you're not running anything over the land, you're not taking grass clippings, fertilizer, or whatever. Uh, that, you know, he was advocating having patios and pavers and impervious service if you're gonna have it right up to the seawall. Because his point was, it's better to have that water going directly into the water. So, you know, it was a lot of radical discussion about things that, you know, we never hear about. We hear about swales and retaining water. His argument was, don't add anything to it, and don't give anything the opportunity to be added to, get it, get it in there, right? So, just, just passing on that, that we are, they call this the convener of the region, because we're not, we don't exist in a vacuum, there's, everybody's kinda dealing with the same things. So, um, that was, uh, you know, quite, quite a good discussion. And, and in fact, Jack went on to say, you know, people didn't like the fee when we put it into place. He said, but we just did a poll, we put it in place in two thousand and six. And he said, just recently, the polls on how the county is dealing with stormwater management increased by thirteen percent. So the citizens like what we're doing. And he said, all it took was a little bit of local flooding where people never had flooding before to anticipate. And I go, wow, imagine that, you know, we just, 'cause I gotta tell you, folks, I, I've lived here for thirty-five years, it flooded in Sugar Mill, it never floods in Sugar Mill from a hurricane or whatever. Uh, Cypress Run was almost impassable, you know, go, we had water up to people's front doors. I'd never seen anything like that, and I, and again, we had a deluge, and, you know, a hundred-year rainfall, or whatever you wanna call it. But those are the kind of things that, that, you know, when you talk about stormwater management, it's a very timely time to be having that discussion. So just wanted to pass on to you, Mr. Chairman, that, that, um, you know, other counties are doing it, they do it different ways. Sarah's, uh, Management County relies basically on the municipalities to do, because most of the municipalities are on the water. Most of the unincorporated area are in gated communities. And they charge the people in the gated communities a wastewater fee for, uh, maintenance of their ponds inside the community. So, everybody does it, it's just kinda done a different way and, and house out there. So, good discussion, and also discussion about seawalls, about, people are talking about having a uniform height of seawalls when seawalls are built, because if, if we're trying to eliminate discharge into water bodies, uh, one person was talking about how he was prohibited from building a seawall as high as his neighbors. He had to build one lower than the neighbors on either side. He goes, what, what's the reasoning behind that? So, there, there's a lot of discussion about trying to find the science behind what, what's the uni, what should a uniform height of a seawall be, or whatever. So, just, that was it, so thank you very much, sir.
Okay, I don't have anything.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I, I just wanna, um, uh, comment on some of Commissioner Kitchen's, uh, comments, they're great stuff. And, um, the reason that, that so many do it differently, uh, with stormwater management, is that the numbers are arbitrary, there is so little science that goes into, um, these, these local codes. Uh, when we were talking about, um, po, or considering addressing our waterfront setbacks, I mentioned then, and I've mentioned several times since then, that I sat through a city council meeting over in Crystal River, and I forget, uh, who the, uh, who the engineering consultant was at that time, uh, that was speaking to the council. But their position was that the, the new science, if you will, is not to try and control the volume of water, uh, that's, that's, uh, entering into our lakes and bays and rivers and so forth, but to control the nutrients, the nutrients do the damage, not the water. And so, we needed to be looking at, um, different ways to stop the nutrients, but allow the water to go. And, uh, unfortunately, we, we've not gotten there yet. Uh, there's a tremendous amount of information that's sitting out in La Canto Government Building that I still wish, uh, that they would take a look at. There was a lot of hours by some very sharp people, uh, that went into putting that together, and it still sits. Um, I would like to see that happen, I would like to see us get away from this, this nonsense of berman swale and, um, you know, getting as far away from, uh, the water body as you possibly can. Uh, when we had that discussion, I remember we had a room full of people here, and, uh, there was a comment made about the Rainbow River, you've gotta be a hundred and fifty or a hundred feet from the water, or something along those lines, and my only comment was, the science has changed. You know, the, the, uh, the approach has been modernized that, uh, you know, that you, you look at controlling the nutrients, not the volume of water. I really hope at some point we can get back to that conversation. Uh, we're a waterfront community, and I think we need to have a better approach to controlling the nutrients that are entering our water bodies.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I neglected one little thing, which was a tie-in, also we had a presentation on red tide, and the big thing came back to nutrients, phosphorus, and nitrogen. And, you know, as we all know, red tide occurs naturally, but what, what they're telling us is the degree of the severity is based on phosphorus and nitrogen. And that's, you know, so much discussion came back to stormwater, same, same thing again.
Piney Point was, you know, red tide happens every year, Piney Point was, what, two-hundred-and-twenty million gallons pumped into Tampa Bay that supports one in five jobs for, for the region. Makes no sense.
Yep. I, I don't have anything, Mr. Slaybock?
Um, I agree about the stormwater, and it rains so much that the Beverly Hills pool is now full.
Hey, you can use it now.
But, um, we, I had, uh, the pleasure of, uh, nominating for a second term Commissioner Davis for the Value Adjustment Board, so we got that out of the way. And, um, I also Saturday, uh, was able to represent the board at the Purple Heart, um, Day there, uh, the two-hundred-and-thirty-sixth anniversary, uh, by reading a proclamation, so thank you.
Commissioner Kennard?
No, I have nothing.
All right, Commissioner Davis?
All right, item K one, discussion and vote on the final version of the Medical Examiner First Amendment Interlocal Agreement between Citrus, Hernando, Lake, Marion, Seminole, and Sumter Counties for cost share of medical examiner services. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve K one.
I'll second that.
Make, make, uh, Commissioner Davis, Mr. Slaybock second, is there any public discussion? Public discussion, seeing none, commissioners?
Quick question, sir?
Okay.
Uh, looks fine to me, has our attorney looked at it?
Yes, she has.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
And the money's budgeted.
Okay, motion passes five zero.
Okay.
All right, K two.
Item K two, discussion and vote on resolution supporting prosperity Citrus. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve K two, and then I have comments.
Well, I think we all got comments.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a second, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, I was interviewed during our first event on Saturday, and, uh, what I said was that this is recognition that some of us are born on second and third base, some of us are born not even on the ball field. And so it, it takes a lot for somebody who is an individual on the edge or living below the edge to put together all the pieces and parts to change their life trajectory. So we have all kinds of, I look at it as spokes on the ground. Um, you have housing, you have nutrition, you have transportation, childcare, education, jobs, justice, safety, all of these, health, all these wonderful, um, spokes, and we are spending a bazillion, that's a technical term, um, as a nation on combating poverty, and that's at the federal, state, and local level. And so this is a run, we're running a very lean proof-of-concept collaboration to try to be the hub of the wheel, to pick all those spokes up and make a functional wheel for folks that are on the edge. It should be somewhat instructive that, or to back up a second, those of us who work in public service, um, throughout the county, should be a team to serve our citizens. And so it is with great honor that I say that I have two constitutionals in the audience that are here in support of it, a retired judge and a director of a program that is working with one of the constitute, another constitutional who is not here. All of those constitutionals have the ability to direct their staff unilaterally. I am one of five, so I would ask for support for my team of fellow forecolleagues to do this. Um, when we originally did the first meetings, we did not have, this is a chamber initiative, we did not include county staff at all. It became clear, because there is no NGO that does transit, and then there's also, um, housing and other aspects, uh, I put this down, I had a nice list, um, transit, housing, library services, et cetera. There are things in the county that are directly the best solution for these folks. And so I went to Randy Oliver, this is his staff, this is not my staff, and he has been kept apprised of this and blessed me inviting them to the meetings. And I did a little quick, um, calculation, I believe we have spent to date about a hundred and ten person hours since Feb, or since April, a hundred and ten person hours, and that's been the extent of the expense, as it were. Um, most of them exempt employees, and again, it's not, they're not my staff, they're Randy's staff. So, that's why I put in there that, um, on item, was it at the bottom, number two, to the extent of utilizing staff and resources as appropriate within already-defined duties, objectives, and budgets of various departments. We are running lean, we are running mean, and I'm not asking for any funding at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes, sir, um, gosh, you know, what can I say but here I go being the bad guy again? And, and I'll say this, is that, um, I truly, truly appreciate Commissioner Davis, uh, Mr. Chairman, with, for her enthusiasm and her, you know, her, her zeal, uh, to move this along, and, and really the way she's thrown herself into it. I just think my issue is with, um, policy and precedent-setting, and with, you know, the boundaries in which we work. So, I could say this could be a two-part discussion. One is, you know, are, do we agree that, that what this group is trying to do is a good thing?
Yes.
Do we think that it's something that citizens should get behind?
Yes.
Um, but to me, Mr. Chair, this rises to the level of using county staff and county taxpayer dollars for nonprofit organizations. If, if the Chamber of Commerce, or the State Chamber, or whatever wants to do this, and Commissioner Davis is heading it up, that's wonderful. But if, if you or myself were involved with the Lions Club, or the Rotary, or CASA, or any other viable, good organization in the county, and I went out and started directing staff to do things, um, that's, that's clearly, that, that's no different than having, uh, county employees work on private property, as far as I'm concerned. That's no different than having them go mow, mow a friend's lawn. And, and as far as I'm concerned, and we had this discussion with Commissioner Smith, you cannot have a county employee volunteer and say they're invol, in, uh, volunteering, because they are not gonna say no to a county commissioner, okay? So, uh, we, we, you know, we, as you remote call him, Mr. Chair, you know, and I pointed out, Commissioner Smith, you can't invite employees up for a cup of coffee, because they cannot turn you down. You might think they can, but they cannot, okay? So, I think we've, the, the line here is, is from, in my mind, this is the way, the way I see it, is Commissioner Davis has a, has great zeal for this, her heart's in the right place, but I just think she's kind of going, in my mind, in my thoughts, she's gone too far by getting, uh, you know, A, directing county employees, and she just said, which I have no reason to doubt, that, um, Randy was in tune with all this, where I heard today that things happened that Randy had no clue happened. So I guess we'll have to get to the bottom of that to find out, you know, what's going on. And here's the other thing, it has nothing to do with the folks in the audience. These two ladies I admire more than most people I know. These two ladies I admire more than most people I know, right? Mr. McGee, is he still here? Absolutely. Think the world of him. And, but I disagree with county employees and county taxpayer dollars being involved in this. Has nothing to do with the people in the program, and that's just my opinion. So, if you say that you're going to allow county staff to be utilized when it says, again, "As appropriate within already-defined duties", Mr. Oliver defines those duties, not a county commissioner. And it puts him in a position of having to tell the county commissioner, "No", and he doesn't like to do that, just like nobody likes to tell people, "No". So, I just think it clouds that area, it muddies the water. I think it would be a much cleaner deal if Commissioner Davis moved forward with this and organized the group and put it all together, but did not rely on county staff involvement time, people, or resources. And just, and just about, you know, again, I'm not saying it won't work. I think you used the term bazillion or whatever. But according to my research, since the Johnson Administration, 1962, the federal government spent $15 trillion, okay, on the war on poverty. Okay? And the poverty rates have not changed in that time. So, 15 trillion spent on the war on poverty, nothing has changed. So, let's look at 2012. There's 92 federal programs in 2012 that spent $799 billion on the war on poverty. And it's going, been going on for these last 55 years with no measurable change. And one final number to keep in mind, because this goes against not, keep in mind what I'm saying. This is not about volunteers trying to get out and help people. This is about spending, whether it's staff or whatever, taxpayer dollars, that in 1964, there was 700, it was $722 a person that was spent on the war on poverty. And in 2019, it was $22,740. That's close to $91,000 for a family of four. And that family of four, the poverty level today is at 26,172. So, if you took all the money spent on the war on poverty, you could have just given it to the folks, and they could have had $91,000 in income. And my final comment for us to remember about all this, federal mandated portion of the budget on anti-poverty programs, $800 billion in 2019, and that's almost half of all the federal income tax revenue collected. So, my point is, trying to fight poverty is an admirable thing, but it cannot, it has been demonstrated, it can't be done with throwing government money at. And if this is about, do you, is it a good program? Do you support it? Yes, I do. Do you support staff time involved in it? No, I don't. And I guess that's the way it's summarized, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Davis.
So, there's a couple of different comments on there. You're absolutely right, the 15 trillion hadn't worked yet. This is something different. And so, I have two comments on that. One, the way this is something different, and I have really studied this topic a lot because I'm one of the kids that was born on somewhere between second and third base. And it's a whole mind, it's a mind-bending experience to read the book, A Framework for Understanding Poverty. It's a very thick textbook. I highly recommend reading it if you want to understand this issue. Case in point, a young man was given $1,000 to use to better himself, to go to school, get a trade degree, et cetera. His mama was arrested for meth and sentenced to prison, and she had until Monday to remand herself into custody. And mama, this is, asked for the money so she could have one last blowout weekend with meth before she went to jail. And the young man gave it to her. And that should give everybody pause. So, the realities of poverty-stricken youth is that it's a highly matriarchal society. They do not believe in tomorrow, they do not believe they can achieve, and they don't have routine entertainment sources. So, if they have a pile of money that lands in their lap, they do not invest that in going to school to create a better life for themselves. Instead, they give it to mama to blow on meth. So, the difference in Prosperity Citrus, which is a high, 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 high volunteer effort and fraction, fraction, fraction of a penny on the dollar expense, is to provide life coaching. And we are going to fail mightily on multiple people, have absolutely no doubt about that whatsoever. But it's a lot like the story of the kid going down the beach and throwing one starfish into the ocean and walking along, and somebody tells him, "Hurt, you're never going to save all the starfish", and he goes, "But it was important to that one that I saved him". So, if we save that child from a life of poverty, and then their children are then not in that generational poverty, then we start to slowly turn the tide. That's why I ran for office, is because you can make a difference locally, and that's what I'm trying to do. To go towards, this is not the county's job, then I don't personally want to micromanage staff. Talk to Eric Head, the much beloved Director of Library Systems. They do outreach all the time, at the Manatee Festival, the Strawberry Festival, et cetera. Are you going to tell him that he shouldn't be going to the Prosperity Citrus outreach event? And not make the determination on whether that's good? I don't know how many they signed up, but they signed up quite a few library card holders at Saturday's event. And they are one of the primary providers of adult literacy programs, if not the only one, I bet Shonda can speak to that, in the county. So, that is why it is so critical to have county employees make the decision as to whether it fits their mission and budget or not. And I'm not going to get into that, and if I have to completely step aside for this board to approve this, to back it, just to get rid of the whole, "Can't invite somebody out for coffee"? I do understand that concern, then I will. So, that's, I think that's all my points.
Okay, yeah, you had.
But again, I appreciate that. I mean, I appreciate your passion. I mean, we can feel it, you're speaking from the heart, and I don't disagree with what you're saying. What I'm, what I'm saying is that, you brought up a very valid point. Whether or not Mr. Head goes and does that is up to Mr. Oliver, okay? Mr. Oliver calls the shots as to what the department heads go to and what they don't go to because they need to budget for those kind of outreach programs. And my only point was, was that it's up to Mr. Oliver to decide. When those department heads would come to him and say, "I think we should do this", then it's between the department heads and him. And I don't think us as commissioners should be getting into that process. That's all I'm saying. I don't, I would never go to Mr. Oliver and say, "Randy, make sure somebody from here is at that, or at that, or at that". I mean, that's his call to say, "This fits our mission, we can work this in, and this helps everybody". And so, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that, that the lines get, because then I just see it, Mr. Chair, is that the next thing will be, is we'll have another nonprofit organization here saying, "Well, you did it for this group, you know, we need some help with this in our group, and we need some help with this in our group", and they all serve good purposes. I would not sit up here and try to single out one group over another. So, valid points, and I just want to say, I agree with you. It's just how it's getting done that I have to.
I just have one very quick point to make. This is not actually a nonprofit, this is a collaboration between multiple entities.
Okay, all right, with that, I'm going to agree 100% with Commissioner Kitchen. We since heard a commissioner that was doing, and again, this is your passion. But when you read this paragraph, I mean, you're just opening and slamming the door on him. Constitutional officers are elected to run their, to run their divisions and run their employees. We hired him to do this, okay? And to me, this is out of the line. I'm going to tell you what's really, I was really aggravated with yesterday. When I got a phone call from a guy in Tallahassee, from the chambers, okay, trying to convince me, and when I got into it with him and started pointing all this out, you know, he agreed with a lot of it. And we'll be the first county to do this, to pass a resolution, okay? Because I asked him, there's nine participating, but there's only this, we'll be the first to pass the resolution. No way I would support this, okay? If you weren't, if this was just a chamber event, they would not be able to use Ring 166. Staff wouldn't be attending that, okay? Stat, we do have programs for this, and staff should be doing it through the county, not through this organization. I had phone calls after your Saturday event telling me about it. Again, I appreciate you taking this on, but this here crosses, this paragraph crosses the line and it handcuffs the administrator. And there's no way that I would even think about doing that, okay? You have, United Way has a program, Education has a program, School Board ought to be involved. They understand where poverty is out there. And it's to my knowledge, some of these people aren't even involved, and they're kind of upset about it. And I went, and I had that conversation yesterday, and the guy was kind of taken away when I went down this road. And I told him flat out, "There's no way I'm passing this", okay? Especially with number two paragraph. For a commissioner to bring this forward, and again, I appreciate your passion, but for a commissioner to bring this forward, to try to handcuff an administrator, is very cross, as far as I'm concerned, crossing the line, there's no way I'm going to support it because of that. Do I support what y'all are doing? 110%, you know, like I told him yesterday, we need to be taking kids, and we need to be busting them to Little League, football, basketball. We need to get them in sporting events. And I could go on and on about it. You want to get them away from their damn parents? I can tell you right now, if my 25-year-old or my 28-year-old was going to jail and they got handed $1,000 and the kid gave, I would be over there taking care of that child. You never quit parenting, ever, okay? And I still parent today, and I'm sure all of us do. You know, my kids still call and ask me, when I see something that I don't like, and I think they're going down a wrong road, I got the phone picked up, and I'm telling them about it. And, you know, again, I've helped many children out through sports and things like that, and I think there's organizations that do this. But that, that paragraph, I've never seen that paragraph in a resolution. And to me, that's extremely, extremely dangerous, and it crosses the line when it comes to policy. Commissioners, any other comments?
I, I have some thoughts, but I was just curious if the public is going to speak, or what.
Well, I mean, we can open it up.
Would I like to ask a point of clarification? Did you read the additional handout that listed all the people that have been involved?
Again, I, I, and we appreciate that, okay?
Because there's a lot.
But that right there, it crosses a line as a commissioner.
Okay, I'm just saying that.
That is the administrator, those are his employees. 110 hours has been wasted of their time doing their job, okay? And again, that's just my opinion. And again, I can tell you, if a commissioner tells an employee, "You're going to be there", they're going to be there. They're not going to tell me no, or they're not going to tell any of us no. And I don't think it's, I don't, I go to, I go to him, or I go to Ms. Lynn with my issues, and they deal with staff, okay? I don't go to staff, I don't tell staff what to do. I don't have, they're not my employees. We elected an administrator to run employees, constitutional officers are elected to run their employees. So, that comment from the get-go was, and again, I was appalled that I got a phone call out of Tallahassee trying to strong-arm me to vote yes for this. And I started, I just kind of laughed at it, and I told him exactly what I thought. And I told him I wouldn't be voting for this today because it's not the county's responsibility to do, it's just not the county's responsibility.
Okay. I have to say something. You know, the idea of Prosperity Citrus is a great one. And I'm really thankful that you have brought this to the forefront because without you doing this, this discussion, which is very awkward and difficult, would not be happening. You facilitated getting the people to the table. You, this would, again, we have many programs that overlap, but nobody was quite connecting the dots. I mean, I can look at the people in the audience that have been there, boots on the ground, I mean, fighting for our children. As a mother and as a commissioner, I want to save every child. You know that. And I support the effort of breaking generational poverty. I can't commend you enough, Commissioner Davis, for this. I, I am a little, I have some concerns, so I was just wondering if, is it possible to amend this resolution so that one and two is taken off? I, you know, it's just a thought because I think it's, I think this is an important thing, but I do have some conflicts, and I'm, they've been addressed, and I, but I just think, is that possible?
I would say perhaps maybe we do open to the public, and then, once they're spoken, if the board is still going to shoot this down, then I will withdraw it. And we'll just go completely underground.
Well, I did say that I support this, or maybe I didn't say that I support this. I just, there's some questions I have and some, it's uncomfortable questions, yes, because I don't want to be the person that doesn't want to save children. But there's some legitimate things about being a commissioner, and you have said you would step away from that, which might also be an option, just so that employees aren't feeling the pressure.
That was one of the suggestions that was made to me, that perhaps the board would entertain supporting this if I were not remotely the front person. I'm only the titular head of this. There, this has been a very strong team effort, and I have to say, it was, it has been an absolute honor and a pleasure to watch so many community leaders in a room together and very freely speaking about the challenges they have and opportunities. And the energy in the room is just amazing trying to tackle this problem. And again, it goes down to the coaching of these individual children, and also parenting the parents. Because if, you know, if your grandparents didn't know how to, were functionally illiterate and didn't know how to handle money and had been on public assistance, and your parents were too, what's going to happen to the kids? It's very hard to break that cycle without a helping hand to do so. And this is the most functional collaboration ever. And so, in, at least in the history of this county, and I, it's something different. We're just trying, you know? We're always going to have public assistance, because as I joked with my dad, and this is being a smart aleck guy, so incoming, last I checked, we still allow Democrats to vote in this country. So, we are always going to have public assistance programs. As a fiscal conservative, I want to make sure they work and that we do turn people into taxpayers who are functional members of our society. And that was a joke.
All right, Commissioner Kitchen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate your patience, and Commissioner Kennard as well, since I know he's been waiting patiently to speak. Again, let's just be real clear about this. Public input's important, but I sit up here and I voted against a roomful of people who were the upstanding business crust of our community, and I was told, "If you don't vote yes, you don't appreciate those people". And I said, "That's ridiculous, and it's ridiculous today". So, we can have Judge Thomas, the clerk of the court, who I love dearly, stand up and tell me I'm the biggest horse's patoot in the world, and that's okay because I'm telling you what I feel. I don't think you should step down from this. I don't think you should, I think if this is your passion, but I agree with what Commissioner Slaybaugh suggested. I can support this if you remove number one and number two, okay? It says we support the efforts of it, that, but we're not putting money into it. And it's just like we support the Rotary, and we support CASA, and we support all these other organizations, okay? And if you have a heart for it, I don't think you should step down from it. But there has to be a clear line drawn that says, just because Commissioner Kitchen has a passion for this group, I'm not going to come in. And here's the big thing about being a fiscal conservative in my mind. I leave it up to my constituents to donate their money and time where they want to. I don't take it from them and tell them how I'm going to spend it for them. And that's the difference. Anytime we take one hour, okay, of a county employee's time, and we donate it to a nonprofit or whatever group this is, that's what we've done, okay? So, I can support the resolution without number one and number two. I don't feel that, you know, that you would need to step down from this. And I applaud the people in the community. But again, folks, I respect you all, and we can have a whole line of people telling me I'm wrong, but I'm not going to change my position on this, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
Yeah. With a great deal of respect for all of my colleagues up here. I will support the motion as it stands. There are, for a number of different reasons, and, you know, it was mentioned that, that we, you know, we would be willing to provide resources for some, you know, kids to play this sport, or to play this sport, or to do this. And we do that. We provide parks, we provide ball fields of various sorts and so forth. Some kids need that physical, that group activity, that mentoring, that type of deal, that type of involvement from folks who have a higher cause in mind in helping them to move along. It's not just about teaching them how to play the game of baseball, or football, or softball, or soccer, whatever it might be. But there's mentoring that goes on on those fields. Other kids need. Other kids need mentoring and outreach, uh, from those capable of doing that, uh, in different ways. Uh, this to me looks like a, looks like a program, uh, that does that, that offers that outreach. Uh, I'm sitting down here shaking my head, no, I absolutely would not want you to step down, uh, from, uh, from your involvement in this, Commissioner Davis. You, you've got a passion for it. Uh, I would be willing to support this, um, uh, this agenda item as, the motion as it stands right now. Uh, if you desire to modify it in any way, you know, certainly I'll reconsider it at that, at that point. I'm not saying I won't, but, you know, I'll take a look at it then, but, uh, as it stands right now, I would support it.
I think perhaps a reasonable accommodation, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Would be, um, so far, again, we've been moving very fast and lean and the calendar invite, invites have come from my personal email account. And what I will do is make sure that any invites are coming from the chamber and I will step back from being the visible person that's doing the inviting to meetings and whatnot. And, um, that will remove a lot of the optics issue, which I agree is there. And then departments can decide if they feel like they want to exhibit at any of these outreach events, they can do so without cost and it's on them whether they want to or not. And we'll just, we'll just take the, take the foot off the gas on using county resources or approving it and I can move the meetings to somewhere besides 166 or the chamber can. And so, just try to throttle back a little bit. But I do, but I do want open to the public to happen. I don't expect it to change your mind, Commissioner Kitchen, but I would like, if any of them were willing to speak, I would like their comments into the record.
No, and, and we already got a motion, we got seconds, so we're going to open up the public. You know, a suggestion that I even give, uh, the gentleman yesterday I spoke with, is this is a great place with the, with the Core Center we just opened. We have a building over there, we have someone staffing that building where phone calls can come in. I thi- and this is, Chambers run that. I think there's a lot of things that can happen here, that this can be a really good thing, you know, but, uh, you know, if you, if you have people calling in, uh, we have someone over there, we have set hours, so I think this is something that you ought to come to the core group and make a presentation to them, and I think they would open the door right up. And like I said, we've got a conference room, we've got areas where if you wanted to set up and, and have meetings there, you can do that. Um, you know, Dawn Flaherty, she, she's running that for us and she's a great resource, uh, with, with, um, Tallahassee and, and, you know, doing things. So, I believe there is a, a fit here and I believe there is a place to fit it. And, and, you know, so I gave all those ideas to him yesterday and, and he agreed with a lot of the things that I said. But again, it's just, it just, it's a fundamental thing with me, um, when, when you start, you, when you start handcuffing an administrator that has the ability to run his employees, uh, the commissioners, uh, we've only have two, and that's, uh, uh, to find, uh, the lady and the gentleman sitting here, but we, we don't, uh, we don't have control over anything else. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public, I'll get your comments and I'm going to the public and, and let them speak.
I didn't, I don't want you to step down.
I don't either.
I was just, you know, trying, I'm trying to help you support this and get this. Um, I do want to say that the, the, the part that's bothering me the most is, and I'm having trouble getting over it, is the, the, and budgets of various departments. And the reason why is because they're working on the budget that has been approved and the directors have accounted for every penny, and that is just so vague and broad for me that it makes it difficult for me to get on board. That's why I suggested removing that.
Okay. With that, I'm going to the public. Uh, so the podium's open, please come on up. Madam Clerk? Who's going, you, you're first.
It is so cold in here.
I'm putting the timer on.
Not, not for more reset, Madam Clerk.
Listen, uh, Commissioner, thank you, Mr. Chair, very much. Um, Commissioner Kitchen, I would never call you a horse's patootie. So, um...
Just on your breath.
No, not at all. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in support of the resolution this afternoon. Um, and I'll, I'll just be, you know, just upfront and honest with, and frank with all of you. Commissioner Davis and I talked a little bit about this last week and, 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 and I will tell you that I said to her, I think we got the cart a little bit before the horse here. You know, I, you, you were right, I do operate in a unilateral position where I have the opportunity to, um, make decisions as to the clerk's involvement, um, from my standpoint. So that was an agreed, agreed thing, that that was probably what happened. I just wanted to share with you, I, I do support this particular initiative, I think it's, um, a vital, um, um, aspect to our community. Um, very clearly that it is a hand up, not a hand out. It is an opportunity to help the citizens, help those that need it so badly to understand that there are pathways, um, that, to which they can achieve a different life. My, my role along with, in partnership with, um, Judge Thomas and the Justice Pillar is to help them understand the pathways through the court system, the gateway through the court system, whether it's filing an injunction for protection, uh, whether it's, um, accessing the courts through one of the alternative court, um, opportunities, teen court, the veterans court, the drug court, that just can set their life on a different trajectory just by making that different choice. In the clerk's office, we have the opportunity within the confines of statute, statutory guidelines to possibly help a person get back on their feet by extending a payment plan for court cost and fines and things like that, so that they can get their driver's license back, so that they can go to work and they can support themselves and support their family. That's part of what the Justice Pillar's role in this, in this particular, um, initiative is. I, I, because I know how, I understand you're all saying, you know, yes, Holly needs to stay at the lead of this, and let me tell you, she's done a jam-up job with it. But it's a lot. Um, so I'm not so sure that that role should not, you know, could not role, move to someone else, but I, I do, um, believe that the, the functions of your county government do overlap in that you do provide outreach, you do outreach to all other different, many other different, um, opportunities throughout the county, and it's those county departments that are doing that because the access to reading material through your libraries, the, through the libraries, the access to transit to help people get to the grocery store, those things are done through the county services. I'm not saying that, again, we didn't, the cart didn't get before the horse a little bit in this situation, but I, I very much support this and appreciate the heart and the passion of Commissioner Davis in caring for, um, in caring so much for our community. I don't believe in handouts. I don't want the federal government to, I, I don't want more money just pushed into people's hands because they're not going to do the right thing with it, it's proven that. But if we can, if, if the opportunity is there to give, to show them a pathway to a different place, then that's part of what this initiative is about.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Janet Barrick, Citrus Springs. I am the president of a nonprofit. I'm also the president of a second nonprofit and a board member on a third nonprofit. There are lots of us out there who really appreciate a hundred and ten hours from the county. If I ask for public records, I have to pay for whatever the county does. By the hour, by the minute, whatever, okay? Not to put the thing down, okay? However, I can be the head of three different things and still have a brain. And I am sure that Commissioner Davis can be a wonderful commissioner and do what she's doing for the prosperity group, because she's like I am, a very good multitasker, which most women are. And I'm finding out that men lawyers are not multitaskers.
You better get a new lawyer then.
That, you take them, forget it. However, our department heads, they get paid on salary, but they don't get paid for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so if they would like to donate their time, we should not tell them, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do the other. It's their off time and they should be allowed to do that. And I agree, this program needs to be out there, but one thing you may want to check with is some of the churches have buildings that don't get used seven days a week. They also ha- most of them have property grounds, you know, for doing activities if you want to do things outside. They also have a good network of getting resources out there. You go there, you can use their machinery, you know, you can use stuff that you don't have, and they will probably work with you and give you different things. And you can get them in all the different communities that there are out there. You can get some in Citrus Springs, you can get some in Beverly Hills, you can get some in Inverness, you can get some in Crystal River. In other words, work with more than one and then do the events at those areas, okay? However, you don't single out nonprofits, is what one commissioner said. And believe it or not, Citrus Springs feels that you do single out different nonprofits because when it comes to renting buildings, okay? I've seen all these buildings that are rented to nonprofits for a dollar a year. I would love to see all nonprofits that you rent facilities to pay one dollar a year, but it won't ever, never, never, never happen. And I'm sure that my rent's going to go up next year, because it's already in the contract. But the thing is, you do already as commissioners, single out different nonprofits and you need to realize that. And I see that sitting in the audience, and I'm sure some of the other people see that too. But I do agree, it's a wonderful thing and I, I would, I would vote for it.
Okay, next speaker. Judge, welcome.
Hello. It is good to see y'all.
I can't put a timer on a judge, I'm sorry. Go. Go.
Well, unfortunately.
Patricia Thomas. Patricia Thomas, uh, I have been involved with Prosperity Citrus, uh, basically since the beginning. And let me tell you, in the twenty-five years that I served as a judge here, I can tell you that it is really exciting to see a collaborative approach to an issue that this county faces, as well as the state of Florida and the entire country. Um, if we don't work together, um, well, working together is the opportunity to try and solve this problem. Mr. Kitchen, um, I've read the, the, uh, information concerning the war on poverty, I agree with you completely. It's a matter of throwing the money. Um, this is an opportunity to maybe use the money in a more appropriate and wise manner to try and help folks. Um, the, you talk about the transit, let's talk about that. Well, the whole reason that you have the transit is because people don't have a vehicle or have the ability to get somewhere. And who are generally those people? The people that don't have the money or the ability to have a car or to have transportation. So you're already, that's already within the mission of the transit authority that you have. Same thing with education and the library. Their mission, their essential mission is education of people. And who needs education of people but the people who don't have it and don't know what pathways are available to them? This program offers the opportunity for people to know that there's not this, just this path that goes down this way, but there's a path that goes here, here, and maybe over here. I moved to Citrus County in nineteen seventy-nine, that's like over forty years ago, and when I first got here, they had a fundraiser for a woman who had cancer and the entire community came together to help her to pay for her cancer treatments. And you know, I came from Tampa and I was never involved in anything like that in Tampa, in a big city. And when I moved to Citrus County, I came to the realization that this is the kind of place that people work together to help all the people in the community or to help people in the community to make themselves better, to pull themselves up on their bootstraps. And this continues forty-plus years later to be the same kind of place. And I am so proud to have lived in Citrus County, to be a part of Citrus County. I'm proud to be a part of Prosperity Citrus and I think that the county should join in that and you will understand how important this is, uh, with the community of people that are involved in this pro- in this program. Uh, I know, Mr. Oliver, you were out there Saturday and you saw what was going on. It's just amazing what has come together, uh, with public and private cooperation to try and help the people in our community that have less than we do. And, uh, like Holly said, that we're, that maybe, um, you know, they're not even on the ball field. Um, this is our opportunity to help the folks that live here in Citrus County with us to raise themselves up. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Shonda Burdette with the Citrus County Education Foundation, the Citrus County School District. Commissioner Kitchen, thank you for your information. Um, I've spent, uh, many years working with, um, poverty situations and what we do, what I've done with the district prior to working with the Education Foundation. Um, we've seen a lot of collaborative initiatives in Citrus County where we come together to make this a much, e- an even better place than we already have. Um, Prosperity Citrus and Commissioner Carnahan, I understand some people have some reservation and understanding where we're getting the information and how that information is being distributed. Those are all things that Commissioner Davis and I have talked about on a daily basis, on how we change that, how we change that statement, especially coming from the State Chamber, what some of that information might look like on a state level, but on a local level, it's very different here in Citrus County and how we work for that. Um, I want to say, much like Judge Thomas, that this collaboration continues. We have such an incredible, um, community, we have incredible leaders, but this initiative takes on a whole new meaning of getting the entire community behind a conversation on giving our best foot forward and educating our citizens and looking after our children and our next generation. That's something that we all should be a part of. I understand the concerns about, um, having those employees provide services through the county for this initiative, but I just want to share one piece. Um, and I understand that there are government pieces that I'm not familiar with as far as how that funding is issued and how that funding is maintained. But as an education foundation, we have been battling poverty in Citrus County schools for decades. That's what we've been doing. Um, it would not be possible if businesses, organizations, agencies did not allow their paid employees to come in in the school day and mentor our children. It would not work. It would not work if we did not have these organizations who are willing to put philanthropy as part of a piece of what their employees do on a day-to-day basis, what everyone is involved with in that organization, and they come in and they help provide those services as part of their job, because it is all of us. It is so important that we move forward together to make this happen. I understand that everyone in this room and all of the commissioners are, are looking at this as such a great initiative and something that we can move forward on. There has to be a way. I applaud you, Commissioner, um, Schlebaugh, for trying to amend that so that everyone feels comfortable with it. But I can tell you, being a part of this initiative, um, working towards what the guidelines should be and moving forward and how we are moving into different neighborhoods, what an alignment's going to be like, making those adjustments, this is something that is going to change the trajectory for a lot of kids and it's something we should all stand behind and be very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Sheriff, welcome. How are you?
Well, Mr. Chairman, how are you?
Good.
Good to see everybody today. So, Commissioner Kitchen mentioned the war on poverty and we all are various capacities or students of history. We know that the war on poverty's been a gross failure and it's never going to be successful. The best solutions to problems across our communities in America start right at home. And there are some things that are just too large for the nonprofit organizations out there to tackle. That's why it's great to be able to partner with some of those nonprofits, like so many of the nonprofits that were visible at the event last Saturday, and see how we can collaborate together and deliver services to those folks that are in, in the greatest need. As you all know, and you, you can go to the, the Florida Chambers website and look at our, our demographics, right now, we're looking at a fifteen-point-seven percent poverty rate in our community, twenty-six-point-two percent of our children live in poverty, we have thirty-five-hundred-and-seventy-one unemployed citizens for a seven-point-two percent unemployment rate, and we have a need in the future to create an additional thirty-six-hundred-and-eighty-seven jobs. Some of those future employees are going to come from among the impoverished folks across our community. And if we give them the opportunities, we get them access to the services that we have available, they might be able to lift themselves up. And regardless of where they're born, whether they're not, they might not be in the same ballpark, they might be in a ballpark across the community or something like that, regardless of where they're born, if they're Citrus County citizens, the future of our community, the future of our county, the future of our state rests on the shoulders of some of those people who are out there today. And by reaching out a hand and offering an assistance by, hey, let me partner with you and help you, we might preclude some of the things that we see occurring across our community. Just this past weekend, I, I'm here to tell you about a very sad case. A young girl and her grandmother, living homeless in one of our communities here in Citrus County, the young girl was raped brutally by a man that was known to the girl and the girl's grandmother. And were she able to get around and get access to some of the services that we brought together on Saturday at Prosperity Citrus? on Saturday at Prosperity Citrus, that rape might not have occurred. And if we can get partners to work more closely together and get some of those folks who are underserved or unserved to come into events like this that are offered through Prosperity Citrus, we might preclude crimes like, crimes like that from occurring in our, our space that we call our home each and every day. And we might give those folks the opportunity to move forward. And I commend Commissioner Davis for taking the initiative to pull this forward and work with the Florida Chamber and go to school on the things that some of our great leaders up in Tallahassee have put together. But home, homegrown problems have the best solutions that come from within the community, not from Tallahassee and certainly not from Washington DC. Because we all know the history of those failures going back to 1964 when LBJ gave his State of the Union speech talking about the Great War on Poverty and what it was gonna do for the United States of America. And it's an abject failure. And I, I commend her and I commend all of you for considering this because if you continue to do things the way they've been done in the past and you get bad results, well then clearly somebody's not thinking. And we, we have somebody who's taken an initiative. It might not be the panacea for all the ills that we've got, but it's a great start. And I commend her for that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Anybody else? Going once, going twice, we're gonna close that public portion. Let me jump out there. I, I agree 100% that these, all these groups can work together to continue to make this great. I think that we need to get with the core center. I think that, but again, unless these two are removed, I, I won't support it. As simple as that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I want to say I'm kind of in a unique situation that I can say I listen carefully to every speaker and I agree with every single word they all said. Okay? Absolutely. Everything you said, I agree with. The difference is where I cross the line, where I think this crosses the line, is, is having staff directed to be involved in this that's not driven by the county administrator. It's up to the county administrator to decide if an event meets what the board has projected as the objectives and priorities of the community. It's not for a commissioner to tell the administrator, send people here or send people there, or for people in the community to come in and tell the administrator. He works for the board. We say this is what's important. We, we want you to apply policy of the board. And he's the one that does that. So maybe for the library, it's appropriate that somebody from the library might attend one of these events, but that's his call to make, okay? The sheriff decides if he's gonna put people at an event, just as the clerk decides. You got, as was well said, you guys are the final word. You're, that, but, but we are not. And the difference is, is that that's, that's where I draw the line. I wrote down exactly what you said. Businesses, organizations, and agencies commit their people, that's what they do. If I decide to give money to the United Way, I know what the mission of the United Way is and I'm supporting that mission. But I chose to write that check. I absolutely disagree with the county government taking money from me and my taxes and giving it to the United Way to perform that function. See, that's the difference and that's the way I see it. So we are a unique community. We have more volunteers, more, I see this everywhere, every group, you name it. I mean, everything from, oh my goodness, you know, I see the people that are involved in Habitat for Humanity, you just, you know, you can just, yeah, the path. You just go down the list and we're, we're unique. Hospice, I've never seen people more dedicated to something that I could never do is hospice, okay? But we don't, I don't go out and say, Randy, hospice is important, maybe send some people over and help them out, okay? That's the difference. So it's not about, is Commissioner Davis the person for the job? I didn't say that. It's not about, we don't support this, I just don't support the last two items in this bullet. And that was, I can agree that says that, that this is, we, we agree that these things are important to our community and we applaud those that are involved in it and we wish them all well. But we are not gonna dedicate, you know, county staff and resources to it. And also, believe it or not, I agreed with Janet because you're right, we do treat, and Commissioner Schleball keeps bringing this up, it's coming back in front of us. I think it's absolutely wrong that some organizations pay full market price and some pay one dollar. You're picking winners and losers. So we, we see that. But let me remind you, seven years ago, when we had our first budget, and I went through and I saw the whole list of nonprofits the county taxpayer supported. And I said, this, this is wrong, okay? Because what it came down to is the nonprofits that had the most political pull were on that list, okay? And what I said is, we shouldn't be doing this, we should be leaving it up to the citizens. And the board agreed, but what we said is that there's four that's so reliant on that we can't just pull the plug on them. So we have been cutting them back 10% a year, is that what it's been? Something along those lines, just to, you know, to get out of that business. And I just see this, Mr. Chairman, is reopening that whole process. And so I know, I'm, I'm, I just want to say, I applaud you all, I don't want to dampen your enthusiasm because without folks like you, it doesn't happen. And I can clearly see where this falls under judicial and under law enforcement. And perhaps there's some county involvement in here, but again, my, my whole thing, Mr. Chair, comes back to just the administration.
Randy, real quick, before we go any further, how many buses do we have out there?
Two.
How many kids wrote it?
Checked with Joanne Granger this morning, there were none.
All right, Commissioner Carnard, I'll come back to you.
Well, I would say, given that it was the first event and nobody wrote it, surely we can declare it a failure. Now, the, the all sarcasm aside, poverty is an expense on our community. Poverty is an expense on every community. We have a high poverty rate, we have an issue in front of us. The longer that this continues, the more expense we have in law enforcement, the more law spend, more expense we have in, you know, ongoing, ongoing issues to deal with that lack of a workforce, lack of a productive workforce. The expense is very real. This is, I believe this is yet another instance of us stepping over dollars to pick up pennies on the other side. We're not asking, or Commissioner Davis is not asking for some large budget to, to, for the county to be able to run this program. She's simply asking for the ability of county employees to, to participate within their, their currently established job guidelines. I, I don't, I don't have an issue whatsoever with supporting this motion as it stands and I intend to do so.
Okay, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you for everybody's comments, I very much appreciate that. The sheriff brought up a point that in my fairly long-winded earlier talk, workforce development is at the core of this. And I believe that the further you come from being born off the ball field, as it were, and somebody coming up and becoming a sheriff's deputy, they're gonna be that much more, anybody who, the further you come, the more appreciative you are of the journey that you've taken. And what a wonderful addition to your staff to have somebody that understands that world. So I really thank you specifically for bringing that up. If, I have two options in front of me. One is that I can leave this as is, or if it would create a little bit more harmony on the board, we could take number two and delete the second half of that, starting with the word, the words "to the extent." Just end it with Prosperity Citrus on number two.
I'm gonna try a different route. Because you know, you and I are, are finding our way eight months into this and you're doing, like the clerk said, a bang-up job, but I want to just think about something else. Because I am a numbers person and I don't like broad and vague things. I would never sign a contract that was broad and vague. So Commissioner Davis has put this forward, we pass this as, as it sits right now. And it says, "To the extent of utilizing staff and resources as appropriate within the already defined duties, objectives, and budgets of various departments." But the next commissioner comes in and wants to take over, and they might not be as fiscally-minded as you are. I've kind of locked somebody into that. And that's why I said, not even just the end of it, the whole number two. Because I think this is so important, I think it could, I would love to see it succeed. I, and again, you've done something nobody else has done. I'm the biggest champion for Shonda Burdette. I'm like there, I've been there since my girls were in third grade. But we haven't seen somebody just come in and say, okay, let's get everybody to the table. And you've done that.
With a team effort.
So I'm begging you to please look at the vagueness of this and help me out. So if you could give me some suggestions to help me out.
The, let's just cut to the chase on what I'm looking for. You know, however we get there to make it abundantly clear, this is what I'm looking for.
That's what I want.
Okay? Is that when we have these outreach events, that transit, that library system, that housing can make the decision whether to do outreach at those events, just like it's the Strawberry Festival, just like it's the Manatee Festival, just like anything else. And to get there, I will take myself off of the invite, making the invitations and I will take a little bit more of a backseat, I will still be engaged, but I will take more of a backseat. Otherwise, we are getting into the weeds of stopping the staff from doing their job. Because I gotta tell you, the library system goes to the Manatee Festival, all that. And yes, we can delete number two. I'm just saying that my end goal is to not, I don't want this to turn into such a contentious smackdown that the staff is then afraid to do what they want to do. Because I gotta tell you, you know, these, the folks that come to this are, they're, they're passionate about this. This is their mission. They want to sign up people for library services. You know, they want to help people with housing. So...
Can I, can I say something? You keep bringing up the library, but I'm gonna bring up Parks and Recreation, okay? They're, they're so cut to the bone with their budget. And they have only a very, very slim staff. And they have some, they have to go clean up the graffiti, they have to do this and that, and then we have an event and you say, I need, you know, would you like to be there? They're gonna be like, yes, Commissioner.
They're not on the list.
But I just want you, they, they are there though, they are there. They, they weren't at this one, but they will be. This is what I'm trying to say, to get to.
Parks, Parks and Rec isn't one of the 10 pillars, so I don't understand.
Here, here's a question I got, I'll throw a question out here. Okay, the county's being asked to, the county's being asked to do this. So has all the other constitutional officers, what's the chamber put in? I mean, this is a chamber event, they should be running this and they got it, they got a core center over there to run this and...
They did run it.
Okay, well, and we had a bunch of staff there, we had other things there. Again, I, I'm not gonna support it unless number two's taken out totally. Because again, we are setting a policy that is very, very, very dangerous. And, and the only way that I'll even support this is two comes out, we don't handcuff our commissioner, or our, I mean, our administrator.
I already said I would take two out.
Okay, then if you'll take two out, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, and, and I want to answer your question, if I may, Mr. Chair. The, to me, what you said is reasonable. The question comes down to is who makes that call? To me, it's the administrator. In other words, the administrator would have to look at, his department heads would have to go to him and make the argument they should be at that event.
May I ask a question?
Let me, let me just finish. And see, that's the whole thing, is that if we took out two and the administrator knew that, that his staff, or he told his staff they're free to come to him, just like any other event and say, you know, I think it would benefit us if we were at this event, then he can make that call. I would see that this resolution would support that and I think that's what, because you said, just like they would go to any other event. But they just don't take off on their own and go, they have to have his approval to be there, you know? The, the clerk can go wherever she wants to go, she doesn't need anybody's approval, but the Public Works Director does, or the, you know, anybody else of these other department heads. So all I'm saying is move forward with your initiative, move forward with, with your zeal, but don't, you know, kneecap the administrator and his ability to direct staff or to intimidate him by putting more pressure on him for one thing than another. And that's what my concern is.
There, and I was just fixing to hit the headline now. He works for us, so us going in there saying, you're gonna do this, that, that's where, that's where I, I think there's a bad, bad policy you're crossing. And I, and I, and I do believe that, that, that could, I don't know if it is or not, but I, I can tell you now, it's not, that, that, that's not your job as a commissioner. Your job as commissioner is to set policy for this, for this county and, and, and moving forward. And again, unless, I, I'm not gonna handcuff my, my administrator, by no means.
Well, this falls under the heading, I've never let a dead horse go unbeaten because I've already said three times I'm taking out two. And I have a point of clear, a question for Mr. Oliver. Does Eric Head actually, I'm just using him as an example, does he come to you and request permission to go to the Strawberry Festival or any other festival, or is that just, do you micromanage to that level?
I, I, I want to educate you a little bit though. I, I want to educate you a little bit. Ask Mr. Oliver whether the county pays Eric Head salaries or the, or the, the village pays his salaries. So he's under, he's under a different deal, okay? So that's a bad thing to use because the clerk of court cuts their checks, not the county, because they have their own millage rate. So that's, that's not, pretty much Eric's running his own deal. I mean, I hate to use that, hate to use that, but I, I just want to educate you a little bit there. Madam Attorney.
I assisted with drafting the resolution and we, we have it and we can absolutely remove that second paragraph if that was necessary.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to ask for a vote on that resolution with the deletion of number two.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay. Now that we want, I'll open it back up to the public, if anyone wants to talk anymore. Anybody want to talk? Now wait for Commissioner Carnard to come in so he understands.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Randy, if Commissioner Davis asks for a special situation or whatever that she needs, room 166, how would you address that?
It, it puts us, it puts us in a position that we have to open it up to any similarly situated organization.
Okay, okay.
And that, that was a perfect example of how you don't want to do that.
And Mr. Chair, and, and if I may, that's the, that one, I started, my whole point is saying this is precedent setting. That was my whole issue. We talk about policy and precedent, that's what my concern was. Wasn't, was never about whether it's a good idea or not, so.
Commissioner Carnard, the motion was amended to take number two out. It was seconded. We went to the public and now we're back here. Okay? So I'm just giving you your update. All right, so we're gonna take a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
There you go.
All right. Commissioner Carnard.
Nothing.
Commissioner Schleball.
Nothing.
Commissioner Kitchen.
Nothing, sir.
And I have nothing at all. Anyway, now we're back to open to the public. Does anybody want to come forward and speak?
I have nothing.
Okay, Madam Attorney, I didn't think, I didn't see anything, so I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Anybody want to come speak? Hey, I want to talk to you before you leave. Sheriff, I need to talk to you before you leave.
I have to get my sheets out, did I have all my stuff written down? Afternoon. Janet Barrick, Citrus Springs Civic Association this time. The Civic Association gets several calls. We also now have video from some of the people that have taken video. The county owns the DRAs in Citrus Springs, or most of them. And we do still have people shooting guns. And that's why I'm bringing this up while the sheriff's here. Because as far as I know, that's county property, isn't it? And therefore, they're not allowed to be driving up in pickup trucks, getting out of the pickup trucks, putting targets over on the one side of the DRA and shooting rifles and pistols in the daytime hours. And sometimes up until 10 o'clock at night, because they put night scopes on their guns. We have residents that call the sheriff on a periodic basis and like I said, I have video and I've taken it to our attorney, who is a one-track person. Tunnel vision.
Who's been taking on the lawyers?
Not the, not the female lawyers, just the male lawyers. They have, they got this tunnel vision.
Good, good, good.
We would really like some sort of help in Citrus Springs in this matter because you are the board and it's your rules that DRAs are county property. And maybe you can direct the sheriff's department or sheriff to please go out there and tell these people it is not legal and then give them citations. Don't just send them on their way or make a call to the owner of the one piece of property that has an, or he has a title and it's got an LLC and he thought because he bought this property and he's from Ocala that he could use guns up there. And the guns, one person that lives there now has two holes in their house, okay? So it's not like it's... So it's not like it's not life-threatening to citizens of the, of the county, and these people pay taxes. So we would like some help on that situation. And just to let you know, we are just moving, like gangbusters, building houses, so you guys are gonna have money next year when you finally get this, you know, the year's up, and you can start collecting property taxes on these wonderful buildings. Because at this point, we've got over 300 approved, and I now know that I have 30 more to go to do paperwork on tomorrow when I go back to work. So we're only partially through the year. We're gonna need help, um, also on the ATVs. People feel that Duke property, and that's not county property, Duke property is fine to be riding until 11 and 12 o'clock at night. We really need some help from the board for some of these things, and yes, we may be the only civic association to ask for help. But we are an active civic association, and if you come to any of our meetings, you'd see that, or if you came to any of our functions, you see that. With, between now and Christmas time, we've got about eight different functions, at least two per month. So we'd like your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Is any other speakers? Any other speakers? See, none, I'll shut that down. Uh, I don't know, have you all reached out to Duke Energy and see if they'll put a fence up on the right of way? I mean, there's things that you, that the civic association could do, uh, Dorothy Peru's a, a good one to start with, uh, and, and I would reach out to her, and, and see if you can get their attention about what's going on. Um, I, I can tell you, and, you know, for the sheriff's department, when people are riding around in trucks, I, I guarantee if they caught them, there'd be, it would be a bad deal for them, uh, you know, but trying to catch them's tough, um, so that's my opinion, so. Any other comments, commissioners? Okay, with that, uh, our next upcoming meeting is August 24th at 1:00 PM, and then September 14th at 1:00 PM, and we will recess until 5:01. I wanna welcome everybody to today's 5:01 public hearings. Uh, we're gonna do a little, is, is the applicant for, uh, the Monkey Island holding, are they here? All right, you come on up. We're gonna have you go first, uh, today, uh, because the second one's gonna take a little bit longer. How are you doing today? All right, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, we'll first start out with, um, we'll do the ex parte individually for each application, since we just have two. And so we'll start with, uh, the application AA-21-04. And with regard to this application, have you had any ex parte communications you'd like to disclose for the record? And we'll start with Commissioner Davis.
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
No.
We'll have to wait for Commissioner.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, at the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County Land Use Atlas map by redesignating approximately 6.2 acres from the general commercial with a planned unit development to general commercial. Providing for applicability, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date, and I believe the applicant is here to make their presentation.
Your floor is yours, sir.
Well, I guess we're coming in just to vacate the PUD, um, out at Riverside from, you know, I'm not even sure the date, back in the, the early 2000s. Um, just so we can actually finish developing the property or build into buildings, because we're kinda handcuffed right now.
Okay.
We don't have to do that.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
I just, I'm wondering whom I'm speaking to up here.
Your names?
Uh, Blair Hensley, um, with, uh, Fortercracker Riverside Resort.
I'm Matt Loman, uh, with the Loman family.
Okay.
Blake's in the back.
Listen, he's got great restaurant, he's got a great restaurant, so if you ever through Brooksville and Monkey Island. All right, so with that, no other, uh, question for the applicant? Okay, we'll turn it over to his staff. Joe, are you, sir?
Okay.
If y'all want, you can sit down, too, if we need, have any questions after. All right, Joe, your floor is yours, buddy.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Joe Hockadel, Principal Planner with Plan Development. This application is requesting to remove an expired planned unit development from the subject property. The property in its entirety is about 6.2 acres. It consists of multiple lots. There was a previous planned development that was approved on this property back in 2006. It was for 72 motel suites, 15 motel rooms, and about 3,600 square feet of commercial. They had applied for a permit to develop this property, but the permit never went forward, and it expired in 2011, and the planned unit development then expired in 2013. The applicant is proposing to.
Joe, I'm gonna stop you real quick.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Kennard, you have any ex parte communication? Okay, just wanted to get it on the record.
Yes, sir. The applicant is wishing to develop the property in accordance with the general commercial land use district. The property is all general commercial. It was before they established the PUD, and if they remove it, it'll go back to general commercial. And so removal of this will not be considered new GNC in the coastal lakes and rivers region. It is surrounded predominantly by non-resident development, and there are other non-res uses, even in common ownership on the, adjacent to the subject property. This request does appear to be compatible with the surrounding area, and all the findings of fact have been found to be positive findings, and the Planning and Development Commission did recommend approval of this on their July 1st hearing.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioners, any questions for Joe?
No, sir.
See, none, okay. We'll go ahead and, uh, open this up to a public hearing. Is there anybody for or against? Application AA-21-04, anybody for or against? Going once, going twice, okay, we're gonna close the public portion of this. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kitchen.
Waiting for somebody else to take over this, but I'll go ahead and do.
Well, I can do it.
I'll make a motion to, um, approve AA-21-04 based on the findings of fact and competent and substantial evidence.
And I'll second that. Commissioners, are there any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I would like to, uh, just make a comment about your staff and the land use and the building department, all your folks, since we've been up here. It's been a pleasure working with them, and how, how inviting and helpful they've been with us, and just wanna give y'all kudos. Y'all got a great staff in there right now, you know, guiding us along, coming up here, working in Citrus County for the first time.
Blair, I wanna, I wanna appreciate that, because we get probably more negatives than we get what you just, uh, said. So I know staff, uh, really appreciate that, and I hope everybody's listening to that.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's awesome. So it's been, it's been a pleasure coming up to Citrus County, and how well y'all have worked with us and supported us, so thank y'all.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Madam Attorney. Hopefully this will go quicker than the last one.
Yes, thank you, sir. Uh, next you have PUD-21-04, Brentwood Farms LLC. Uh, with regard to this application, have you had any ex parte communications we need to disclose for the record? And we'll start with Commissioner Davis.
No, ma'am.
No.
No, ma'am.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County Land Development Code Atlas, and the Brentwood Farms master plan for multiple changes, including measurement of setbacks and impervious surface ratio. Providing for applicability, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, providing for codification and scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And I believe that the applicant, uh, or representative are here to make their presentation.
Mr. Abel?
Welcome.
Well, thank you, Board. I appreciate the time. It's been a little while since I've been here, and, uh, looks like things are running smoothly without me, so, good job.
You sent some good representatives, though.
Um, I'm here on behalf of Brentwood Farms LLC. My name is Eric Abel, and I serve as Vice President of the LLC. The, uh, written a bit here, and I'm gonna try my very best to keep it brief. I know there'll, there'll be a lot of input, but, uh, I, I wanna at least get out there our application and reasons for it. The developer, Brentwood Farms, has filed this application to the, have the B OCC consider six different requests. Number one, we want to plat 400 residential villa units as a subdivision we'll call Davis Reserve. Uh, number two, plat, design, and construct an entrance road from Ottawa 46 intersection to Davis Reserve. We want to amend the ma- three, we want to amend the master plan to clarify that drainage will be reviewed on a plat-wide basis to conform with the master drainage plan. Number four, we'd like to, uh, have the setbacks from the property lines, uh, measured to the vertical walls of the structures, which I think you may have done by LDC change in the meantime. Uh, fifth, developer to be allowed to commence construction on up to 40 spec homes within Davis Reserve prior to plating. With this request, the developer would accept a condition that no such home shall receive a CO, or may not be conveyed, your choice, until such time as Davis Reserve is finally platted. Number six, we want to amend the master plan to clarify that the impervious surface ratios, also known as ISRs, will be calculated on the entire PD, not the individual home sites. I believe, four, the six requests are nonissues, either already within our rights and/or fully supported by staff. Uh, they are numbers one, three, four, and six, as I just mentioned, so I'd prefer to spend my time discussing the remaining two requests, unless you have specific questions on those. Uh, number five request was for up to 40 spec homes prior to plating, and number two being the request for designing and construction of a new entrance road uh, from 46 Ottawa to Davis Reserve. As for request number five, the 40 spec homes, uh, the developer is trying to control its construction costs before further inflation, uh, prices the homes out of the market. We understand and appreciate the county's desire to protect the public from a developer or builder who might sell such a home prior to plating, and we desire to give the county the security of control by not allowing us to be issued a CO before the final plat is approved and accepted. This way, there is no risk to the county or the public. In fact, it only gives the county even more leverage over the developer, uh, who will have invested up to $10 million in cost to put in those 40 homes. To date, staff's only objection has been that it is not currently allowed by the LDC, although staff does not, does recognize that the B OCC has the authority to allow it, much like the B OCC has done in the past, allowing up to three model homes in the past. If approved, I hope the board sees that this only gives the developer even more incentive to finalize the plat ASAP, and gives the county maximum leverage to ensure the same. As for request number two, the design and construction of an entrance road from Ottawa 46 intersection to Davis Reserve. The developer makes this request consistent with its approval by the B OCC given in 2017. PUD 17-03 and ordinance, uh, 2017-826. I think in my application, I, I, I misquoted, I, I gave the, attributed the quote to Commissioner Kennard. In fact, I think it was Commissioner Kitchen who made the statement that said, yes, we could go forward, may have been chair at the time. Under the current standard of the PD, the developer is approved to develop its total of 1,278 units, utilizing the one existing entrance at Brentwood Circle and 486, the existing entrance. In 2017, the B OCC authorized the developer the right to explore the feasibility of an entrance road at the Ottawa 46 intersection, and if the developer deemed it feasible, we were approved to design and construct the new entrance road at this location, with the express understanding that it would not be required to connect to existing Brentwood subdivision or Brentwood Circle, because at the time, we did not know what we wanted to do. After much consideration in the last three or four years, uh, we designed the road. At that time, we believed it could be beneficial to current residents of Brentwood to interconnect the new entrance road, I'll call it Road A, and close the existing entrance to Brentwood. To that end, in January of this year, we polled the 650-plus or minus non-developer property owners of Brentwood, whether they wanted to connect to Road A with the conditions of closing their current entrance and paying their fair share of expenses for the new road entrance and manned gate. By a vote of 195 to 162, the Brentwood owners decided against the connection. Accordingly, and in line with the B OCC's 2017 determination that, that, uh, no interconnection was required, developer designed Road A. We conducted the necessary traffic impact analysis, had our engineers do that, the engineer the plans, and we have even sought bids to construct Road A. And the Davis Reserve subdivision improvements at all the same time, same bid. It seemed straightforward to us. However, at the PDC hearing, many Brentwood owners wrote or appeared before the PDC to demand connection to Road A. Similarly, many have made comments to the B OCC for this hearing. To give you context, I figure this number totals about 50 owners. Some of those owners voted in favor of the connection in January, and presumably want another bite at the apple to persuade the B OCC to make it happen. Interestingly, some of the commenters actually voted against the interconnection, and now, uh, are proponents of the interconnection. I don't know whether this is a result of a change of heart, or whether they believe the B OCC can force interconnection without Brentwood Farms POA and its owners paying their fair share. I'll let you weigh that as the public gives their input soon. Despite some wild accusations to the contrary, I've read all the comments. Uh, developers are neither evil nor vindictive. We have always strived to be community-minded and responsible. We always try and do the right thing, and afford due process to all interested parties, but it's not free. I can't put in infrastructure just because, I'm not, I'm not a public company, I'm not the county. If you decide it's important enough for safety reasons or other reasons to make the improvements, I'm all for that, in the domain or condemnation, however you want to get there. The issue before the B OCC on this point is whether, one, Brentwood and Davis Reserve remain status quo, and all 1,278 units use the existing entrance. Second option, Davis Reserve's 400-plus or minus units pay for and maintain the Road A, and Brentwood's 850 units pay for and maintain their existing entrance. Or third, this comes, uh, this is a little bit of brainstorm we had in the interim period between PDC and now. If the B OCC were to der- determine the interconnection of existing Brentwood Circle and Road A is so crucial to safety, the developer is willing to reach that end upon the B OCC's expressed conditions or findings. You'd have to find, for us, to compel us to do that, it had to find the interconnections crucial to safety of the Brentwood POA and its owners. The developer will contribute the land needed for the connection. Brentwood POA will eliminate its current entrance at Brentwood Circle. Brentwood POA will pay its portion of the costs associated with revised engineering, demolition, and construction of improvements, plus be responsible for its fair share, prorated to include the 400 new Davis Reserve units of the ongoing repairs and maintenance of the improvements, along with operational expenses of the roads and manned gate. From the developer's perspective, the first option called pushing all 1,270 out through the existing entrance is probably the worst option. We hope the B OCC will accept one of the other two options, uh, as I mentioned, either two separate roads to two different uni- two different subdivisions, or some form of interconnect at your, uh, demand. If at any time you need me to come back up and answer the questions or recount the terms I've just mentioned, I'll be here.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kennard, yes, sir.
Mr. Abel, can you, can you tell me one more time the option of the three that you felt was the worst option?
That's leaving status quo as is, that we would have Davis Reserve, the 400 new units, continue to service the, uh, out the existing entrance. So there, right now, there's one entrance with a couple of emergency ingress and egress points in Brentwood proper. The 400 units are already approved and currently approved.
All right, hold on, I'm gonna stop you right now, the audience. You're gonna be quiet, you're gonna give the application his pur- his, uh, his due process. If you continue to speak out, I'll have you removed immediately. Simple as that. We're all gonna give you your process to come up here and speak to us, and you're gonna give him, uh, your, uh, respect, and you're gonna let him do his job. Thank you.
So the, the worst option, in our opinion, would, would be status quo, which is all 1,278 units currently flowing out of the existing entrance. We'd like to add that second, uh, entrance. We'd like it to, I guess, our intention after polling the residents was to have it just serve the 400, and that would at least alleviate the demand of the 400 new units traffic on the existing entrance.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Commissioner, any other questions for Mr. Abel? Commissioner Davis, and I'll come to Commissioner Kitchen.
So why, why, um, just a point of clarification, I was gonna drive by there this morning, um, to make sure that my understanding was correct. Do they have a manned gate at Brentwood right now? Because when I drive by, there's just, gates are up, and I don't see a manned. Because when I drive by, there's just, gates are up and I don't see a manned gate.
The current situation is Brentwood has only RFID tags, activated gates.
And are they like open during normal?
They probably open them during the business hours.
During business hours and then down at night, that's kind of what my understanding was. So, why can you not do a connector road on the backside of the commercial property and work that into your plan and push the new manned gate for the four hundred and Davis Reserve back far enough that that is an ungated access?
It does a couple of, there's a couple of repercussions from doing that. A, we want Davis Reserve to have a manned gate. We've already made that decision. We'll, we'll bear the entire cost.
Which is fine, yeah.
Across the four hundred units, but if they want to utilize wear and tear, add to the roads, they need to pay the fair share. The reason, if I do it that way, Brentwood POA, existing, when I say Brentwood versus Davis Reserve, would need to, that's an added expense. They have to have their own gate beyond. I have to have two gates now.
Why?
The RFID tag to get to their area, or the manned gate that goes to ours, the Davis Reserve, the new ones, I should say.
Is the current gate at the RF, the one at Brentwood, too far forward? Is that ahead of where the cross connector would be?
Two different locations. The current Brentwood entrance is right off forty-six, about, I don't even know the distance, you might know maybe five hundred yards away from Ottawa intersection, maybe a thousand yards, but it need, it would, that would have to be, that has its entrance. And I'm saying eliminate that and we'll contribute and let, let them go through this way, all through one, with one manned gate, share those expenses.
It seems silly to me to eliminate what is a beautiful entrance into Brentwood. I don't understand why the two gates can't be behind the commercial property and therefore one community has tags and they're up in the daytime, and another one has a manned gate, and then there is a connector road at the backside of the commercial property in front of the gates.
If that was free, I would probably consider that, but I don't need the added expense on our development costs.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to bend on some of your other requests if you would entertain that. That's me personally, but I'll, I'll see the floor.
Commissioner Kitchen?
And again, the way I see this is, could be a matter of bending, or it could be a matter of inherent rights for the developer. So, I think that what I'm, I'm also trying to get to this other number here, too, is we keep talking about fair share and the amount, is there a dollar figure that's been thrown, I mean, I'm just curious as to...
We have, we have just started the bidding process to get those costs. I could wild guess anywhere from four hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand dollars to put in those, those improvements.
And if I may?
No, you got the floor.
And you, and you said something to, to the significance of saying, if the county said it was a safety issue and we wanted to condemn it, you want to, you know, that sounds to me like we're gonna have to buy it from you and we would have to build the road, you know, you want to, there's a little bit more to what you had said.
Yes.
I just want to make sure everybody understands.
I'll, I'll be perhaps clear, I guess I was doing it to highlight the situation, but the reality is, what, the initial application asked for the separate road, Davis entrance at Ottawa and forty-six into Davis Reserve and Brentwood stay with just the units it has. To, to force an interconnect between the two amounts to, is tantamount to me putting, building a house with my driveway, and you already have an existing house, and the board mandating it that I build my driveway so that these people, my neighbors, can use it, too. There is no right to access across the properties. If, if the board thinks it's a matter of safety and issue, I went to the extreme in my highlights, so I didn't mean to confuse, but I wanted to make the point that it amounts to a taking from us. You're literally, it requires extra property from the developer, it also requires extra costs from the developer, and who's going to pay for that? It would be extremely unfair to ask the four hundred new unit owners to bear the burden of the existing eight hundred.
And if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, before.
I just want to kind of wrap my head around all this, so this, these will be my words, not yours, but you tell me if I'm, you know, not expressing what I'm hearing correctly, okay? What I, what I, what I believe I understand from reading all the backup information is that, we'll call it Brentwood and Davis, what, what?
Reserve.
Davis, okay, so current Brentwood, if you wanted to, you could build these new houses in Davis Reserve and put it all over the same existing entrance, okay?
That is correct.
Okay? You're not required to put another entrance in, okay?
That is correct.
Okay. Then, what you're saying is what you're proposing and what's in front of us is that you would leave Brentwood alone, and in Davis Reserve, you would put an entrance in at Ottawa just for Davis Reserve.
That is correct. And, and our end goal of that was after polling the residents at Brentwood, it seemed as though, at a minimum, I think we should, if they don't want the manned gate, this will at least be doing them a great favor by alleviating the added traffic of four hundred new units.
Right, and you, that part is, in Davis Reserve, you promised them a manned security gate.
It will be, it will be a feature of that subdivision, correct.
Okay, so, the, the, the discussion seems to be, is that, does it make sense to have, keep both or have a cross connect, and then it comes down to, well, if you want that, who's gonna pay for it? Right?
Yes, yes.
Your position is, if you're not mandated to pay for it, and, and you're, and you're proposing to put in another entrance, so I, I guess that's what I'm just trying to get clear in my head, is, is what is it that, that you already have rights to, and what is it that you're asking for approval to do? I guess that's where I'm trying to get a, in your, in your position now, of course, other people may have a different position, but in your mind?
In very, very succinct summary, I say, we can, we have the right to go forward as is. I add the four hundred and go out where we are, and we wouldn't even be talking. I want to do Davis Reserve with a manned entrance, so I, I come to you with some other issues and said, let's, let's get this all taken care of. In our minds, we had done everything right, consistent with what we believe to be our approvals in the past, now I go forward, I even, I'll say I even went above and beyond and asked the residents, hey, you know what, you guys have in the past clamored for a light at Brentwood current entrance, and I know engineering, all traffic engineers are saying that's ludicrous, you cannot put another traffic light that close to Ottawa's light, you'd be trapping ten, fifteen cars between two lights. And to the extent it is dangerous, as, as said by, by many people, to pull out of existing Brentwood to make, to go east, you have to take it to your right, make a U-turn at Ottawa and go east on forty-six. To the extent that's dangerous and it's a safety issue, we saw the benefit of, you know what, let's terminate that, get rid of it, all traffic, here's your access point right to Ottawa. So, we invited them to participate. Again, it didn't rise to a, didn't even rise to a majority, but much less a compelling majority for us to say, yes, we need to do that, and, and we're going to raise the association dues to pay for your fair share.
So, and again, Mr. Chair, if I can?
Yes, sir.
So, what I'm trying to get clear is our job today is to not, to tell you what we think you should do. Our job today is to hear what you're, what you're already allowed to do, what you're wanting to do, and does it meet the law, LDC, you know, comprehensive plan, whatever, to meet that. And usually, what we all look for is to try to find something that most people are happy with, which we know we're never gonna find that, but we're trying to, to get to that point without infringing on anybody's rights. And I just want to make sure I got my head wrapped around, again, from your point of view, because I'm sure other people will have different points of view, what, you know, what you think is the best. You've already told us what you think is the worst. Some people's mind may be the best would be the interconnect, and if it was paid for and they didn't have to pay for it, that, other people might think that would be the best.
They may think that's the best.
The panacea, right. Right, okay, great, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennard.
Just early on, and what I'm hearing, I, I think the, the quality of the project, from, from what I understand, I would, I would love to see this move forward with its own entrance, a gated entrance, with the manned, a manned gated entrance. Now, I would, I also, I want the best of both worlds here, I guess, because I would love to see the Brentwood folks have access to that light. Is, is there a way, is there a way for them to gain access to the light in front of the guardhouse before, you know, without having to have that, you know, traveling?
Geographically impossible. There are lakes on both sides of the existing entrance, and then someone else owns commercial property north of that, to, to the point where it actually the only place to connect, the earliest place, simplest place to connect is straight across. I don't know if you have in part of your package a drawing with a roundabout showing an interconnect Brentwood Circle heading, continuing west to interconnect with a roundabout. If you have that and can look at that, you'll see that, that is the earliest point possible to head to an interconnect. Joanna, do you have access to that on your PowerPoint at all? That roundabout with the interconnect? No? Okay.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Abel? Okay, Commissioner Schleber.
I, Joanna, if I may, can I?
You need to talk to the applicant at this point.
Okay. How close does this Davis Reserves, which I have nothing to do with, by the way, come to my plaza? Oak Tree Plaza. Is there a space between there?
I believe, yes, there is space between, I believe there's one parcel on the, from a commercial standpoint, I believe there's one commercial parcel east of, I don't know what you call your plaza, I'm sorry.
Oak Tree Plaza.
Oak Tree Plaza, I believe there's one parcel, commercial parcel, maybe, maybe thousand feet long before you get, as far from your entrance or your edge of property to Ottawa, we're probably another five, six hundred feet.
And is that your property, or is it somebody else's?
The parcel, there is a parcel between us that is not owned by us.
Okay. Are you hearing that, county attorney? Just want to make sure.
And it is my expectation, when we develop that commercial property, that the county will probably dictate that we have an interconnect on the commercial side, and I, I totally will respect that when we develop that, if, if that's the case at the time.
I just don't know if I'm in a, I'm in a little, I don't know what, if I'm in an awkward position, you know, I, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't, okay?
No, I don't.
I just want to make sure there was a space and that it was...
Any other questions for Mr. Abel at this point?
Well, my question would be if you're gonna do the interconnect on the commercial, and I am looking at this now, okay, the black and white rendering of your application. So, if you can do that interconnect on the commercial later, why can you not do it now? Because you just said it to Commissioner Kennard, it was geographically impossible.
Well, again, geographically impossible to connect to Brentwood Circle's entrance. It's, it's not geographically impossible to connect to the commercial property, which is to the west of our commercial property.
And I, I just want to point out, Commissioner Kitchen brought up some very, very good points on the developers' rights and what they can move forward with and what they're trying to accomplish here. So, is there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Abel.
Thank you.
Turn it over to Mr. Too, for the staff's report.
Yes, good evening. All right, obviously, this is PD twenty-one oh-four, and Mr. Abel has defined these six particular requests that are being done. Number one is they're trying to propose four hundred villas in that western area. They are allowed to do the four hundred villas, they previously, this is part of their previous numbers, they're not asking for any more numbers than were previously approved, and they do have the ability to interchange their units, so they have enough remaining units to allow this. They are asking to allow drainage to be approved plat-wide, that's not unusual, Citrus Hills already does that. They're allowing to have setbacks measured to the vertical walls of structures instead of Eves, this board's already passed that in the Land Development Code, but this was prior to that particular adoption. I'm gonna skip three and four for a second. Here's a new entrance road that they're proposing, it would line up with the Ottawa light, and you can see the X is there, crossing out the actual connection with Brentwood itself. So, out of the six, out of six requests, the Planning and Development Commission recommended approval on five of them. One of them that they did not recommend approval for was number four, the only one, allow up to forty spec homes prior to final plat approval. Staff has significant concerns with this particular proposal. What they're asking for is before the lots are created at plat, they want to allow building permit issuance for forty single-family homes on one lot of record. They, they are willing to hold the CO, staff has significant concerns because that is a single, multifamily use on a single-family lot. Plating and permitting specifically are not the holdups right now in construction, that's in materials, that's in labor, there are some other items, but this is a heck of a precedent, we've got a lot of developers looking at Citrus County right now, I can tell you, I've talked to a couple recently that want a thousand-plus homes, so we're definitely on people's radar, and this is a really awful precedent, we would be, they would look like single-family homes, people would be looking at them, perhaps ready to purchase them, but there would not be lots of record, and we would have to hold them, waiting on Citrus Hills to actually make them lots of record. So, the Planning and Development Commission did not support that particular item. The final item is the access road to County Road forty-six, which is this right here, and you've had a lot of talk about that. What I will say is that Brentwood was approved back in the eighties, it was an older planned development with one access point. Today, the code would never allow one access point for this number of units, but that is what is right now on the books. So, there really is nothing in the PUD that compels them to create another one or interconnect those particular items. However, the Planning and Development Commission did take the input at their July fifteenth meeting, and quickly quoting one summary from the staff report, the PDC noted that the concept of an access roadway appeared to meet minimum criteria and was supported by Engineering Division comments, but encouraged the developer to try to address the concerns of the existing Brentwood residents regarding these items. And you've heard Mr. Abel now propose an option three that was not on the table at the PDC. I am not an engineer, they are here to talk to you about, perhaps, about safety issues, but I can tell you for the PUD, that particular item does meet the PUD requirements. So, the PDC recommended approval of five of the six requests.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Too? Okay, seeing none. We will now open it up to the public hearing. You, you can come up and speak for or against, but I want y'all to know, the developer does have rights and he can move forward with what they're doing, so hopefully we can come up with a solution. Thank you.
My name's Dennis Runk, I live at eighteen seventy-five West Angelic Loop in Brentwood Villas. The first thing, I don't know, here is the proposed, that he had the actual document for us to vote on way back when, if you wanted to take a look at that.
Unfortunately, you can't, you can't enter that into the evidence now.
Okay, well, I, I...
I understand.
Well, people said they couldn't see it, okay? The thing I'm bringing up is, way back when four eighty-six was a two-lane highway, I lived in Brentwood then, and we all came before the board, we actually had a couple board members come to a meeting we had in our development, and we were promised up and down that when they made four eighty-six wider, they were gonna put a traffic light in at our entrance. And then the Ottawa deal came through. Well, then the state come through and said, well, it didn't make any sense to put a light there, we're gonna put it at Ottawa, but now it's too close to go there. And back in seventeen, when this first development first got, and this is from an internal email from the Engineering Department, it states that, the state says that if and when a development goes in there and you put a traffic light there, it is their opinion that they need to have a connector for us so that we can use the traffic light in both ways, in and out. Now, his latest proposal about closing down our entrance totally, I think one of the solutions that might help the whole situation is to not totally close it, block off the exit, beef up that gate, lock it, and people coming from the east, going west, can enter into Brentwood and go through an RFID gate there, that would be twenty-four seven instead of just, you know, nighttime now. People coming from the west would do the traffic light and go on the crossroad that he is suggesting. That way, if there ever was a closure of the main entrance where the guards are due to an accident and our safety of not being able to get out of our emergency exits, they could open up that other gate, and with police traffic control, we would then have an actual gate in and out of both developments because they would be connected. Time's up.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Mark Savitt, I live at Brentwood Villas, sixteen seventy-five West Caroline Path, and I like to address... and I'd like to address a couple of issues that we have. First of all, we had an engineering report done by the engineers, and at five P M. the night before the Planning Commission meeting, that report, which favored an access road, was pulled. I have the sheets right here as evidence, if you want, is look at it. I know you can't look at it, but there is evidence of that report. Why it was pulled, I don't know. The second thing is the emergency egress. I have pictures of what they consider emergency egress. I had the fire marshal come out to Brentwood Villas last week, and we, I showed them what the egress was. He said there's no way we would permit a fire truck to go through those entrances. It's all bushes, there's, uh, signs up there, there's, the fire marshal said, no way could we have an emergency vehicle go through here. And that includes the Brentwood Nursing Home, which has a lot of critically ill people. So I don't know what they consider emergency egress. I certainly don't consider it, and I have pictures here if you want to take a look at it. And the developer seems unwilling to do the right thing for the safety of the residents of Citrus County. We are only asking that the county require the developer to do the right thing for the safety of all who travel four eighty-six and those who travel in and out of Brentwood. This issue seems to be about who will pay for a cross-connecting road. Frankly, for safety's sake, we don't care who pays for a cross-connecting roadway, we just want to be safe. This is not about inconvenience, this issue is about safety. We hope and pray that the next victim isn't close to you or us. We've had a couple fatalities there, I'm sure you're all aware of. It was mentioned in the Chronicle and the editorial and subsequent articles. I think it's time for the county to really do the right thing and think about people instead of dollars. We all came here to a wonderful county, and we just want to stay that way, we want to stay safe. And like I said, I invite anyone to look at the egress situation, and I don't think you would want that at your home, and nor would Mr. Abel would want it at his home if he needed emergency personnel to get in there quick for a fire or an ambulance with somebody with a heart attack with, uh, entrance blocked because of an accident. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Welcome, sorry for my slowness.
You're fine, you take your time.
All right, my name is Carl Weisit, I live in Brentwood. It's not my first meeting. I think our major concern is the safety of that entrance. If you're coming down, traveling west on four eighty-six, a sign that's almost in the woods that nobody understands anyway, is not going to help anybody. It's a waste of time and money. If you would like, possibly a blinking yellow by our entrance would slow these people down, but I can tell you now, when people are coming around that turn, that corner, which we can't even see, they see that Ottawa light turn yellow, it's pedal to the metal. They're going to make, and that's where people are getting hurt. So, and as far as, um, let's face it, Brentwood's getting pretty good size. We only have one entrance, that's it. We should have more than one entry and we don't. Emergencies? We don't have any of those, whoever told you that? They're lying. There's no emergency exit or entrance, none at all. So I, I mean, I'm just not here to make a, a bigger shroud of it, but I'm saying something should be done with our entrance as it is right now to make it safer. And if it means a yellow flashing light or a better signage, they should do it. What they do down further, uh, on Ottawa, I could care less, I don't live there. Okay, and I, I don't want to see anyone get hurt. You know, no matter where they leave from, I don't want to see people get hurt. I'm from New York City, and that's where all I used to do is pick up the people. It's not, not worth it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Come on up. Come on up. You can still, you can come on and stand next to him, and when he's done, you can take a spot. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Stephen McNutt, I live at s, one seven six seven West Angelica Loop in Brentwood. The whole discussion here tonight about what the developer is doing adjacent to us is really irrelevant to one major issue, which has been brought up twice, safety. If you are at the light in front of the Publix, which is east of there, and you go down, there's a ravine that you go through, then you climb back up, and you make a left turn to get into Brentwood, there is a small sign that says, this is the Brentwood exit. However, to be able to look beyond that to my left as I come out and to be able to act, uh, to take in consideration how fast the traffic is coming, at certain times of the day is extremely difficult and very dangerous. Consequently, I have to immediately, when I leave there, move to the far-left lane in order to make the U-turn. The whole issue here is not the cost, it's the safety of the people using that exit. So to blindly say, we're going to force the Brentwood people to use it as is, and if somebody gets hurt, that's just life, or to address the real issue here is we need two entrances, and if it requires having an entrance at Ottawa, which would be the logical place according to the developer, because that way they could safely go and exit, uh, the development and go either east or west without too much concern, just the high-speed traffic. By the way, the sheriff frequently places a cruiser there, and it could catch people basically like flies, because they, they don't go fifty, which is the posted limit. They usually go sixty to seventy and sometimes faster. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, I need you to fill out a green card. You can go ahead and speak and then fill it out, thank you.
Well, thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak on the issue of safety. My feeling is that, uh, when you pull out, and perhaps you realize this, when you pulled into the entrance this week, when you pull out, you have a visibility of probably about a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty-five feet to the left of all the traffic that's coming out of that ravine and then coming around a bend. And, you know, when that light changes up at Publix or up at the intersection, it's really a, a mad dash to get down, you know, to go westbound. And we, as residents, do have to come across two lanes of traffic to get into the left-turn lane. And I think many times, uh, I've lived there five, five years now on West Caroline Path, and I find that you sort of just say hail Mary and then go. Because I, I've gotten partway out in the lane and hit, and had people coming up over me. And a lot of people do sixty miles an hour through there. So it is definitely a safety issue for all of us who live there. In the five years I've been there, I, I've seen one terrible accident, that was a rollover, a van with, um, a, a, a mother, a grandmother, a sister, and a baby in the van, and it was upside down. My wife and I came upon it when we were headed over to Terra Vista, and it, it just happened, and I, and myself along with some others, we helped pull the people out and get into the grass strip. And the other car, which was trying to enter, uh, Brentwood, they were in the eastbound lane. Their visibility isn't a heck of a lot better. You have a better angle seeing people coming up with their eyes, but it's still, when you get McCattam and gray cars and you gotta, you have to study it a little bit before you make a move. But that accident really hit home with me, because I, I ended up consoling the woman who got T-boned, who later died. And it just is something that's stuck in my mind over the years, and it's a terrible thing to see somebody in that situation. Citrus County is growing, we know, and the traffic is getting worse every day. It's noticeable now, even with the snowbirds going back up north, it's still heavy. It took, it took me twenty minutes to get from four eighty-six to Main Street on Florida Avenue tonight. It was stop and go for a while. So th, this traffic is getting worse and worse. The safety is getting less and less, and I think we need to do something about that. So thank you for your time, and please help us out.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Ziebel, and I'm a resident of, uh, Brentwood. The situation at Brentwood exit is currently so serious that until a connecting road can be built to the Ottawa light, the Brentwood residents request and deserve a blind curve warning sign that we see throughout the county on other blind hills and blind curves, something like that, immediately. It is, I think you've heard every description about what the corner's like now. It's a blind corner, in the morning, you're looking directly into the sun, the accidents speak for themselves. Safety is the only reason that the residents are here today and bringing this issue before the county commission, and for the county commission to fail to insist that the developer provide a connecting road is to deny our safety. In, in closing, I'd like to quote some of the members of the Citrus County Planning Commission when they said, Mr. Hallett, do the right thing. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Calvin Irvin, I actually live in Brentwood. And again, you've heard safety, 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 and actually, if you do, if you use their in, their actual study, just six hundred feet pulling out from our entrance, you're going to have intermixing traffic constantly coming in there, traveling at fifty miles an hour, cars trying to accelerate out, cars trying to slow down and get into Davis Reserve in that little six hundred feet area, which will cause a great, a lot, a lot of interaction, intermingling of traffic. From their study, there's going to be twenty-two interactions per minute in that area during the normal daytime operations of op, vehicles in there. If you want to look at that as three every second, when we're going to have the opportunity for an accident. Two intersections so close together with the number of traffic going to have there coming from east and west, primarily, this is all east traveling to the west, you're going to have a major traffic incident area, which basically will cause us to have probably the worst intersection in Citrus County today for the, for Brentwood leaving there. The options for this is move the gate back and do something along the top of the, of the commercial area, or give us an opportunity to have a transponder gate or something on Abigail, and don't close the Abigail Road, and let us go through just like we do when we go into Terra Vista for all of their social areas and stuff like that. Individuals purchase those if they want to. If they don't want to, then you have to go to the man gate and take their card and show that they have authorization to be in there. There's a lot of opportunities for the developer to give us access into that area. And granted, we pay for our roads in Citra, in our areas. This is under Brentwood Farms currently, if they keep it under Brentwood Farms as they have proposed, the roads would be private roads paid for by the association. Yes, the developer takes the lion's share until he turns it over. So far, he's put nineteen thousand dollars in reserve every year. If he's been doing that for twenty years, which some of our roads are twenty years old, that's only three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. There is not much money there, once it's handed over to the association to take care of these roads. So what he's saying about sharing the cost, we need a lot more sharing costs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I just have something, uh, I need to say, it was about that map that showed where they're show, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Judith Weiss, I live at two oh seven seven West Abigail Path, the street that they are closing off to Brentwood. And according to all the paperwork I have, and I'm sure Stephen doesn't ever want to see me again, um, you're laughing. I belong to Brentwood, I don't belong to Davis, and they're cutting us off from Brentwood to be in Davis, and now I'm, are they going to assume I'm going to pay for this, this gate that I voted not to and, and all these, uh, we're just asking the three of us on Brent, on Brentwood Path, uh, on Abigail Path, to access Brentwood Circle because we belong there, and that's part of what we are, we are not part of Davis, and that's what they're forcing us to do, be, being closed off it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
I didn't, I didn't fill out a green card yet.
You can do that afterwards, that's fine.
All right. I live in Brentwood Circle, my name is Matthew Blazowitz, twenty-eight ninety-five North Mariah Point. And, uh, the, just referring back to the letter that was sent out for the voting, maybe it wasn't as clear as it should have been, but some of the people that I spoke to that voted against it said they don't want to spend a hundred and forty dollars more a month on, for a gate. Well, it wasn't a hundred and forty dollars, it was less than that, it was twelve months was a hundred and forty dollars. So maybe they possibly voted against it because they thought it was going to be exorbitant, so that was one thing. The other thing is, uh, as far as traffic goes, traffic's only going to get worse. And, uh, I, I use, I volunteer with the sheriff's department, I use a radar gun, I parked at the entrance, and typically, it's twenty-five percent of the cars that are going past there are going over fifty-five miles an hour, as high as, I've clocked them as high as seventy miles an hour. And that's in the right lane sometimes. So that makes it even more dangerous for a car pulling out from an area that's got no acceleration lane from a stop. So, uh, and again, as people pointed out, you're cutting right across into the sec, into the, uh, left-hand lane to make a U-turn. It's just a dangerous situation that we can make better. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Ken Drange, I live in the Brentwood area. Been there for about eighteen years now. And every couple of years, we have an issue that comes before you folks to help us resolve. In this particular case, it's one that's been repeating for a couple of years. Four years ago, I was here talking to you folks, addressing the safety issue and the entrance that was being proposed. Now we're talking about a separate entrance for four hundred homes on eighty acres or more than four per acre against the twelve hundred houses that li, live in the existing Brentwood area. It seems that we're trying to be overly co, uh, assisting the four hundred for the sake of the builder at the expense of the twelve hundred homes who have danger. You've heard about the dangerous situations. I liken it to the two hundred and four ninety-one issue that's been before you on several occasions, safety issues. It takes accidents and deaths be, in, in the paper before it seems to get addressed. Are we waiting for more accidents at our exit? Additional traffic with the completion of the roadway that's due in sometime this year. We're going to have more traffic going from west to east. That traffic is going to make turnoffs that come into Brentwood. It's the same, I liken it to two hundred and four ninety-one. We're going to be crossing in traffic against uncoming traffic where they can't see us for the last, uh, until the last two hundred feet or so. We're going to have more accidents, more crowded conditions, safety issues, and the builder keeps talking like a shared expense, they're doing us a favor. It's not that way. They're making a pile. They say he's putting ten million dollars in there? Fine, where is that profit going? It's definitely not in favor of those people who voted for what we have now, a gate that accommodates two private enterprises there, the furniture place and the residential for, uh, medical assistance. I can only point out that it's only going to get worse from here, as we know from four years ago and years before that. It's only going to get far worse. I don't know what the percentage is in terms of growth in the last four or ten years, I've lived here eighteen years. Our last home for my wife and I, we lived in Southampton. The traffic got intolerable in New York State. That's one of the reasons we moved down here. I don't want to see traffic lights at every street. When we had the argument four years ago for the exit, crossing, and where the light should go, it was moved back to convene at the builder. Not for the residents, for the builder.
Thank you.
And I would urge you to consider the residents.
Good afternoon, Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs. Okay. Back in 2005, when the 486 was widened, and then in 2006, when it was redone, because it wasn't done right, the residents originally wanted a, a traffic light at Brentwood, but they got told, "No, no, no." Then you guys decided that you wanted to widen Ottawa so you can go from 486 to 45. Not your group, the ones prior to you. Okay? So you put the traffic light at Ottawa. A little further up, we have the plaza where you have a facility. And how many accidents happen across there? So, when they say it's a safety feature to have two entrances and exits to Brentwood, they mean it's a safety feature. And that's what you asked. Was it a safety feature? I had two. My mother-in-law and father-in-law lived in Brentwood Nursing Home prior to their deaths. Okay? Getting in and out of there was a daily trip for me. My mother-in-law only made right-hand turns when my father-in-law was in there prior to her moving in there. And believe me, she would never have turned left. She would never have gone up to a traffic light and made that left. It is what they call a dead man's type curve, 'cause you gotta go from here, two lanes over, get up in there, and then you gotta turn around. It is a safety, safety hazard not having the two entrances, not one. And I don't remember, but I was here with all these meetings. It was my understanding that when all this was done, in Ottawa Avenue, they came in and they brought their stuff, it was going to be two entrances to Brentwood, and they would connect. And that's what I thought the initial plans showed, that when you went up the initial Brentwood and you turned to the left, you could go down that road and over to the new extension. Okay. Houses, 400 houses, 800 more cars. Okay? We talked about villas. We talked about the fact that we're gonna try and do single-family homes instead of multifamily, which is what the PDC was addressing, change in housing. Okay? You need to be looking at what they're trying to change. And yes, I know, safety is one thing that you have to consider. But you also have to consider, there's already 600 and some houses up there, which means we've already got 1,300 cars at least on the road from that section. And we're gonna be adding another 800 in a very small area. To have one exit and one entrance, to get the police in, to get the ambulances in, and to get the fire department in, is gonna be a very, very hard thing to do. Remember, you have Brentwood Nursing Home and Brentwood Assisted Living up there. And that assisted living people, they have their cars. They're whiter-haired than I am.
Thank you.
And they drive.
Thank you. Next speaker. Is there any other speakers? Any other speakers? Going once, going twice? Okay, we're gonna close the public portion of it. Mr. Abel, do you want to address any of the concerns the citizens have raised?
I'll go in there, order my notes, hopefully make sense to you. So Joanna's discussion regarding the 40 spec homes, I would like to address that. I still do not understand the whys of not allowing 40 spec homes. She continues to say, and all due respect, I truly appreciate Joanna, so don't take this the wrong way. But I don't understand how she can simply tell, staff can simply tell me, "We don't like it." I don't have a why. I can understand as an attorney, the why of being, okay, don't allow 40 because the worst-case scenario is an unscrupulous developer might sell those properties to the public, abscond, leave town, and leave the county holding the bag to put in the infrastructure for roads and make, take care of the problem. That's, that's the why of why one would have this rule. But I'm saying, I'll take all that risk away. I'm only gonna add to my risk. I'm, I'll put in the infrastructure, I'll put in the improvements, and I'll have, let you hold the keys. The possibility of another developer coming in and insisting we're gonna put in thousands of these requests is, is, I'll tell you, zero. We're probably the only developer in the world who's willing to sit there and say, "I put in 8, $10 million worth of infrastructure for improvements and give you the keys until you're satisfied." I won't sell that until you tell me. And I don't think another developer is ever going to give you that, that. So I don't think there's a real risk to that. Okay. I heard a lot, a lot of mention about the safety, but again, there weren't many people even talked about the willingness to pay. Again, I put this before the Brentwood Farms residents or owners in January. Give them 30 days to have their input, ask questions, and vote. And the letter was quite clear. $140 a year would have been their, their share at the time. That they, they shot it down. We proceeded forward in, in assuming that they did not want it. So we went with the idea of the separate entrance. I can still do that, the separate entrance, and I still believe that is the best option with no act, with no action. Probably developers still would say, "You know what? I'm gonna put in the own, my own entrance." And if they don't want to interconnect, or if 10 years from now, or two years from now, they want to come back and ask if they can interconnect to ask Davis Reserve POA if they can. It's gonna be the same question. Yes. If the land's available, developer might contribute it. And secondarily, yeah, you can do it, but you need to pay your fair share. So to simply say, "Well, they have money. They're making profit off selling a house," is, is nonsense to me. Because my neighbor has put in a beautiful home and a beautiful four-lane driveway, doesn't mean I should just be able to add on, interconnect to my neighbor's driveway. I want to be able to know that those costs are gonna be borne by the 400. Not to the benefit of 1,278, but to the 400 who have to pay for the maintenance should all, should be the ones who benefit from that. To the extent this is about safety from a dangerous intersection, it, it makes little sense to me to insist that they connect to Road A and leave the existing Brentwood intersection, which is so dangerous. So, it, it makes little sense for us to say, "This is a horrible intersection, but leave that there." It seems to be talking out of both sides of your mouth to be able to say that. If, if they do join in, as Brentwood POA comes in and wants to join and interconnect, the engineering of that new road, Road A, I call it, would be engineered to accommodate 1,278 units. It would not be engineered to 400, and then they can just jump in. It would be engineered, if they want to participate, it needs to be engineered to handle all. I've seen the preliminary drawings by the traffic engineer so far. And it already shows, just for the 400 units, three exit lanes and two entrance lanes. So I, I get the need that there might be a benefit. But it will also be designed in such a manner, by current traffic standards, to allow and accommodate those who want to participate in building it and using it. Mr. Savitt, I know you had talked about, you actually mentioned specifically, it's not about who pays, but I do know that you also voted no when it was $140 a year. So I, again, I'm afraid that it becomes safety as paramount to dollars.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to be quiet. I'm gonna ask you to be quiet. I'm gonna remove you. He, he's allowed to respond to your comments. Okay? That's the proceedings that we go by, we contend to go by, and you're gonna give him his due diligence to comment to your remarks.
So I, I would expect that if safety is paramount to dollars, they would vote to pay their fair share, pay their part. But when asked in January, the residents voted not to spend their dollars for this safety. It's okay, it's like, our dollars are okay to spend for their safety. In fact, it's extremely important. But it went, it came time for them to put their own wallets toward the safety. The decision, again, we didn't even participate in the vote. We actually encouraged them to vote for it because we believed it would improve their property values to participate in this. But they, at that time, they shot it down. One, last one. Mr. Irvin spoke saying if Davis Reserve has its own entrance, or I can address to you, if Davis Reserve does have its own entrance, if that's the, the procedure we end up going with, Davis Reserve will be outside of Brentwood POA. There'll be two different POAs. Brentwood Farm, Brentwood Farms Property and Association would not be paying for the roads in Davis Reserve. They will be two separate associations. So they will have their own cost to pay for their own infrastructure. That's it. Unless you have any other questions?
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Abel at this point?
I do.
Okay, Commissioner Clayball, then I'll come back to you, Commissioner Kitchen.
Who was the original developer for Brentwood?
Company called R C of A Communities. They're out of Georgia.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Kitchen?
I don't know if so much, well, let me ask him now, 'cause maybe the developer or the applicant can answer these. You, I made some notes, and you addressed some of those, some of those very notes. It almost seems like we have two separate issues. And what, what's so difficult about these proceedings, okay, you may be aware, some people may not be, is that we're dealing with the application of law, not what we think, what somebody thinks might be fair or might not be fair, or what we like or what we don't like. I mean, that's really what we're tasked doing with. So I just want to come back one more time, and in your mind, okay, you, you, you tell me just clear as day, yes or no. In your mind, your understanding right now, you can say, "Never mind. I'm going home right now, and I'm gonna build these 400 units, and they're all gonna come out of the same entrance and exit at Brentwood."
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. So just so we're clear on that. So you, you can just leave right now, okay?
I think Joanna said it, confirmed the same thing.
Right. So, okay, so just so everybody's clear, you can build these 400 and they, and, and you have every right to do that right now. Everybody talks about their property rights, and you're exactly right. Nobody would want somebody to come into their home and say, "You have to give me that, and I'm not gonna give you anything for it." Okay? So, so when we talk about protecting property rights, it's everybody's property rights. The other thing that came to my mind, Mr. Chairman, was, what if there were two different owners? Okay? What, what if you were the developer of Brentwood and another person was here as a different owner, as an applicant, for Davis Reserve? Well, obviously, they wouldn't all be in the same area, and he would build that development with the entrance.
That definitely helps to highlight the, the distinction. We, we believe that, in theory, more than theory, I could sell the 80 acres of Davis Reserve in that front area to a third-party developer. And they could come in and do the same thing we're asking.
Right. So I'm just trying to get clear on what, you know, people are saying, "Have the county stop them. Have the county do this." I'm just trying to get clear as to what the county's involvement should, should be in this. To me, it's come down to two separate issues, Mr. Chair. A, is the entrance exit at Brentwood safe or unsafe? That's, we see a lot about that. But then the other one was, should this development be allowed to proceed? Okay? And what I'm trying to process in my mind is if they've met the conditions of staff. And by the way, I don't know if this is the place to intercede it or not, but I agree with staff's recommendation. I have a problem too, and I guess it's just for all the reasons given with number four, so we can debate that later on. But there's been, as I see, 19 conditions that the PDC agreed to. Is that correct? 19? One has 20, one has 19. So we going with the one with 20 or the one with 19? 20, okay. So there's 20 conditions that were passed. Seems like a lot of conditions for this, for something that the developer could already do. So that's kind of, you know, and, and again, unless I'm wrong, but that's, that's what I'm seeing in front of us here. So, so the question that I would come back to is if for the, the folks were told, as I understand it, that this might help everybody out, help the safety issue and everything else, whatever they choose to pay for it. So, I also wrote down, somebody did say, "We don't care who pays for it." And so evidently, somebody does care who pay for it, 'cause that's, that's what it came down to. So, I, I just want to be clear as we move forward, Mr. Chair, what it is we're being asked to do, what it is that we have authority to do, and what, what it is we must decide. And it might be a time for the, for the attorney to kind of give us a little guidance on that. Because I, you know, we've asked the developer questions or the applicant questions. I want to make sure we're proceeding down the same road. Could I, could I ask the attorney to clarify those?
Ram attorney?
I think, Mr. Abel, when you asked Mr. Abel if he could, by right, come in and have everyone go out that one entrance, he was only talking about just the access part. But there are other things that they're asking for that they have to have your approval for. Remember in the beginning, he said there were six things?
Right, right.
And staff basically agreed with four. And there were two that we still had, that, that he wanted to talk about, the, the 40 spec homes and the entrance. So I think when he was answering your question, when you said, "Is that, you know, could you leave here without our approval and do that?" I think he was only addressing the entrance and exit part, which was only one of the six. So they still have five other things that you guys have to.
And, and the one that seemed to be the sticking point was the 40 spec homes, right?
The 40 spec homes, right.
So other than that, that seems to be the big inch area.
Yeah. And so, and the issue with the 40 spec homes, and I know Mr. Abel says he, you know, he doesn't understand staff's concern with that. It, it's simply a matter of timing. Those lots, those 40 lots don't exist until final plat. So when staff says they don't recommend allowing them to do the 40 spec homes before final plat, what they're saying is, right now, there's one parcel of 80 acres. And so, until final plat, there are no 40 lots to build 40 houses on. So that's, as simply as I can put it, what staff's concern is there. There, there are no legal lots. I mean, we all know when we, you know, you buy a lot in a subdivision, it's lot such and such block, such and such of, of such and such subdivision. Well, right now, there is no legal description. So when it comes to permitting, I'm not exactly sure what our computers, you know, what, what, what do you put in the computer system as far as where, you know, the white spec home is going to go, or the, the purple spec home? Where is it, you know, how do you identify? Because we can't put in the computer, "It's Lot 5, Block 4." I guess, there could be, Mr. Abel is, I guess, suggesting that we could have like a proposed Lot 4, Block 5 of such and such, maybe. I'm, I'm not sure. 'Cause I don't know when they're gonna apply for their plat. I don't know when that's gonna be.
If I could, one final question, just so we're clear on this. Supposedly, hypothetically, let's say that the exit out of Brentwood right now was, had a traffic light there, and it was wonderful. And we weren't hearing anything about that aspect of the application. That's what I'm trying to get separate from this. You know, what, is it about the four, about the 400 units and the additional road at Ottawa? Or is, or does that have a bearing, if that happens, on the existing? See, that, and that's what I'm thinking, we're being, it's kind of mixing apples and oranges is what the applicant's requesting. I mean, I just want to be clear on that.
I think that what's unfortunate is that this, the approval was done so many years ago. It was done in the 80s. And in the 80s, we didn't know what we know today. And so, at the time, it was approved for a whole bunch of people to come in and out of one entrance, a whole bunch. Today, as Joanna said, that wouldn't be. You couldn't do it today. But unfortunately, it was done so long ago, and the developer has that approval from so long ago. So I think what the developer is saying is, "Hey, we can all come in and out that one entrance, by right. We got it." Because of what was done in the 80s. They've just decided to go another way for their business plan, or, you know, whatever, where they're adding that other one. So I don't, I don't know of any requirement that the county has to force them to add, you know, this connection.
That's exactly the point, Mr. Chair. That's what I was trying to get to. You used that same word. What, what, what requirement does the county have to force them to do something? And that's, that's my whole point in this. And that is, if, if they are proposing, and let's, and let's forget, leave the 40 out for right now. Let's say they came in and they said, "We want to put the 400 houses in. We want to do the thing at Ottawa." And we weren't talking about the spec house. With those five conditions, everybody's kind of good with that. Okay? Where it seems to be the issue is, is, is the, you know, the connector road. And that seems to me that that's none of our business. That's between, this is my impression of it, is that's between the applicant, the POAs, and whatever, to work out how they do it. We're, we're saying, if that makes sense for everybody, that's their call to make. But I, I don't know legally, we're in a position to tell the people in the community they have to pay something, and we're not in a position to tell the applicant, "He has to do it." You know? So I just want to make sure I'm clear about that as we move forward.
I, I think you're clear. I think that Mr. Abel suggested a third option that might appease some people. But that was just a suggestion that perhaps, but no, I'm not aware of any legal requirement. And I don't think staff told you there was a legal requirement for that interconnection.
Commissioner, Bernard.
First thing, Mr. Abel, can you go through that third option again one time for me?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Oh, geez. I do have it. So the third option is a little, I get that it sounds a little cockamamie, but trying to find a hybrid here. Third was, if the B O C C were to determine, here, it's, my problem's probably your problem. I don't have a legal mechanism to force Brentwood POA to pay their fair share. I, I do. I actually control the association. But we, as developer, don't want to exercise that level of influence when I have a vote of the population that says, "We don't want to pay it." I could override that. I have a developer's control, and I could say, "You know what? Yes, yes, we do, and, and you're gonna pay it." That's not what I, that's not who we are. It's not what we try to do. So I, I asked the residents, "Do you want to do it?" Again, it got shot down by, in the vote. So I'm stuck with this area of, I don't really have, feel I have the... latitude to force upon the residents of Brentwood to pay their fair share. I don't want to exercise it, if I have that right, I don't really want to exercise that without some color of authority. So I'm looking to you, the board, that if you, as a quasi-judicial tribunal, want to give me, be the final arbiter of whether this is about, safety is paramount, and you probably should impose that on them. I, 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 I would listen to that, that's, so that's what this came, arose from. Now, to read the, the terms of it. If the B O C C determines the interconnection of existing Brentwood Circle and Road A is so crucial to safety, the developer is willing to reach that end upon the B O C's expressed conditions or findings. A, the interconnection is crucial to safety of Brentwood P O A and its owners. B, the developer will con, I, I'm telling you, I will contribute the land to, to need it for that interconnection without charge. Brentwood P O A will eliminate its current entrance at Brentwood Circle for several reasons. A, if it's that dangerous, I would think it's, it's obviated its need. And secondarily, I don't really want to contribute land to have two problems side by side. I don't really, not for that.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Just real quick, and I apologize for interrupting you. Uh, is it possible to, uh, pursue the one option that was suggested of closing just the exit? Allow them to still enter through the existing exit, or through the existing Brentwood entrance?
It, it doesn't solve the problem on the other side, that, that Commissioner Davis and I were talking about, where I have to have two, two entrances now. Again, I have to build two here. And my intention is, is if it were together, or if it's alone, I'm gonna put up a grand entrance at this location for this new subdivision. Whether it incorporates new or not, I don't know, but it will be beautiful, and will accommodate, will be engineered to handle the traffic that is intended to, to go through the road.
Understood, thank you.
So, C was Brentwood P O A will eliminate its current entrance at Brentwood Circle. D, Brentwood P O A will pay its portion of the costs associated with the revised engineering, blah, 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 demolition, construction improvements. I don't, shouldn't say blah, blah, blah. Construction improvements, plus its fair share, ongoing repairs and maintenance of the improvements, along with operational expenses of the roads and man gate. It, it's, it's quite a finding, I mean, don't get me wrong, and Denise, uh, sorry.
Madam Attorney, I mean.
Well, so, I, I mean, I, the board doesn't have any power
No.
to make the P O A do anything. So how, what, what is, what is B, C, and D, or?
Okay, so, so this is what happens. Just as Commissioner Kitchen was, was wrestling with the idea of having the legal authority to dictate the developer do something, I'm wrestling with the same authority to force my P O A to pay for something they literally voted to shoot down. But I'm, that being said, I am willing to live with the terms, if the board's willing to act in a, in a, in a arbiter fashion, and decide, you know what, we believe it, so then I have something to rely on, some color of authority.
Okay, I get it, I get it. So, so what's gonna happen is, you got, he's, so the developer is gonna force the board to make the decision so that they can go back to the P O A and say, the Board of County Commissioners made you guys do this, we didn't.
Right, it, it, truth is, from our perspective, I, I am neutral. I, if this board says, you know what, never mind, just do it similar, I'd say, okay. If you said do it and share, and they pay their fair share, I'm okay with that too.
Well, it, it just, I'm gonna sum it up in a nutshell what I see here. Uh, you have every right to go do, uh, build, build what you want to. You have offered them to, uh, pay for their fair share. Uh, I can tell you now, the county is not going to pay for the road, because once you start, uh, connecting a private road to a private road, then we have a landfall, uh, throughout this county. Uh, we have, we're not, I'm not gonna set that precedence at all. Uh, I do believe that he has offered you a fair, uh, way to come up, uh, with, with a safety issue. Um, I do believe that, you know, I heard some blind curb signs. I, it wouldn't cost us very much money to go out there and put a couple of signs up. So I, I would, uh, you know, make a motion that we, uh, take, I don't have a problem with you building forty-spec homes. Uh, you have been here for a long time, uh, you can go through and say one through forty. Um, you know, if we're holding the keys, um, uh, you, you have built a tremendous development in our county. You have been, uh, you, you, you just done, you set the precedence in our county when it comes to development. So I, I would make a motion that we accept, um, um, and I'm not going to force, hold on, I'm not going to force, uh, this board's not gonna force upon the residents, uh, that we're gonna, that you have to, that we're, you, you're gonna build the road. If, if the residents want to build the road, I'm sure, uh, the P O A could get with, uh, Mr. Abel's staff, and that could be worked out. Um, but again, I, I do agree, just because they're putting ten million dollars in a subdivision, uh, what's another five hundred thousand? It's another five hundred thousand, it's not, they shouldn't bear the cost. Um, so, so with that, um, I don't, I don't have any issues with the six, uh, conditions. I, I think you're a very well-respected builder here in this county, and I think that you, you will do the right thing. And then, in, in the end of the day, uh, we have control over it, so I'll, I'll let other commissioners make comments.
Is there a second?
I'm waving for a while.
Commissioner Davis, she, she's been waiting. She's been waiting.
Um, one point of clarification, and kudos to you for saying blah, blah, blah as an attorney. I'm not sure I've ever heard that out of an attorney's mouth.
I caught myself notice.
Um, so, you said something about the HOAs would be separate. If you have a single entrance, are the HOAs then combined? If they were, if they were to have voted that in, the hundred and forty dollars a year, then that would be a combined HOA?
That is correct.
So, the folks that are paying into the HOA fees with the four hundred, I'm trying to reach some sort of com, you know, collaboration here between, you know, God help me, I'm always tilting at windmills. You have a whole bunch of brand-new roads with four hundred new homes there that would then be paying into an HOA, which is going to help the twenty-year roads over in Brentwood Farms. So there is actually a benefit to the hundred and forty dollars a year.
It's a fair share arrangement, for sure.
Okay, so that, that helps to some degree Brentwood Farms. Um, hundred and forty a year, I do think, would come back on property values to have a man gate. Um, so to my mind, that ship has somewhat sailed, because they voted it down. We're not gonna, I don't believe we're gonna do anything to try to force that, um, because the people have spoken. But I would encourage you to then work with the, see if they have a, you know, 'cause I know how it is to, God, do I know how it is, to come into a meeting and learn more as I go along, and understand that maybe I made a bad decision, and I have to walk back and do something else. Maybe the HOA would have a different change of heart. I have been looking at the map, if there was some way to do, and, and I don't understand why you would close the original entrance other than to leave the R F D gates down all the time, 'cause then it's a second, it's a, it's an emergency exit. You know, people will either use it or won't, but they stay down all the time, that's what I would prefer to see, so there is two entrance exits there. Um, and then, the only other way is if there was some way to do a cross-connect with an R F D that's in front of your man gate. That's the only other way, but I'm looking at the map, and I see what the issue is, 'cause I don't think you're gonna want to put your, your man gate that far back, are you?
Right.
That's the overwhelming issue, so.
It's a feature of the community.
So, to, to all the folks that came out today, thank you for being involved citizens, but trust me when I say, this is not an easy chair to sit in. And we do have a lot of legal restrictions on what we do.
Good, okay, Commissioner.
Chair, real quick. Sir, was there a motion?
Not yet, not yet, not yet, not yet. I, I said I'd give them all the talk before I made a motion.
I don't really need, do you, is this for Eric, or?
Yeah, if, if, don't worry, I was just being available.
Eric can sit down, I mean, you can go ahead and discuss whatever.
I just don't want to make you stand there, Eric.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I do want to say something, full disclosure, that I, my parent, my mom lived in Brentwood. My plaza's right there. I went through ten-year struggle with the county over safety issues, exactly like you're going through, and that's why I'm sitting in this seat. And I feel very strongly that I am here to listen to the citizens, not to, to a developer. That being said, my neighborhood is almost exactly like your neighborhood. I have one entrance, there's a very scary exit going out. I don't make a left-hand turn coming out of my development, right there on, on four ninety-one. Um, we don't have, we have one entrance, one exit, exactly like Brentwood. And it, and we've been waiting for a light, and we might even have more accidents than you all. And I watch the accidents, and people fly down that road from my plaza. So I, I get you, I am you. But to say that a developer owes you something, to me, is way out of line. Because if somebody builds a development right next to mine, I, they don't owe me an, another exit. That being said, I want to, every one of us wants to, we want you to be safe. And I've come, I've said, can we do this? No, we can't do that, it's private roads, this and that. I would even love to see you guys have your own light. I know it's so close, I know that that's, but it could be done. I'm just gonna throw that out there. I don't know how we would pay for it, I'm just gonna throw it out there. But we all want this to, to be resolved. And I have to tell you, that offer, if you all could retake a vote, is a pretty darn good, is a pretty darn good deal, because I'm gonna tell you, it is going to enhance your neighborhood, and.
Can't speak.
I appreciate.
Public, stop, hold on, let's stop a minute. Public portion is over, okay? You had your chance, you're not. All right, here's the deal, I'm gonna tell, I'm gonna ask you to be quiet, okay? 'Cause we, this is a public hearing, we have procedures, okay? Uh, when this is over, you can go out there and you can ask him all the questions in the world. But we've already given you a chance, and so I don't want to hear, uh, from the public anymore. Thank you, Commissioner.
I wasn't.
Commissioner.
So, what I'm asking is, if it was possible to have, um, um, and I know you don't have to, but another vote, um, if there is interconnectivity, that would really help me. I know I'm constrained in my decision that I make, and, but I, that would really make me feel good, and, um, help me with my decision, because I am struggling with some, so.
All right, Commissioner Kennard.
Yeah, I, um, I'm glad that you said what you did, Commissioner Carnahan, 'cause I too support, um, all six of the requests, including the forty-spec homes.
Make the motion.
Uh, just, uh, to say that, no, we don't want to do that, because we've never done that. Um, uh, this is the way we've always done it, I don't like that. Um, and a- as you explained, they're a reputable developer, they've done tremendous things for our community. Uh, and, um, as Mr. Abel, um, uh, expressed, they're gonna build an absolutely stunning entrance into this new, uh, development. I would encourage the folks from Brentwood, um, I understand not wanting the additional expense, but I would encourage them to get back together, revisit the idea, uh, a hundred and forty dollars a year for a gated community, uh, a manned gated community at a traffic light, going in and, in and out of that entrance is gonna more than increase the value of their property, that hundred and forty dollars a year.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion first, then we'll discuss more. Unless you want to go, go ahead, Commissioner Kitchen, you know, I'll give you your, uh.
Well, and I appreciate it, Mr. Chair, 'cause I want to support everybody, but I want to come back to something here that'll deal with the motion. What's on the agenda is to conduct a public hearing for P U D dash twenty-one dash zero four.
Correct.
That's what we're gonna be voting on. So my question is, what is that ordinance? My understanding is, is what's in front of us with the twenty conditions, is that correct? Okay, of the twenty conditions, do they represent the six in question?
Yes.
Okay, so.
It's, though this, I'm.
That's all I want to make sure.
The six are not conditions.
If they're his requests.
They're, they're his points.
Okay, okay. Oh, well, let me, let me rephrase this, 'cause when we vote, I want to know what I'm voting on, okay? So, this, this ordinance can dish, can, basically says, he's gonna build four hundred units. It's gonna have, I'm not even talking about cross-connects, I'm not talking about traffic lights at Brentwood, 'cause that's not in this request.
That's right.
Okay, I'd point this out, Commissioners, and again, not too long ago, we had somebody that wanted to build a development, and a gentleman in here was reading the riot act to us because of the road beside the development. And what did we say? Has nothing to do with his application. So I'm trying to come back to just this application. So, four hundred units connects to the traffic light at Ottawa, okay? And of that, there's twenty conditions, that if a motion was made, it would consist of approving that with the twenty conditions. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, my only point about the forty-spec houses, and I agree with both Commissioner, uh, Carnahan and Kennard about the, about this developer. But the problem that I would have with that is, this is gonna be a county-wide precedent you're setting. It's for all developers, then, that you're saying, they can come in and do what you're allowing this developer to do. That's the only problem I have with this. I have no prob, I have total trust in this, this, uh, applicant to do the forty-spec houses. I don't know about, you know, developer A, B, C that comes in here from Tampa tomorrow and said, well, hey, you just did it for him, you gotta do it for me. That's my only concern, okay? But, with that said, if the motion passes with the twenty conditions, will it include the six requests? Or will that have to be added or taken out?
Let, let me just explain, the reason that, uh, Mr. Abel could.
Hold on, wait, wait, one second. He asked a question, that question needs to be answered, is that a yes or no answer?
It's not a yes or no answer.
Okay.
That's why I.
Ms. Kato, is it, would you?
No, if I might.
Well, again, again, he asked you a simple question, a yes or no.
Mr. Chair, I want to know the law of what we're voting on, so please tell me if we, what, if we approve this ordinance, as I have outlined it, as I understand it, I just need to know that I have a correct understanding of what we're voting on.
They're asking you to amend an existing PUD. The things that they're asking to amend are those six things. So that's what those six things are, the changes.
Correct.
From the existing PUD to what you're doing now. It, it's not that those are six conditions, those are the six changes. And if you approve the amendment, which gives them the right to do those six changes, there are twenty conditions that go along with those.
Okay, so, so my, from my limited legal understanding of this, that if we move forward with this, with approving their application with the twenty conditions, it would approve their six changes to the existing PUD?
Yes, except, does the twenty conditions include the, the forty-spec homes, Ms. Kato?
In the staff report, I gave them alternate, I gave them the applicant's request and what staff recommended. So if they want the applicant's request, that would be the alternative condition one.
Well, again, I'm just trying to be clear, what we're voting on.
So it's twenty, it's the twenty conditions including alternate condition one.
That's the forty-spec homes, right.
I think Mr. Abel would agree.
Yes, that and seventeen, I think, Joanna, should also be looked at.
Can somebody tell me what page?
Seventeen shouldn't be, that's the traffic study for, um, second access. That doesn't. I don't think that's there anymore.
Oh, okay, maybe you don't, maybe I have an old version.
And I guess that's what, Mr. Chair, I make, I apologize, but that's my, my confusion too, is I have two or three different ordinances in front of me, and I'm trying to make sure of which one we're voting on, that's, that's all.
We'll get you the packet page.
Okay.
All right.
I see page, packet page six oh two, seventeen is about a traffic study, if, if we're on the same page.
Right, he thought there was additional language on there, and there was originally, but staff proposed, staff removed that.
So if I'm, if I, may, Mr. Chair, if we're voting on what's included in packet page six, um, well, it ends on six oh two, which is the twenty conditions.
Right, and I'll have to amend the condition one to make it the alternative condition.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Kennard.
So I've got a question, um, based on, if we approve this and allow, approve, um, all six, um, changes to the, to the existing PUD, um, the, the request of adding the, of allowing the forty-spec homes, if we approve that in this instance, legally, would we absolutely have to, you know, apply that to every and any developer that came in the future, or they would have to come to us and ask for it?
They would have to come to us and ask for it, it would be very.
Perfect, that was, that was the exact answer I was looking for.
I didn't finish my answer.
Um, I think he got what he needed.
I didn't finish my answer, though.
You're getting incomplete legal information, Mr. Chair, I would like to hear complete legal information, okay?
Go ahead.
What I was going to say is, but you are setting a precedence.
All right, but what we heard was, we, they would have to come and request it.
Yes.
And if company X out of South Florida, or the Panhandle, shows up and has never invested a dime in Citrus County, shows up and says, well, you did it for this company that's been here investing millions of dollars for the last forty years, you need to allow us to do it. That's, you can say it's a precedence, but that's nonsense. They would have to come and request it, my answer would be no. You invest tens of millions of dollars in our county for many, many years, hire many, many people, contribute X amount of millions of dollars to the tax base, then we'll consider your request. In this situation, I would, I would support approving all six, uh, uh, requested changes to the existing PUD, In this situation, I would, I would support approving all six, uh, uh, requested changes to the existing PUD, and I would, I would, um, vote that we approve this with the alternate condition number one.
I'll second that.
And, Mr. Chair, I just want to say, that's why I brought this up, cause I wanted Commissioner Kennard to put in the record, so when they come in and say it, I can support him, because I, you know, this all comes down to the legal standing. And when somebody says, why did you do this, I want to be able to say, because of that, okay? And, and that's exactly why, we just can't say, well, we like this guy, we don't like you. We have to have something that we're, we're basing this on, and so I appreciate you saying what you said, and I can support it because of that.
Perfect, thank you.
Hold on, I'll come to you, Commissioner Davis.
I have a super quick question, um, in terms of the new entrance that you'd be planning to build, would that be something along the lines of what we see at Terra Vista across from Publix?
It's not designed yet, but we will, we hire the exact same, uh, landscape designer to do the, I mean, I, if you've been to our latest developments, we have Hillside, uh, Hall Reserve, Nash Crossing, Griffin View, grand entrances. We love it, it, we know for a fact it adds value to the property, so we want a, a nice.
Can I have one of those at Clearview Estate for a hundred and forty dollars a year?
All right, here we go, Commissioner Davis.
I just, Slava, I just want to make sure that, um.
Davis, Slava.
I know, I just want to make sure that I'm clear, what you have proposed is, the way you're getting around precedents is that this is a historical, proven company that has invested into Citrus County? And then the others have to come to get approval, like you said, if they came from another area, but they haven't done in any kind of development, or is that what we're getting at? I just want to be clear, cause it was going back and forth, and I want to make sure.
They would have to come before us anyway.
Okay.
And so, for, too often, what we're told is, well, if you do this for them, you're gonna have to do it for everybody. No, you don't. You do this for them, because they've invested millions and millions and millions of dollars in our community.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
All right, any other discussion? And here's what I would, uh, I would, um, suggest for the Brentwood POA. I would suggest that you contact Mr., uh, your president contacts Mr. Abel. I would, uh, suggest that you take a new vote, because I tell you this, for a hundred and forty dollars, I'd be giving that in a heartbeat, uh, to have a gated entrance, and, uh, also, we'll help your roads. So with that being said, I want a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kennard.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Kitchen.
What is the motion?
Yeah.
The motion is to approve all six requested changes to the existing PUD twenty-one oh four, including amendment of condition one.
I thought it was the twenty conditions, including the amendment one.
Yes, yes, he was a, my understanding is the applicant was okay with all twenty conditions, but if we wanted.
Amendment one.
Yes, but we had to do alternate number one.
Are we amending the motion, because you didn't mention the twenty conditions?
Yes, I'll amend my motion.
And I'll amend my second.
And I think it needs to say adopting the ordinance.
And adopt. Commissioner.
Execute the ordinance.
Okay, so to include the twenty conditions and adopting the ordinance.
And, and the amendment one.
And amendment one.
Well, that was already in the first one.
Okay, okay, so we're good, all right.
So I just want to make sure what I'm voting on, and I vote aye on that, so.
Okay.
And Commissioner Slava.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, congratulations.
And by the way, all y'all, for a legal perspective, it's precedent.
What's that?
It's precedent, not dents. Precedent is priority.
This time of the day, I mean, you know.
Is that adjourned, sir?
This is a legal proceeding.
Sir, is that adjourned?
We are adjourned, I'm sorry, yeah.